All right, good morning. Are we ready to begin? Hello, supervisors and all of our public and staff that's here today. Thank you for joining us for the Board of Supervisors meeting for October 20th, starting at 8:30. Can we please get a roll call?
Can you switch the screens, please? Thank you. Supervisor Parks.
She is on mute. And maybe she can't hear you. Try again.
Supervisor Bennett.
He's there and his mute is, his microphone is off mute, so maybe there's a technical issue.
Supervisor Parks.
I'm waiting for the host to let me in.
It says that Supervisor Bennett is talking, but we're not hearing him.
Is he waving?
No, he's in. Let's see. Supervisor Parks. Okay, she's speaking, but we can't hear her. So it sounds like it's something on our end if we cannot hear Bennett nor Parks. And I bet you if you try--
This is Steve, can you hear me now?
Oh, there is Steve.
Hello, yes, can hear you. Loud and clear. All right, there we go.
Okay.
Supervisor Parks.
The eagle has landed, huh?
Okay, let's try Supervisor Parks for mute.
Supervisor Parks.
Her mic is muted. Her microphone is muted. Supervisor Parks, can you hear us? I don't think she can hear us. Try Supervisor Huber and see.
Supervisor Huber.
Nope, his, I don't think they can hear us. I don't know if someone can call IT. Awesome. I know you guys got it going on. We'll get this figured. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I just want to make sure if we're having our board meeting that we can have access to our board members, because that's very important. Supervisor Parks, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
There you go, so I'm gonna start over. Supervisor Bennett.
Steve Bennett's here. And I just, this is the first time I've been able to hear your supervisor Long right now.
Perfect.
Supervisor Parks.
She said yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Here, so all board members are in attendance. Thank you for the capacity that we can zoom in and also be here today. I would like to welcome Mr. Michael Walker. He is our acting county counsel, and this is his first meeting in his role today. So thank you for all that you will be doing for us. I know it is very much hard work and appreciate it. At this time, we'll be doing our pledge allegiance, and would you please lead us in this pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item is our agenda review. Oh, sorry. Next is the minutes. I'm already moving fast. The minutes for the meetings for October 6, 2020. Are there any changes, modifications? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Huber, move approval.
All right, I'll take Huber as a first and I'll take Zaragoza as a second. Any further discussion? All in, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, so that motion is approved. Thank you. Next item is our agenda review. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Long, board members. Item eight, public comment. Comment letters from Judy Bruce, Lorena Sarowatari, and John Sinezoic have been submitted. Item 46, Board of Supervisors, recommendation of Supervisor Parks to direct county council to draft an ordinance and resolution subjecting specified roads in Ventura Park to California vehicle code and Ventura County fire ordinance to ban red flag warning days vehicle parking on specified roads. A comment letter from Teresa Jordan and John Alday have been submitted. Item 47, Board of Supervisors, recommendation of Supervisor Long to direct the county executive office to research funding options to support a facility improvement project at the Spirit of Santa Paula homeless shelter. A letter of support from Richard Ariza, Mayor, City of Santa Paula, has been submitted. Item 49, County Executive Office, adoption of a resolution establishing Ventura County Climate Energy, excuse me, Climate Emergency Council and its bylaws. A revised board letter has been submitted. Item 51, CEO's office, approval of the Ventura County COVID-19 cities assistance program. A revised board letter has been provided. Item 53, CEO's office, approval of an amendment to the agreement with the Ventura County Community Foundation to administer the county's COVID-19 business assistance grant program. A board letter and agreement have been submitted. Item 54, Supervisor Bennett, adoption of an ordinance restricting parking and establishing a safe parking permit program in designated areas of the county. Seven comment letters have been submitted. Item 56, CEO's office, adoption of the 20-21 MOA, the Criminal Justice Attorneys Association of Ventura County. A revised Exhibit 1 has been submitted. Item 57, Public Works Agency, receive a report regarding the cost of eliminating the use of glyphosate by the Public Works Agency. We request removal of this item from the agenda and we'll have it heard at a future agenda. And finally, item 60, Resource Management Agency, planning, receive a presentation regarding current and planned efforts to monitor and enforce county requirements for farmworker dwelling units. PowerPoint presentation has been submitted. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Long?
Yes?
This is, this is Steve Bennett. I have one question for, for our staff, I don't know who's most appropriate, but for example, when Mr. Powers talked about a revised letter being submitted for CEC, if somebody is online and they're with our agenda and they click on the item, will they now get the revised letter or will they get the item that was attached when the original agenda was put together? So my question is, has the, has the link been updated or do people need to do something else to find the now current letter we'll be discussing?
Yes, it has been updated and they will see the revised letter.
Excellent, thank you very much. That is great work on the part of staff. Nice job.
Yeah, the clerk's team does a great job. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I am asking that the 47, which is the recommendation of my supervisor Long to research the funding for the facility improvement projects of the Spirit of Santa Paula, to be moved up on the regular agenda if we can. We do have city council and city manager wanting to speak as well, and I want to respect their time too, so, if we can. With that, a motion to approve.
Shall move.
It's been first by Supervisor Zaragoza, second, please.
Second, Huber.
It's been second.
Huber, second.
Thank you Supervisor Huber for your second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, that motion is approved unanimously. Now, it's a pleasure of the chair to be able to bring our moment of inspiration. This one hits close to home, and so I wanted to bring Mr. Mike Jump up to talk about domestic violence. Domestic violence is the celebrated, not celebrated, but recognized, that's a better word, for October 2020. And we also have Laura Morales, our housing manager for Coalition of Family Harmony on Zoom. I want to make sure IT knows to let them in. And then also Nicola Gonzalez-Sites, our director of family violence intervention for Intervise Children's and Family Services. And we have our very own Mike Jump here at our dais, our chief deputy district attorney, victims and community services director for Ventura County Family Justice Center. And I just hats off to you and Mr. Taunton for what a wonderful service that Family Justice Center is for our community. I won't take all the words because I know you've got it. So I'll pass that on to you. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I am Michael Jump, Chief Deputy District Attorney of the DA's office. And one of the things that is under my purview is the Family Justice Center, along with a couple of other programs that are really needed right now as well. Crime Victims Assistance Unit in the DA's office, also our Safe Harbor Program, which is where we do sexual assault exams and child abuse exams, forensic and medical, and interviews as well. And then the last part of that is our Mass Violence Response Program, which, thanks to a very large grant we received a couple of years ago, is now helping survivors of Route 91 and Borderline. So there's a lot of work to be done. I'm here to really talk to you about Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October, we're in it. I've got my purple on. In the past, we've had various members of our Family Justice Center partnership, Interface, et cetera, be here today. They can't, obviously, but we're still working together. And thank you for those kind words. The Family Justice Center came along at just the right time, and you'll hear a little bit about why. It's kind of fortuitous. But before we get into that, I wanted to thank the people that do the hard work of working with victims in crisis, and that is all of our victim advocates and all of our staff at the Family Justice Center and our partners at the Coalition for Family Harmony and Interface, who do this daily. And right now, they are in it, they are in it on the front lines, and you'll see why. So I wanted to honor them, but I also wanted to talk about the elephant in the room. How has COVID-19 impacted survivors? And to do that, I need a little help from IT. There is a chart, maybe? There we go. So this chart is kind of mind blowing. You see that red dotted line on the left-hand side? That is the date of the stay-at-home orders. And those levels prior to that are normal levels. You see what's happened since. There was a big lull right after those stay-at-home orders went into place, and after about a month, two months, to where we are today, we've seen 125% increase in requests for domestic violence restraining orders. It's pretty staggering. We've also seen a 90% increase in referrals for sexual assault, child abuse, elder abuse, and a pretty healthy increase in just calls on domestic violence. Since March, March 15th, we fielded an astonishing 1,700 domestic violence calls at the Family Justice Center, and our partners report the same. So where's the uplifting part? Where's the inspiration part? The inspiration part is, so what do you do about it? And you can take that slide down. The, there's a moment in time in which things sort of just, you know, you do what you've got to do to get the job done. And the Family Justice Center has such wonderful partners that we instantly pivoted. We were determined to stay open. And so what we did essentially is create a phone tree system so that all of our expert in various disciplines, the 15-plus onsite partners, were still able to be past a client and deliver their service and provide that expert coaching. The other thing that we were able to do, especially considering how isolated people were, was to try to create new branches of access for them. So if you're at home, you're with your abuser, very difficult to get on the phone and make a, make a call because you're going to be overheard. So we created a text line. We created an email account. We created a Twitter account. We created an Instagram account. We created a website and did everything we could to get the word out that services were still available. The other thing that we were able to do was create a bunch of flyers and put those inside the food boxes that were delivered to thousands and thousands of county residents all over the county. So I feel like we've really done a decent job at maintaining that access for survivors. The other thing we were able to do is work with the Superior Court. At a time when the courts weren't operating, people weren't really wanting to come to court, we were able to create a, an electronic filing system for temporary restraining orders so that folks would not have to come down to the courthouse. And that worked out very well. In fact, it's one of those things that we hope to hang on to after we get through this COVID crisis. I could go on and on, but I'll tell you my last favorite thing. We have this program called Camp Hope, and it's where we take kids to camp that are victims of domestic violence for a week. Couldn't have camp this year, at least not in the physical sense. So we have some very ingenious folks who put together activity bags that were delivered to campers' doorsteps. They then met online, and each day, they would take out their activity for that day and go through it online with their friends and their counselors from previous years. And it really worked out tremendously. We then were able to go back to their homes and drop off their certificate of participation, their character awards, some goodies, some fossils that I found roaming around Utah, and it was really, really just a wonderful time. The goal of the Family Justice Center is to provide options and hope. That is our district attorney's vision, and it's a great vision. We are nearing our first anniversary date, November 12th. And to date, we will have served 1,600 domestic violence restraining orders and 207 elder abuse restraining orders, in addition to lots of other services. To celebrate, the Ventura County Family Justice Center Foundation is going to be holding a virtual variety show on November 19th. Save the date invitations will be coming out shortly. There are some big names that are going to participate. Should be a great time. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Laura Morales with Coalition for Family Harmony.
Hello, everyone, good morning.
Good morning.
You know, it's, it's a moment of a lot of thinking and meditating and, and just feeling our hearts heavy for our many victims of domestic violence who are not safe at home. And it's hard to, and alarming to see the numbers that Mike presented. And then when we were having a conversation with Nicole from Interface, and we were comparing numbers of how much it's increased where people are seeking help, it's astonishing. And so that means that our work is not done, that as we navigate through the Thomas Fire and all these other natural disasters, we are aware that it is a time where domestic violence spirals. And our job every day is to bring awareness and to continue to do that through, through this pandemic, and hopefully, we get through the doors and through, our voice is heard through all this trauma that's happening. And I think that it's important to understand that we, as service providers, need to do more work. We are so grateful for the support that we have every day, being able to get to the families that need our help. You know, a lot of the abusers are using the pandemic as a scare tactic to be able to maintain control of their victims, making them more isolated than before from their families. They're not even able to use the phone many times because they're being monitored the whole time when their abusers are staying home with them. And so this, this month is extra special, especially for the coalition, because we know that since we've shifted and we've navigated the whole way, we are meeting clients, it's very different. But we are so grateful that we have the needs and the means to be able to get through those families and be able to bring awareness and bring the help that many of them need. I'll turn it over to Nicole, thank you so much.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairwoman Long, Mr. Powers, and members of the board. On behalf of Interface Children Family Services, I'd like to thank you for holding space during today's meeting to highlight October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and really help us to raise awareness to this critical issue. Since the onset of COVID, our agency too has been deeply concerned about the impact this pandemic is having on our local community and how the increase in, is creating an increase in isolation that can put victims of domestic violence at further risk for serious injury. Like our partners, we've remained operational throughout the pandemic, ensuring that victims continue to have access to critical supports through our 24/7 hotline, crisis response team, community-based advocacy in shelters. Realizing that victims may have little knowledge or opportunity to learn about the services that are available, we embarked on a journey of really helping to create awareness by, by rolling out a series of awareness campaigns and outreach efforts carried out through social media, within our service networks, as well as with our healthcare partners and local hospitality providers who may have been sheltering families during the stay-at-home order. Since April of this year, our domestic violence program has experienced a 21% increase in requests for assistance. Now more than ever, we want our local community to know that even during this pandemic, your local domestic violence service providers stand together and we're here for you when you need us. All of our local domestic violence services are free and can be easily accessed by calling 211 or texting your zip code to 898-211. We want our community to know that you don't have to go through this alone, and that if you see something, please do say something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open for board members. Any comments?
Thank you, thank you, Michael. And time really passes. I remember one year ago when we were there at the Justice Center for the ribbon cutting, and we had a couple of hundred people there, which is fantastic. But I just want to thank you and also the DA and also Laura and Nicole and all the volunteers. I know you have a committee that's really, is really, really helping out tremendously to a lot of the folks that need a lot of help. And we always find creative work, Americans always find a creative work, a way to communicate or to share that information that people need to get help. And, and you know, the emails and, and also the information on the food boxes and things like that that really have given the, the folks that need to help to communicate. And especially right now in the pandemic, you know, a lot of the people are home, you know, they, they can't go anyplace, the kids are home, the dads are home, they're frustrated, and that, and this is where a lot of problems come, come through. But with your help and innovative ideas that the committee has, I commend you. And thank you for the excellent job.
Thank you for those very nice comments, and thank you for your leadership in helping us get started.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would just, my heart goes out to all of you who are doing this hard work. It's talking about emotions. Domestic violence is not only physical, but mental, and it affects not just the two partners, but the whole family and the friends and all of that. And so the education that we are doing really matters. As you saw that chart, people keep saying, oh, well, no, maybe it's not happening. People are maybe being quiet and not talking about it. Who knows? For whatever reason, it's, it's happening, and it's something that we can't just sweep under the carpet. With all mental health issues, you know, emotions, how to deal with your emotions is part of it. And so how we can talk to each other on a daily basis about your emotions, how you can have 211 for any of these issues, whether you're stressed out for food or housing or you need help because of your partner that's in your home. I really just appreciate all the work. And one thing is that that 211 is such a key. We are talking about that with our California State Association of Counties of how can we get 211 throughout the state. I know our very own Interface, 211 over 15 counties, I believe, that they're servicing right now. So it's not only all of our county, but so many others. And it makes a difference, and the programs that we're having are wonderful. You know, they have the program of Paint Your Nail Purple to have that discussion, right? And I think we need to make sure that we're continuing to have those discussions and that Family Justice Center, the stories, the people I know that work there and what their histories are, oh my gosh, heartbreaking. But they're doing it because they don't want others to go through the same process. So I wanted to make sure we brought this up today to make sure we talk about it, because this, it shouldn't be taboo. It should be something that, yeah, it does happen, and what do we do about it? So.
Madam Chair, can I ask one more quick question? I just remembered, Michael, is, when we were there, we were getting ready to actually rebuild the annex in the back, you know, for any individuals that needed assistance that evening or whatever. Is that now up?
We are so close, Supervisor. January 1 is the opening date for that facility. And we were actually helped out. It was, again, one of those innovative things where we had the opportunity to renovate it, to provide quarantine assistance for the hospital across the street, for nursing staff, for doctors that needed space.
Yeah.
And now it's perfect and it's ready.
It's almost there.
We're just waiting for a little security tweak, and then January 1, we'll be ready to go.
Yeah.
It will provide 10 bed spaces for domestic violence victims for emergency shelter bases.
And that's great. And I think also one thing, I think 585, the labors are going to redo the, the parking lot, you know, free of charge.
Correct, correct. A lot, a lot of great folks tripping into help.
A lot of people have really gone together too. But I just remember that one part, and I'm happy that if some family, especially women with kids, has to get away from a domestic violence, you know, item or, you know, or at home, you know, that at least they have a place to, to go. Thank you, sir.
Thanks again for your support.
And then also, I don't want to miss out on some people, but this month, we recognize that it is a vital role that all Californians play to preventing and one day ending domestic violence, and that every day, the domestic violence service providers, law enforcement officers, healthcare providers, court systems, and others are all an integral part of this effort to end the domestic violence in Ventura County. It's just, there's so many people that are involved, so just thank you. I do have a resolution, I'll bring it down.
Thank you.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, please go ahead.
I also want to thank Mike Jump and his great crew out there. It is one of the most difficult things to do is working with personal issues that families have, and when it rises to the, to the top of being violent, it is so important that we are able to react and do it quickly, and I just really thank you for that. Also, I wanted to point out that Mike, his personal touch, you know, hearing about what he's doing for the kids and the campers, I just think that is so much a part of the way Ventura County serves our clients, serves the public, and I just so appreciate those personal touches. And I also want to point out that Mike is working with a committee that we are organizing for, to recognize, again, the, the mass shooting from Borderline and, and wanting to be there for the families and for the many, many victims of that, and the survivors. So I want to thank him for that. I don't think we'll have another board meeting before that recognition on November 7th. So I know the public will be getting some more information on that, and I just want to thank the district attorney and, and his wonderful staff, and most importantly, Mike Jump, who's leading that effort particularly on that one. So thank you for that, and thank you to the victims advocates because you guys rock. So I'm so glad that people have you to go to when they're in that kind of crisis, so thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, we do have to photo walk, even though.
Smile with your eyes. One, two, three, four. One, two, three.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you.
Okay, the next item is our, Lala, is our consent items for items 12 through 44. I am here to ask you if there's any questions, board members, anything that needs to be pulled, any discussion, and if not, a motion to approve.
Shall move.
It's been motioned by Supervisor Zaragoza, and it sounds like a second by Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you so much. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes, so that motion is approved. Next item is our report of the COVID-19. As we know, since March 15, we have all been partnering together to battle this pandemic. And we will pass it along to Mr. Powers to start us off. I know we have a PowerPoint.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Chair Long, board members, county team and community members. So again, a big thank you to the community because our numbers are heading in a good direction and that's just really a reflection of the work that you're doing, the thoughtful, caring work that you're doing. And so Ventura County is headed in a good direction. And it's really remarkable when you look at what's happening across the rest of the country with the majority of the states having an increase in numbers, actually. And so it's just, I think, a good reminder for all of us to stay vigilant and we know that you are. And a great example was the Labor Day weekend. Dr. Levin said everybody did great and you could see it in the numbers. It showed that Ventura County community was being compliant and thoughtful. So a lot of good progress going on. And there's the items that we're going to cover today. And I'll just touch on just some engagement we're doing at the state level, continuing to advocate for the safe reopening as part of, part of a work group with CSAC, that's our Association of Counties, with some other board members and county CEOs and public health leadership. And it's just a healthy engagement and a couple of the items that we're advocating for is, one, encouraging the state to, as they're looking at reopening, to look at our hospital census and hospital capacity data before this new structure was put in place, this new tiered blueprint. The state identified hospital census as a real important measure and our public health leaderships confirmed it is, it remains a very meaningful public health measure in terms of measuring the spread in the community. It is a lagging indicator, to be sure, but it is very clear in its results and what it shows. So, and we know that one of the things that we all want to make sure that we have is adequate hospital capacity in the event of a surge. And so for those reasons, we think it's a really meaningful measure to continue to look towards. And so we're going to be advocating with the state that they include this as one of the metrics that we can look at in terms of moving forward in counties. And it's not just us, there are many counties, similar sized counties throughout the state who share this perspective.
And I just wanted to make sure that our community knows that our board members do support that effort. It is extremely important that we're working together with the state, with our public health directors, our hospitals and so forth, to make sure that we're moving this as quickly as we can, but with the safety of our community and still growing our economy. So I really appreciate the efforts that Mr. Powers is representing on this working group for our county to make sure that they have the data and the factual information to make the decisions we need them to make. I know it takes a lot of time and effort and I just wanted to appreciate the work that you're doing on behalf of all of us.
And thank you, Mike, for making a lot of progress and Supervisor, you know, for working with CSAC and our people and their excellent jobs. So we're close to going to our next level.
Well, we'll talk more about that. We're heading in the right direction. But there's quite a bit of work to do and that's one of the reasons we're advocating at the state. And we appreciate your board sharing ideas and perspectives that you have, that you get from your constituents, our public health leadership. That's critical to anything that we advocate for before the state, where, you know, that's a priority, make sure that they believe in this, the advocacy that we're doing and that. So it's all, I mean, it's really a team effort and I appreciate the opportunity to be at the table. And so the other area, so just to know, on the hospital census, I mean, our numbers are down to the point where it's like 30 or so, which is, I don't think we've seen those numbers since March. And so very good trends, again, reflection of the work of the community. We, one thing we would highlight for the state is I think they partner really well with us on the health equity metric. This was a new, we all want to prioritize, we know your board does, equity in our community, particularly our low-income, high-density communities. And so we applauded the state for that, but they also worked with counties on that. It took several weeks to roll out what I think is, you know, much more reasonable.
Michael, I totally point it's very important that equity metrics are really, really important.
Yeah. And rather just sort of, you know, the county is already one of the lowest in the state. And so if we just measured improvement, it would be, we think, our county would have been unfairly treated as others would have been. But when you look at just where are we actually right now? And then that's a fair metric and that's what they're looking at. And actually, the health equity metric is, you know, we're ahead, we're in the orange tier on that and heading in a good direction, but more to come on that. Then also on testing, the testing benchmark where you get an adjustment factor on your case rate. And that's the rate, that's the measure that we're, we struggle with the most, that we're having difficulty meeting. It's heading in a good direction, that's for sure. But it gets lowered if you have a higher testing volume. But the metric that they're using is the countywide average of testing per day, per 100,000, instead of their own benchmark. State's benchmark is 150 per 100,000 tests per day. They're using the countywide average, which is up over 230, 240. And, you know, we're higher than that, so we do get an adjustment metric. We just think we ought to get more of an adjustment factor, quite frankly, and that would lower that case rate. And an example is, you know, some counties up north, like Santa Clara County, they're up over 500, you know, and then that's great for them and we commend them. But that shouldn't make a difference to us here locally or to a business that has to stay closed because a Northern California county can throw off the curve that way and have such high testing volumes. It's just, it's just a sense of fairness and again, equity.
And Michael, we need to thank our residents for using the mask, you know, washing their hands and using all those criteria that's so important, you know.
Absolutely. That's what's doing it. That is exactly what's doing it. Thank you, Supervisor. And then, so the last thing I'd say is just, we talked about the equity metrics. Again, we don't rest on our laurels around here. So the team is working very hard to, I would say, triple down on its efforts in low-income, high-density areas in terms of even further, we already have way more testing capacity than most counties, but really in those areas focused testing and outreach, outreach in multiple different ways. And I think Ashley's going to come up later and you'll hear about all the creative ways we're really working to engage with communities. So these are just some of the efforts that we're working on and you'll hear now from the rest of the team. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Levin. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers and County Council Walker. I'm honored to be here and I'll be speaking about something that I feel passionate about this morning. I'm going to begin by talking about some new guidance that the state has come down with. And this is guidance for private gatherings. We were limited to two people for a long time. And now the state has said that we can get together with three households. And I'll explain in detail what that means, although the greatest detail will be found by your going online and looking up guidance for private gatherings. That's dated October 9th. And CDPH, California Department of Public Health, you Google those things, you will find it. It's a couple pages long, it's easy reading. But when we talk about no more than three households getting together, that is the, what we'd like to see there is the fewer, the households, the better, but up to three. And the fewer people, the better. These households should be stable with one another over time, same three households. The host should be able to give the names of the people that are in attendance when there is a getting, a get-together in case someone later proves to have COVID and a contact, investigator contacts them and wants to know who was there. And that should be easy to do because these three households might get together more than once over time. The gatherings should be outdoors. And during this time, and this is as Supervisor Zaragoza pointed out, this should be done at all times, physical distancing, masks, frequent hand washing. If you're ill, please don't show up. And the state would like to see these gatherings limited to two hours in length. And let's talk a little bit anticipating that this development of three households is going to apply to how people in our county choose to celebrate Thanksgiving and Christmas and perhaps other events. Let's talk a little bit about the food service. These could be personal prepackaged foods that would be given out. But I think what is more likely is that a turkey's going to be made and stuffing or a ham and that can be done carefully. A single person can carry this food around to the little gatherings, the three gatherings there, which would be separated by at least six feet, and serve individuals. Or it could be cafeteria style where people, one at a time, come through and one server is there the whole time, serving people on their plates.
The three households, does it have to be related or did I miss it?
Three households.
That's the whole idea of getting?
Any, any three households, they can be friends, they can be neighbors, they can be related to one another.
I do understand that there have been families that have quarantined together because their concern of sanity of their children, safety of their community and still being able to be social with someone. So this is three, it's not limited to the amount of people in your three families. For example, I have six kids and you have four kids and you have none, putting all those together doesn't mean that you can only have 12 people together. Is that correct?
We're talking about households.
Yes.
So people under the same roof. So if I did not refer to that, I was mistaken. Really, that is the clear message, three households can come together.
Thank you.
And that helps, that's good.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, Supervisor Bennett.
If I could inject this on a slightly lighter note, you said some families have, you know, decided to quarantine together for the sanity of the children. And I would offer to you that having the children have other children to play with might also be for the sanity of the parents also.
That's true. I, yes, I agree on that completely. And thank you for making me laugh. Go ahead.
So let me move on a little bit. I'll bring the gathering guidance back into this, I'll knit it back together in a moment. As Mr. Powers was alluding to, we're seeing more and more COVID everywhere. In Europe, the World Health Organization has pointed out that they anticipate there will be four to five times the number of deaths that there were in April in the coming months without effective countermeasures. And there are impediments to putting down effective countermeasures in terms of people and their cooperation. We, in our county, have had tremendous amount of cooperation. And we saw that over Labor Day weekend. We didn't see a blip and our numbers have continued to edge down. We've done a great job. And I think that tells us that this is under our control. It's not easy, it's a challenge and it's filled with sacrifice, but it is under our control. Nine more countries report record numbers of new infections in Europe. Looking at the United States, 39 states are seeing outbreaks across our nation. And so the third wave can be said and is said by certain officials to be officially underway. With new openings in both businesses and in opportunities, activity opportunities to interact and the coming holidays, this gathering guidance is very, very important. We are faced with tough decisions, choices that will plot our course for the future. When we have setbacks, they can have an impact not only on our personal liberties, our personal opportunities, but our businesses. And we want to keep, everyone can agree that we want to keep our businesses open. So let's talk about plans for the holidays. I want to address this now, I want to talk about Christmas now, I want to talk about Thanksgiving now, because now is when we're making those plans. Let's be grateful that three households are sanctioned to be together, make plans accordingly. This will, this is a problem, a disease that is spread person to person. Let me see if I can finally work this thing. I don't know. There we go. Somebody worked it for me, even if I didn't. Thank you. This is a disease that's spread person to person. It is that simple. I'm not confident that we can avoid a surge. I'm optimistic and I'm hopeful that we can. It's in our hands if we will only do our best to not get this disease and not give this disease. And to do so is relatively simple. It's not foolproof. No one can say, I'm never going to get this unless they lock themselves in their home. And then there's still stuff coming into the home. But you can make choices that diminish the chances. Outside is safer than inside. 12 feet is safer than six feet. A mask is better than no mask. So let's make those choices. We've done it, we've shown it before, we proved it on Labor Day, and let's do this for the next three or four months as well. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Levin. Supervisors, any of you have any questions for Dr. Levin?
Madam Chair, I just want to thank the doctor because I know that there's been a lot of criticism whether to use a mask or not, but it's working here in Ventura County and I know that some people don't like it, but the majority, a high, high percentage are helping us out. And I want to thank my family too, because, you know, we're very diligent about what we do and so forth and they're friends. And if we go to the store to buy milk or whatever, I see that probably maybe 90% of the people or more are wearing masks and that's helping us tremendously. If we all do that, you know, we, I think one of the things that's really important, Madam Chair and supervisors, that if we all do this, we'll open our businesses because we need that income desperately. We need to make sure that our businesses survive. So by following the simple, the mask, washing your hands, like you said, and making sure that the distancing is there, we can open up sooner. And we need the economy to strive because it's so important to us. But I want to thank you, doctor, for what you've done.
Thank you. Good business is good public health.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Dr. Levin, thank you for bringing up the expanded no more than three households together. We are still following up on the other industry guidelines though, such as where we stand with wedding venues and other things that are going on that we haven't quite touched on. I really appreciate your working with the school system. I know that has been a very hot topic with our school, let's see, Office of Administration for the school district, our superintendents, our teachers, our families. That is a real hotspot for a lot of us. I know that Moore Park is going to be the first school reopening and I'm so excited for them. But I just want to make sure that we're communicating with them, checking in with them, making sure that they know that there's tons of testing for them and that they get all the support they need. Because like you said, the surge, we don't want another surge. So the more we can talk about testing and temperatures and whatever we can do to delay any type of surge would be great. So I just wanted to say thank you for the efforts that you're putting with that.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Levin. I would say to that, Chair Long, just so you know, Dr. Levin and Rigo work very hard with the schools on a regular basis and have from the get-go, you know, back in February, February, March, and they're continuing to this day, they go out of their way and their whole team does and public health to work and partner with the schools because a lot of moving parts, a lot of changes.
Los amigos?
Yes, yes.
Yes, and that is very true. I have been contacted by many of the superintendents and families and to be rest assured by both Dr. Levin and Rigo and their team in regards to the quick answers as to how to support our school system, especially like with sports too, you know, all the kids wanting to get back to sports and their clubs and all the things that they look forward to in a year. So, thank you. Hello, Rigo.
Good morning, Supervisor Long, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers, staff. Good Tuesday morning. So Rigo Vargas, Public Health Director here with today's update, going over some of the slides and some of the information that we presented before. slides and some of the information that we presented before, and I want to thank, first before I do that, Dr. Levin and Mr. Powers, as a team, we are all advocating at the state level on various fronts, as has been mentioned, including, you know, we get questions, requests, need for clarification from the schools or from different sectors, we don't always have the answer right away, because we wouldn't be in alignment with the state, and also checking with them to see if there's pending guidance, and so that's, that's why we sometimes don't have the answer right on the, on the spot, but we do look into it. So as, as, for example, we were able to confirm last week that the state is working not only on updating guidance on youth sports, but also looking to publish guidance on adult sports. They, I asked them specifically for a tentative timeline on when each of those might come out, they, they were not able to provide that, but at least we can confirm that they are looking at that, and once they're looking at guidance, you know, it's just a matter of of time, there's other sectors where they're not looking at the guidance yet, because it is far off, but sports is one that does seem to be, you know, pretty eminent from the state coming out with. The other one that we looked into and asked, in that one, we got less of a, of a confirmation of where they're at, but outdoor receptions, especially wedding receptions, we we have asked, and and, you know, they acknowledged our, our requests, but have not indicated where they're at with that.
Well, and I also get from nonprofits, like a 4-H group wants to get together, how do, how are they able to move forward without being zoomed? Sometimes face to face, even six feet apart or 12 feet apart, is an important connection. And so our nonprofits and so forth have been asking about that as well.
Yeah. On that, on outdoor events, while they, the state, our colleagues there did not commit to or confirm that they were working on guidance, I I have heard from colleagues that their understanding is that the state is moving forwards, if they're not already, looking at outdoor events such as wedding receptions and perhaps other type of small gathering events with some guidance, so that, that should be coming down as well. So anyways, I just want to make that comment, that we do check into with the state, and as soon as we get information from our colleagues at the state, then we share it back.
Thank you so much.
So, I'll go through these slides fairly quickly, this, this slide is with yesterday's numbers, I, we don't always have them in the morning of, so my team just texted me today's preliminary numbers, we're going to be showing around 50 new cases, so that brings us our total just still under 14,000 new cases will be our number. We're also going to be reporting almost 1,200 newly tested individuals, that will put us over 206,000 Ventura County residents that have taken advantage of the excellent testing capacity, and I want to thank each and every one of them that's gotten tested. And so, yes, over 2,000, 206,000 will be our number of totally, total tested individuals. No new deaths, happened to report that, and so we will stay at 160 deaths for today. And I don't have the preliminary numbers for the hospital, but as Mr. Powers mentioned, our hospital numbers are very good, and, you know, they've been hovering around 30 and for total hospitalized of COVID patients, and around 11. We've, you know, had a couple of times last week, eight, but yesterday we were at 11 in terms of those in ICU, and we hope for swift recovery for those that are in the hospital with COVID and for any other illness for that matter, of course, but also for those that are in the ICU in particular.
Rigo, that's really excellent, that 11 in ICU, that's really brought dramatically.
Yes.
And that's with all of our hospital system, not just we can't see in Santa Barbara Hospital.
This is countywide, we have excellent partners in all eight hospital systems, and they're just wonderful, not only in their care, excellent care of these individuals throughout the pandemic, but also in the capacity, surge capacity realm, and many other efforts that we've partnered with our hospitals, so.
Great news.
Much appreciated. All right, moving along. So this is the metrics that the state should be confirming at noon, as you know, the state at noon on Tuesdays releases officially the tier assignments for each county, and also releases the metrics. These would be the metrics for the week ending on the 10th, and so as indicated previously by Mr. Powers and Dr. Levin, we are continuing to do well, all of our key, the top three are our key metrics, community COVID transmission metrics that the state uses to assign tiers, and all of them show improvement, modest although, for our case rate, that is, as Mr. Powers mentioned, the one that's most kind of challenging and has kept us from moving further along, but we we did improve from 5.2 to 5.1, and our new goal is 3.9. 3.9 refers to the next tier, and so we're, you know, we're, we're getting there, but we we do need to approach 3.9 versus 5.1, and that is a seven-day case rate average. Point nine, by the way, is the fourth tier goal, but the, the next goal is 3.9.
Can I ask a question on this? So is there any adjustment on the seven-day average case rate per 10,000 of active new cases of COVID? Does that 5.3 get modified at all because of our high test rate? I just think it's really important that our community is getting tested, because then that, if you find out, you reduce exposure to other people, and I really think that our county is doing an amazing job at 320, that, that, the goal is 150, I think we're overachievers, but in a good way.
Yes.
So does, does that 5.1, is that calculated in a credit, or?
Yes, excellent question, and thank you for reminding me to clarify that, as, as was also previously mentioned, our testing capacity is excellent, our residents are taking advantage of the testing availability, and so, yes, 320, as you can see, is, you know, more than double what the initial target and goal for, from the state. And so while that in itself is not one of the community transmission metrics, those are displayed at the top, the three, but it does play a role in, they call it an adjustment factor, and so for when counties like ours have really good testing capacity, such as reflected in that 320, we get a positive adjustment into our case rate. Other counties, by the way, that have lower than the statewide average, they, their adjustment factor is in the opposite direction, their case rate that is published goes up, and so for ours, we've been getting an adjustment downward, and so if, if we did not have as of a good testing volume number there, the 320, our number would have been 5.7 for case rate, so we, it adjusted downward to 5.1, so it is a significant contributor if we continue to have people get tested when they need to.
Okay, and then also you stated that there were 11 people in the ICU, currently we're at 41% available, and just as a reminder, for community members, that does not include our surge plan if there was something to happen, that's just the active beds that we currently have, that we have on a daily basis, pandemic or not, correct?
That's right, for the ICU bed percent and the overall ventilator availability, that is based on current non-surge capacity, so, yes, our hospitals, as mentioned, are great partners, they have plans for surge capacity, these numbers are based on staffed and available beds and available ventilators.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Chair, if I may, so, could you, oops, go back to here, there we go. On the testing metric there, you see we're at 320, which is great, but you see the goal, that's 150, that's the state's benchmark, but that's not what they're using to calculate our adjustment factor.
Oh.
That, and that's what we're advocating for, we want them to use their own benchmark of 150 instead of the county floating average, which is around 230 or so, and so we still did get a very favorable adjustment from 5.7 to 5.1, but if, if they use their own state metric, 150, we just think that'd be more.
That's right, thank you.
So Madam Chair, Rigo, so we need 1.2 to get down to the seven-day average?
Yes, so the seven-day case rate average, we need to get to 3.9, we're at 5.1.
So 1.2, that's, that's a doable.
It's definitely doable, and you saw the adjustment of point, of point six factor adjustment.
That's right.
To volume, and with increased or and continued diligence from all Ventura County residents, businesses, families, on all those measures that Dr. Levin expanded on today, and we all know so well in terms of what it takes, it, yes, it's very doable and she will, and several counties, our colleagues have moved into the next tier, we will get there, it's just a matter of weeks if we continue to do well.
So if we follow what the doctor mentioned, you know, we continue with the mask and washing our hands and distancing, we can really attain that soon?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Well, one thing I think is important for our community to know is how long do we have to hold at certain times? So right now, October 6th was when we first were able to move forward into the red tier, and we had to hold that for three weeks.
Yes.
Two weeks was for school, but then if we get the number, if we hit 3.9, we have to hold that for two weeks, is that correct?
That's right.
So even though we get to, I'm looking at my calendar and it's October 27th, I believe, we still couldn't move forward into the orange, because we have to hold that orange number for two weeks. And just to remind people, our Tuesday, Tuesday is the magic day, Super Tuesdays, where we get our information from the state as to our number if we can move forward, and we can't find out if we made the metrics on Wednesday or Thursday, we have to wait every Tuesday for that. And so I just want to make sure people understand that.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that, and yes, it's two consecutive weeks of meeting the next year's numbers, and so again, with today's numbers that we expect the state to officially announce at noon, we're at 5.1. Next week, if we were to be at 3.9 or lower, we would need just one additional week, and then we'd be able to move into.
We're going to make it, Rigo.
We are, just a matter of time, but.
Thank you.
All right, so the next table, public and board members, you're familiar with this table that, you know, just for our comparison sake, we wish all counties well as they continue to move also like us in a safe manner into different tiers, this is just for a comparison on how your Ventura County is doing. You can see there that the current tier assignments, that is current numbers, the state, again, they're the only ones that can officially announce tier assignments, and so that'll be at noon, but we expect that these will be what will be released officially by them later on. What I do want to draw further attention to is our case rate. At 5.1, that's, you know, we're third best among these other seven neighboring and Southern California counties, but our positivity rate, we're actually second best among these counties, our 2.4, only Santa Barbara has slightly better, but our low HPI, health equity metric, you can see there we're number one among these counties. Our rate of 3.1, you can see, is, you know, slightly better than Santa Barbara and much better than many other counties. And again, this is, you know, just as an indicator of how your county is doing, just to showcase how, you know, continued diligence, hard work sacrificed by everyone in Ventura County will continue to improve these numbers, but our low HPI number just stands out, all the efforts that we're putting towards all communities are paying off, and I do want to caution that even though we, you know, these numbers, as I said, were number three on case rate, number two on positivity rate, and number one in health equity metric, these numbers fluctuate from week to week, so next week we could be, you know, anywhere on here, but overall, on a, we're on a downward trend, and and I do want to, again, thank everyone for their efforts. On testing rate, there is, there we are for the average for this week, we're at almost 320, and only LA had slightly better of these comparing counties in terms of the testing rate, and so, again, we're doing very well in all these measures compared to our colleagues.
And I do know that counties are competing, supervisors are competing to try to get these rates lower. I was on Fox News last Tuesday, and we were talking about LA County not able to get to the number they want to, and what was Ventura County doing, and I had to give accolades to our staff and our community for being so diligent in getting the testing and really trying to stop the spread so that we can educate our kids and keep our businesses open. So it's fun to hear the competition, I just wish it was a competition of something else.
Yeah. All right, so the, you've seen this graph, the health equity metric, you see that it continues to do a downward trend, and we're closing the gap literally between the different healthy places index quartile census tracts, and so you see that at one point in early August, there was a big gap, and we've continued to close the gap between the overall county average for positivity rate and the positivity rate in the lower-income, high-density communities that we've displayed before, and in fact, on that, I have a new map, hard to, to tell in detail, but it does have the layout of the census tracts and also zip code. So we saw the list of the communities, not just in the Oxnard area and in the Santa Clara Valley, but it's pretty much spread out where we do have census tracts that are in the lower healthy places index quartile, corresponding to, again, our continued efforts to bring all communities in alignment with improved numbers, and we're trending well, but again, this map displays that it's in various zip codes in various counties, not just Oxnard Plains, and not just in the Santa Clara Valley, where we have a little bit higher positivity rates and also higher case rates, but again, even in those communities, it's a downward trend, and this week, our average for the low HPI quartile is among the best in California.
Good news.
Chair Long?
Yep.
Could I please?
She's not here, go ahead.
Hear what the colors on the map represent? The key is so small, I can't see.
Yeah, so the, the blue corresponds to the lower quartile HPI numbers, census tracts, and they're, they're, it's hard to see the detail, but it also points out the zip codes. So we'll make this map available on our website and, I believe, the slides as well, and so that's basically drawing attention to the, the quartiles of the healthy places index that takes into account, again, the income of, average income of that community, the educational attainment and other factors, and so the lower quartile that is used for the health equity metric is in blue, and then the other colors correspond to the other three quartiles.
Thank you.
Thank you, I look forward to that. And then, while I've interrupted, previously, we have found that certain areas have had kind of a rash of COVID, if you will, jails or some packing houses, do we have any of those situations now that are affecting our numbers?
Yes, good question, Supervisor Parks, at, at the end of my presentation, I have a summary of the cases for this week, but nothing stands out as any one large outbreak as we had impacts for previous weeks, like the jail cases or the packing houses or the housing situation complex in Oxnard. None of those large-scale situations have been impacting our numbers, we've not had large-scale outbreaks.
And, Rigo, you really concentrated in those areas, you know, that they were impacted, like, for example, the 930 and 33 in Oxnard, and, and the packing houses over, and where was it, in Santa Paula?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, thank you for that, too.
It is so great to see that we know how to stem the spread, you know, we are effective, looking at, for example, between August and September with the health equity, just seeing it absolutely made a difference as a result of the measures that were put in place, so it's, it's good to see that we can do this, and hopefully California can continue to do as well as it is compared to the rest of the United States, right? Where we have some tremendous increases throughout the United States, so hopefully we can continue to use those measures that we know are effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. The, on that note, the next slide is updated with the week that today the state is releasing data on, October 10th, and you see a comparison for both the key measures of case rate in the first two columns and positivity rate in the next two columns, and it's comparing week-to-week change. You see that overall, there's improvement in most communities by zip code, you know, we do have a few that, that are still on the higher end, but as on, on average, again, there's actually a typo there, it's from 5.2 to 5.1, that's the modest improvement in case rate from last week to this week, and you see that, again, most zip codes remained stable, if not improved. And then on the last two, the third and fourth column, that's for positivity rate, and you see there also continued improvement, and that, we moved from 2.7 to 2.4 as a county average, and you see that, again, most zip codes are continuing to trend in the right direction as well. And again, this is week by week, and so, you know, one week, we may have one particular zip code slightly up, and as long as a majority and on average, we continue to track downward is the, the key to, to this comparison slide.
Supervisor Zara goes ahead.
Pyro, is that correct?
Okay, so. So, yes, we can point out many of these are in my district. And I just want to say thank you to the team. We have changed hours of operations for testing. We have changed the location of the Santa Paula just quickly. We report that there are no lines. We're working with our community members to ensure that people are testing. So, I actually think that we're doing a really good job of it. I do know that they're in purple, but those are places that we're focusing. If we don't know this data, how do we make sure we can make more of an impact? And so, thank you for working with my team in getting this done.
Definitely. And again, this is just a comparison, a snapshot, snapshot in time comparing two weeks. The overall trend, you'll see from previous weeks, further back, the drastic improvement in all these zip codes.
That's great. I would just follow up on that, that, as we said at the outset, we're using data, and we look at this data, we look at the zip codes, and we're already doing a lot of testing and outreach in these areas, but we're doing even more than that now. We're sort of redoubling our efforts, even though the trend is good. You'll hear more about that.
I'll let the manager here and is come up with a comparable week-to-week, you know, because we can see the difference.
Well, and that's what they have, is that. And I just want to bring the human value to this. So, as a worker in Fillmore or Santa Paula, I need to go to my job. I need to feed my family. I need to do the things I need to do. And I also have to trust the medical testing, that they're going to tell me that I am positive or I am negative. Or I just don't have the time to get to there because I'm working long hours and I'm working two jobs or all these, there's lots of different stories of it. So, I appreciate us actually thinking and listening to what the human factor is and really trying to make it as easy and accessible for our community. So, I think this is making a purpose. This is why our numbers aren't spiking even higher.
Excellent.
It's really getting us to focus very well.
Good comparison.
Thank you. All right. So, this is a slide, Supervisor Parks, you were asking about, you know, have you seen any particular large outbreaks, you know, those last few weeks? And we have not. This is just some indicator of the types of cases during this week. We'll have this slide updated each time. But you see that still the majority of cases are among pretty much family members. Over 40% of the cases have a same address, so it's person-to-person transmission, namely within the household. So, we do need continued efforts, you know, for isolation and quarantine of those contacts, including when they're family members. And we do have that capacity to assist families in their isolation and quarantine orders and measures. 24% of, 24 cases or about 7% of the cases do involve large gatherings of various types. And so, as Dr. Levin confirmed and reaffirmed, and we all know that, you know, this disease, this virus is transmitted from person to person, and the larger the gathering and the more indoors and enclosed places it is, the more risk there is for that transmission. And so, it's not surprising that our second highest type of community transmission is happening in large gatherings. We do have about 5% of our cases associated with an outbreak, but there've been smaller outbreaks, no additional large ones as those examples that we mentioned earlier. We have not had large outbreaks. Outbreaks is three cases or more in any one setting, by the way. About 2% or eight cases were residents from long-term care facilities. We do work very closely with our long-term care facility partners to support them and their staff in providing that excellent care that they do to long-term care facility residents in a safe manner. But we do have cases among that workforce. And we've had also similarly 16 cases with the healthcare workforce, and we appreciate all the sacrifice, dedication, and excellent care that our healthcare providers are providing for all COVID individuals and all individuals. And there is some risk there, and we have had, for this week, we had 16 cases among healthcare workers. And last week, we had three cases among farmworkers. This week of October 4th through 10th, which is, again, the week that the state is releasing data on today, we only had one case among farmworkers. So, this just kind of gives you an indication of the types of cases among essential workers and vulnerable populations.
Great. That's one, that's absolutely great. I love that. One, one too many.
And Supervisor Parks, you had. I should probably turn my mic on. Supervisor Parks, you had made a question on this. Does this answer your question in regards to the, any large exposures?
Thank you very much. Yeah, it does answer my question. Doesn't look like there's been any large ones, and that's great. You don't want those outbreaks.
Yes. I think it's really important that, also, that connection with our ag, our farmer, our farmers, our packing houses. No one wants to have an outbreak because we need to get food to the people that need it. So, really making sure that we're as operational as possible is important.
Also, our jails. The jails were one of our primary problems, and it's good to see that they got a handle on that one, too.
Exactly. And so, making sure that we do do the testing, I think, will be important. We haven't talked about it, but I'm hoping that we are continually going to do the testing because people are brought in, and the exposure to that makes concern to me. And then, also, our long-term homes, making sure that our most vulnerable get that testing so that it doesn't spread. I know, I'm appreciative of them being able to get people, their family, to come back and see them in an outside way, but I still want to make sure that they're safe and be able to be social, too.
And one of the things that we took care of is each 5th Street, you know, that farmworker housing, that's, that was really horrible at one time, but now it's down to zero.
Yep.
We take credit for that, too.
Yeah, it's definitely a partnership. I know the Sheriff's Office is, was on top of that outbreak. It's completely under control now. They do do testing of all new inmates, and there's also, there's been periodic testing, and there's still no, my understanding is still no staff that became positive as a result of that outbreak. So, it was great working with OES to provide the testing and with the sheriff's personnel to contain and mitigate the situation. And our public health team was there, working with them, as we do with the long-term care facilities also for periodic testing and for helping them with additional measures. We also work closely with the state-assigned liaison for long-term care facilities. So, whenever there is an outbreak, and we've had several, we're there to provide that support, whether it's testing or providing additional PPE or reinforcing the safety measures.
And our numbers are going down with all that work.
Yes. All right. So, lastly, more quickly here is the slides we're all familiar with. Just confirming that we continue to trend downward. This is the daily case rate per 100,000 resident. Our initial goal, actually, to reach the current red tier was seven. As I mentioned before, we'll update this slide. Our current next goal is 3.9 to reach the next tier, which is tier three orange. So, we're at 5.1. We need to reach 3.9 now that we met our initial goal of 7.0. And again, I think everybody knows, but just a note around schools, we needed to continue to have these metrics met for the red tier for two consecutive weeks before schools could start. We projected that they would be able to start tomorrow. And in fact, with today's numbers, we have met that benchmark of two, 14 days staying in the red. And so, schools, yes, as they have already planned, several of them, different, different weeks that they, and months that they anticipate opening. But nevertheless, it's official that as of tomorrow, schools, if they're ready, if they want, and if they have all their plans in place, they can start as early as tomorrow. And again, some are starting tomorrow, and some are just depending on their situation. Could be in a few weeks after their break or what have you. There's different situations, and all that is up to the schools. But now, again, congratulations to all Ventura County residents for your diligence in getting their numbers down so that schools can open up when they're ready for in-person instruction. Testing positivity, I mean, that one, everybody knows, we're doing just excellent. And so, we really appreciate everyone's work there. And our hospital numbers, again, have stabilized on the very low side of things from our high in July and August. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, otherwise, we'll bring up our next speaker.
Yes, I do have a question in regards to the flu shots. I personally took, I don't normally do it, but I took my kids to their family doctor and got their flu shots. I went to CVS and got my flu shot. I read, and the reason why I did this is because it stated that it was a decrease in 20 to 30% of the case that you could get COVID or infected by another virus of some sort. And so, I'm just making sure that our testing systems, that the flu, the flu shots are available for our community, at our clinics, at all the locations that we need to, and that we have the vaccine. In years before, we've had shortages. And so, I'm thinking that the urge of our families to make sure that their kids, as they're going back to school, that we're getting those kids the flu vaccine to give them the greatest advantage of not getting sick. That's our common theme, correct?
That's right. We strongly, highly encourage always around this time for residents to get their flu vaccine, this time especially. And so, it is available. We work with all our county partners, both within our county system and outside, so all the hospitals and their community clinics. And others get an allotment that we get, our office at Public Health, from the state. And though, that vaccine is for community clinics, which could be held at each facility as long as it's open for the community, there's a list of community flu clinic events that is on our county website. And so, residents are encouraged to partake in those community clinics for the flu. We've had some particular scheduled events, such as in Oxnard, we had a large drive-through event that was very successful a couple of weeks ago, where over 700 individuals got the flu vaccine. We're having similar drive-through special events in Moore Park and in Santa Paula coming up. And again, these are just large-scale drive-through events, but there's many other smaller-scale community events already planned and scheduled by either the healthcare agency, ambulatory care, public health, but also many other systems, including Clinicas, Community Health Memorial, all the other health systems are also scheduling these flu clinics, and so, the public is welcome to attend those.
Great. And then, the same thing, there's no magic killer of the COVID-19, but wash your hands, keep social distance. And the other thing I've read is just the fresh air. We say to go outside, but to make sure if you're in a home that you have some fresh air coming through, so it's not recirculating the air as well for viruses and such, correct?
Definitely. So, outdoors, better. Smaller groups, better. And definitely, good hand hygiene is what is needed for both flu and COVID.
Thank you very much. Supervisors, any other questions? Yes, Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I just want to emphasize something you just said there, and particularly people who live in the coastal area where the climate is moderate all the time. I know a lot of people are just constantly leaving their windows open and having constant outside circulation. I know some places, you know, where it gets up to over 100 in the inland areas, that's harder to do. But every place that people come, they ought to leave their current, you know, their houses just with constant air circulation, so nothing builds up. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisors, Ericosa, did you have a comment?
I just, I want to share with Rigo, I got my flu shot and pneumonia shot. Very, very important. Get your shots.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Get your shot. Also, is any other supervisors on Zoom have any questions or comments?
All right.
Okay. Thank you so much, Rigo. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. And next is Ashley Bautista, highlighting some of the particular efforts in our low HPI, high-density communities.
Great. Thank you so much. Ashley, thank you for being here today. I know it's so busy to get all the communication out for our community, but I wanted to first by saying thank you for you and your team to making all the communication out there. I can't believe how much information we've been sharing with our community, and it's really been wonderful working with you. And I just wanted to start off with that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Good morning, Supervisor Long, Supervisor Zaragoza, Supervisors on Zoom, Mr. Powers. Thank you. It has definitely been a marathon since March in communication, but it's been a wonderful opportunity. So, we are still pushing our messaging, of course, on our social media platforms. I encourage viewers watching to plug in on Facebook, on Instagram, on Nextdoor, as well as Twitter. But we have a lot of community members that are not on social media and not accessing information online. So, we really encourage community members who are online, of course, to get plugged in and to access our website, venturacountyrecovers.org. FAQs updated regularly, information on how you can subscribe in both English and Spanish to get daily updates. But to reach our community members who are not online, we are thinking outside of the box. So, we continue to put ads in both Spanish and English in all print publications throughout the county. But now, we are also increasing that with bus ads. So, we have roving billboards throughout the county. There are 21 buses that will have our ads. Our messaging is on prevention. There will also be ads on the inside of the buses, 68 buses, the entire fleet of Gold Coast Transit. We appreciate the partnership.
And I'm sure that's working, because I've seen the electronic signboards on Ventura Road and so forth in Oxnard.
We've also expanded our electronic signboards. And that has been a great partnership. Our crew and OES, they're wonderful in moving those around. We've really targeted areas. As Rigo has mentioned, we've put signboards in Oxnard, in Santa Paula, in Fillmore, in targeted areas in Nylund Acres, in El Rio. The messaging is in English and Spanish. It has to be quick and to the point because you're limited on text space on signboards, but we try to move those signboards around. And that has been one of our efforts of many. We're also putting.
I was over on Colonial Road and Rose the other day, and there's a big flash, you know, wear a mask, wash your hands, you know.
We've tried to use it in high-traffic areas, and we're moving it around.
Major traffic.
Yes. And so, that's been one of our efforts. In addition to that, we have ads on shopping carts, both in the front of the cart and then where a child would go in a shopping cart, and then PSAs in grocery stores, as well as our regular PSAs in both Spanish and English. We're also working with our community partners. We have calls every Friday with partners in the Santa Clara Valley, as well as targeted areas in Oxnard, and partners have been wonderful in also sharing information, also print information. We also have postcards going out to these targeted areas. So, we're hitting social, print, mail, roving billboards. And so, we hope that these efforts will help encourage the community to not only be cautious with social distancing, wearing masks, and getting tested. You can get tested in our county seven days a week, no appointment needed, super easy. I myself was tested on a Friday evening, got a text the next day with the results. And so, it's quick. And if you have kids, you can also take them, and it's so easy. I myself have four kids, took them in my minivan. You know, you help your child administer the test. It's not scary, super easy. So, if you've been exposed in a crowded area, if you serve the public, it's an opportunity to make sure that we're slowing the spread in our county, and we really need folks to make sure that they have access, and they do throughout the county.
I mean, I belong to the Gold Coast Transit Board, too, that, to the last bullet point, we, our board there really promotes that advertisement in the buses, you know, make sure that people come in with their mask, you know, and make sure that they read, you know, all the particulars on what to do. That's really effective.
And we're grateful for our partnership with Gold Coast in actually putting ads inside the buses on every single bus.
Well, I think we've called about a million some people a year, so, you know.
Yeah. And then, we also have ads on the bus stops, so 32 bus stops as well. So, we hope that these efforts will continue to.
Right now, just for information, too, for the board members and the public, right now, our rights are free all the way to the first of the year. If you want to ride the bus, Gold Coast Transit, no charge, which is really great, you know. We're using some of Kerry's monies to take care of that.
That's wonderful.
Just for information.
Wonderful. Supervisors, any questions?
I would just thought that Gold Coast doesn't come to the East County, but I'm glad that we're able to focus on those areas in particular that have the higher outbreaks and more COVID cases. So, I'm glad that we are able to have those buses, as well as the tremendous ad campaign out in that area, because it's very focused and targeted when we can reach those areas that have the most number of cases. And also, I believe all the buses are free, not just Gold Coast. I think the Transportation Commission buses, too, the Vista buses, too, is my understanding.
Well, I appreciate you stating that, Supervisor Parks. I was going to ask Ashley, I've been talking with my team, as to how can we more effectively get words out? We think we are. Appreciate the Spanish and English testing in Santa Paula that just hit, was, had to be moved, but we changed the times and everything. One board I'm on is the Heritage Valley Transportation Board, which is crucial for that 126. And so, I think it's all. And so I think it's also important not just working with Gold Coast, which they're fabulous, don't get me wrong, John, but working with them as well. So many, 30% of our high school students are, our kids are taking those buses when they go to school. And the transportation between Santa Paula and Fillmore is really important. What they also do is the dial rides. So it's not just the bus system, it's the dial rides. So making sure that those vehicles, I don't know how, you give them a magnet for their car or something, but putting information there would be really beneficial for our area, because they do transfer seniors and so forth, too.
And Madam Chair, the VCTC, of course, you know, promotes that, too, which is really, really important throughout the whole county.
Right. I was just, you know, we're thinking the health metrics, and we talked about those zip codes and really making sure we're focused on those. So I know where the communication is really getting out there, so thank you. And those press conferences, I know we talked about at the very beginning if that was needed for our community, but like you said, not everyone is on social media, and they do need to see that person-to-person interaction and talk about the issues. So I appreciate that. I think we're on 50 or something now. That's a lot of public speaking, but that's good. We're doing it for our community. So just thank you for all the efforts on it.
Thank you. We encourage the community to tune in tomorrow at 1 o'clock for our press conference every Wednesday at 1:00. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley. And now we'll hear a testing update from Barry Zimmerman. It's the Chief Deputy Director.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, Chair Long, members of the boards. Quick update, just to show the results of all the conversation that's gone on thus far, in particular around testing, and that it's continuing to be a strong asset in our effort to combat the COVID virus. Just as an information, the system still has capacity. We're still able to do the volume and high-volume testing, so anyone should not feel discouraged going to our main drive-through and walk-up sites at the fairgrounds. Has plenty of capacity. The turnaround time is still a day associated with results, that if someone comes in, like on a Sunday, by Monday night, they should have their results back to them. If you can see our trend, we were trending downward. Now we've kind of leveled out at a good high level, and we still have capacity to go higher, but we're up around 7,000 tests per week. That's week over week, even with Santa Paula transition from its one site to the new site was down a few days, and we still maintain a high level of testing associated with the weekly totals. This is just giving you a trend of our high-capacity sites here that are still trending very well in maintaining the volume. And there, we have put out the word for those that are, for the schools and others that are starting to open up, that these sites are accessible to them. They do have hours, the majority work from 10:00 to 7:00 at night, so that gives a pretty good span of time when people are out of work to also access those locations. The Santa Paula site, as well as the Oxnard College site, open over the weekends, and so anyone can access those sites as well. We have capacity for those businesses and the schools that need to regularly test to do so at these locations. I just going to give a quick illustration and complimentary with Ashley's work in reaching out to the communities. These are some of our targeted pop-up sites that we've done throughout the time, and we have targeted community efforts in some of the harder-reach areas there, and we'll continue to schedule sites. We are working right now with some school sites to do them, and then we will work back onto these harder-reach communities on a regular basis. Also, there are more capacity being built to address maybe more particular employers who may have large number of individuals to be tested, that we could also schedule and work on those as well. So it's just indicated that 1,500-plus individuals in targeted reach efforts have been reached through these smaller pop-up testing locations. So that's just to give you an update and an illustration of where we are with testing.
Can I ask you a question on the testing? Is it available for our superintendent, our principals, to go to a site and experience it, so they can go for free and experience it? The reason why I say that is I was kind of doubtful of how much pain it was or whatever, and I actually had to do it myself to get it and find out that it tickles and it's uncomfortable, but it's easy to do. I'm just trying to see, because it's the mental health also, it's calming people, that anxiety of what is that test. So I'm just hopeful we're communicating to those groups to, if they're welcome, to check out a test site, please come down.
It is a very simple process. They have it down to a science as far as interacting. They're professional in gathering the information that is required. And the test itself, I've done it myself, is very, very simple in that regard. It's not painful, and it takes a few minutes, and then you're done and you're on your way. So, you know, there should be no barriers or hesitations, that this is a huge procedural activity to get tested.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Barry. And so your board, of course, has prioritized from the beginning support for our vulnerable populations, and the team has done a great job. Here's just a snapshot update on our numbers, and this reflects the work of our county departments, human services, Area Agency on Aging, our community partners, our reassigned county employees. And you can see now over 2.2 million served, million meals served.
That's to be underlined. I cannot believe 2.2 million.
It sounds made up. It's real.
That's a big, big number.
Yeah. And now you'll notice also 160 individuals currently being housed in the Project Room Key with the voucher program. That's an increase. We've been at 130, 140, so that's gone up, and they continue to get wraparound services. And we'll go through all of these efforts. You see the farmworker household assistance, over, you know, close to 4,500 applications received. I believe we heard from Mel recently that they've evaluated those applications, and the ones that are qualified are roughly closer to about 4,000 now. So more to come on that, continuing to look at funding sources for that, both in the community, with our grower partners, and possible CARES Act funding for that. Last point I'd raise, too, is just on our business efforts. We talk about our Business Ambassador Program, that's kind of like it's routinely given an update, and I really don't do a good job of it. I don't know another county that has a program like this, this Business Ambassador Program. They may have it, but I don't know. I haven't heard of one. And I think this is really helping our community, it's helping our business, it's limiting the spread. There's over 15,000 businesses that have registered in VC reopens now. And because of the work of Kim Prilhart and Charles Ginkel, Environmental Health, our city partners, their code enforcement departments, over 95% of those businesses have been visited, now personally visited, over 95%. That's over 14,000 businesses. That's why there's only three violations, one of the reasons, out of 4,000 businesses inspected by the state. So it is remarkable. And anyway, I just want to make sure I highlight that, and it's also a great reflection on our businesses, large and small, who get it and want to comply and are complying. So with that, that's the end of our report for the day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Supervisors, any questions, comments?
Madam Chair, again, you know, I have to commend-
Supervisors, Eric Goza, go ahead.
Our team, you know, just, you know, like, you know, we're moving forward, you know, like, we're working together, I think is really important, and having our teams, you know, and Rego and Dr. Levin and all our folks working together is just phenomenal, you know. Just, I just commend everybody for an excellent, excellent job. So we're going to go to our next level next week, is that correct?
Right. We do have two public comments. I wanted to make sure I gave the supervisors a time first. So Jesus, Hesu Wettin, thank you so much. Apologize for misinterrupting, misstating your name. Please go right ahead. You have a minute and a half. We'll get our IT going. I heard you. Please go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Hesu? Go ahead. Yes, we can hear you. You have a minute and a half.
You can hear me. I really wish I had three minutes. I have a lot to say. This, I'm being, I'm actually physically ill listening to this conversation. I get that you would be doing the right thing if you had the right information, but you're acting on the wrong information. Cases are irrelevant. We've never measured cases, we've only measured deaths. A New York Times article reported 90% of positive tests have such low viral loads that people are neither sick nor contagious. There's been no excess mortality since mid-May. We've only had two deaths in the entire county that didn't have comorbidities. Did you not hear about the 34,000 scientists and doctors who recently signed the Great Barrington Declaration recommending we resume life as normal while protecting the vulnerable? These included epidemiologists and medical professors from Harvard, Stanford, Oxford. These are the experts, not Robert and Rego. Chair Long, I want to talk to you about the flu shot at some point. There's only been one double-blind study on the flu shot, and it showed that kids who got it had 4.4 times higher chance of getting a respiratory infection over the following nine months. It damages the immune systems. You should be hearing from both sides of the story before making more catastrophically bad decisions. I will send you the information.
Thank you, Hesu. And please, for anyone, you can send questions, comments, or concerns to clerk of the board at Ventura.org. Also, all of our board emails are on Ventura.org site as well. Thank you for your information. Next is Stephen Cozel.
Okay.
Hello, sir. Go ahead.
Can you see me? Yes, okay. Yeah. I have a couple real quick comments. I think I have a minute and a half. I want to thank the Information Officer for responding to my questions from the last board meeting. There are a couple of questions, though, that I had with respect to contact tracers, and I don't think that the county is following the best practices with respect to the number of contact tracers when you look at the number of cases that you identify. I think best practices state that a county should have at least five contact tracers per new case to contain the spread, and it's still spreading slowly in the county. I still haven't seen good data on what your metrics are with respect to test-to-trace time, and also haven't seen good data on how long it takes results to get back. I've heard anecdotal comments in this meeting about people that have had their test come back the next day. I can tell you from personal experience in our family that it's still taking two to three days. And there was just a recent survey that was published on NPR. It's called "The State of the Nation: 50 State COVID-19 Survey," that stated that it's still taking, on average, 2.7 days for results to get back. That's a concern. And my final comment is that I think you guys on social media still aren't reaching your audience, and I just look at the meeting today, and I have to ask, how come you guys aren't wearing masks during your meeting? I think you guys need to be modeling good behavior also, and that is a question that a lot of the public asks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Powers?
Yes, thank you, Charlie. Mr. Cozel, thank you for those comments, and those are things that we measure. So we'll have Rego Vargas come up, talk about the test to tracing time, and maybe Mr. Zimmerman talk about results time. Thank you.
Yeah. Good morning again, Rego Vargas, Public Health Director. Thank you for those questions around the contact tracing. Please let me assure you and the public that we have a robust cadre of trained, redeployed county workforce and public health staff, and others, 130 of them that have been fully trained and ready to be redeployed. We have about 40 that are currently working with our team on contact tracing. We are current with all contact tracing efforts, 99% rate in terms of us attempting to make contact with every single contact of a positive person, and over 90% success rate in reaching every single contact person. So as you can imagine, within 24 hours, we don't always successfully make contact with someone, but we do make that attempt almost 100% of the time. And again, within a week to two weeks, within a week period, over 90% success rate in making contact with individuals. So we have the staff and the expertise with both in-house training and state-certified training for contact tracers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas, and maybe fill in now from Mr. Zimmerman on the test results.
Yes, thank you. The test results are within a day right now, on average. And let me explain the process by which the timing occurs there. So at all our drive-through and the fairground sites, all the samples are collected nightly, and they are transported via carrier to the lab that night down to Monrovia. So the sites close around 7:00. The carrier picks them up shortly thereafter, transfers them down. The first results from that, so if you had your test in the morning, then it would take that day, that night, it would go down. The next day, we see results coming back that following night when the tests are run. It is not on a business calendar in a sense, or time, the lab runs 24/7, and the results, when they post to CalReady, as the lab is required, also sends the notification out to the individual to access their results. So we do see individuals receiving results, on average, right now, based on the volume of activity that is going through 24 hours or less, or depending if you got your test first thing in the morning, it would be a little bit longer than 24 hours, but it would be the next day thereof, two, day and a half.
So Madam Chair, Barry, the results are stated online, so somebody takes-
Results are, every individual receives an option to receive a text message or an email automated to them to see the results, and it goes directly to their phone. There's no intermediate individual involved in getting-
That's within 24, 48 hours or so.
That's correct.
That's great. Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. And with that, that ends our public comment on the COVID-19 items. We'd like to thank all of our department and our community for working so diligently on this. This is a way of life, as we know it now, and making sure that our family and our community is safe. So thank you very much for caring about this and making sure that we do what we need to, to keep safe. The next item I'm going to bring up is our public comments. We have one person, they have a minute and a half. Oh, we have three. One video, one Zoom, and two being read. So the first one is Deborah Baber. You have a minute and a half. Deborah? Go ahead.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but we can't see you.
Can you see me?
No. There you go.
Can you?
There you are.
Okay. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Deb Baber, proud Trump Republican, with Constitution News reporting to you live from outside Government Center, where this meeting, this public meeting, is being held. We have breaking news, people. The coronavirus here in the Government Center is smarter than elsewhere in the county. The strain of COVID-19 surrounding me right now knows it cannot affect citizens who come here to vote. That's right. You heard it correctly. Breaking news, COVID-19 at the government building is so smart, it knows it cannot affect voters who come here. You can come here and cast your ballot in person. You do not need to wear a mask. Your temperature will not be taken. COVID-19 knows it cannot attack you while you are here. Voters coming here do not have to wear masks. Not only that, this is breaking news in its outstanding. We should thank these esteemed political Board of Supervisor bureaucrats for single-handedly discovering the cure for COVID-19. Get out and vote, and do it in person. Come on down to the Government Center and vote in person, unmasked and free of any threat of COVID-19. This is Deb Baber, proud Trump Republican, reporting to you live from outside of where the Board of Supervisors is, having gone inside and talked with people inside the building, unmasked, without a temperature. Come on down, vote for Trump. It's the way of life that we love. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Baber. Next is Tracy Eckerson.
Good morning, Chair Long, Supervisors, and CEO Powers. The email says, "As an owner of a dance studio in Santa Paula, I wish to address our classification as a gym, and the 12-foot-distant rule, 'dance studios are performing arts and-" the twelve-foot-distant rule. Dance studios are performing arts and should be classified as such. In addition, we shouldn't have to adhere to a twelve-foot distancing rule for the following reasons. All dancers wear masks while indoors. Everyone has their temperature taken when they-- and then enters the studio one at a time. In addition, they must use hand sanitizer before entering and exiting the studio, and are frequently reminded to wash, sanitize their hands throughout the class. Each dancer has a box area which they stand and dance in. There is no equipment, just a taped square. Our classrooms have cross-ventilation with doors on opposite sides to allow for fresh airflow throughout the studio. We have implemented strict cleaning protocols, cleaning after each class and cleaning the restrooms after each use. Classes are more like cohorts. Students dance with the same group of students and take class with the same teacher each week. Role is taken every day for class, so we know exactly who is in contact with who, and therefore can easily contact trace. For these reasons and more, we ask that the dance studios be allowed to resume business with the six-foot distancing rule and not be labeled as a gym, since we are no way comparable to one. We should be considered what we are, a performing art." Thank you for your time and consideration, Tracy.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Kelce-- Thank you for your comments. Next is Kelce Eckerson.
Dear Board of Supervisors, I am writing to ask that you reconsider the twelve-foot-distant guideline for dance studios. I have been dancing for twenty-five years and teaching dance for twelve years. I understand the reasoning of this rule when applied to traditional gyms. However, dance studios are not comparable. Dance studios consist of children and teenagers who aren't sharing weights and other equipment, nor raising their respiration rates nearly as high as the members of traditional gyms. A typical dance class may consist of a simple warm-up across the floor where students wait their turn in a distance line and practice skills one at a time, and center floor, which is where students practice other distance skills. All this is, all this to say, most of the class is spent at a regular respiration rate, where masks and six-foot distance will certainly keep our students safe. Additionally, dance studios should be allowed to have six-foot distance because dancers are already trained to be aware of their spatial awareness. They are trained from the time that they are two to stay in their formations. To be extra cautious, dance studios like ours have taped the floors and given each dancer their own box to dance in. Our studio in particular offers great airflow and cleaning protocols, and our dance community strongly believes that we keep our students safe. We urge you to witness the safety of our studio and other studios in the county. Our address is below. Thank you for your careful consideration. Kelce Eckerson.
Thank you very much. I want to remind everyone that we can, sorry, I want to remind everyone, if you have questions in regards to the COVID-19 steps that we take, you can go to ventura.org, which is our county website. We can go to venturacountyrecovers.org as well. For election information, you can go to our election site at ventura.org to understand the rules and regulations associated with it. Also, in our agenda, you will see how you can be a part of our public meeting with Zoom, on phone, and through emails, making sure that you sign up to speak, and that you can send any information to clerkoftheboard@ventura.org. We want to make sure that our public has as much of voice as we can in this process. So, thank you very much. Our next item that I'm bringing up is forty-seven. It is in conjunction, I feel, with our COVID-19 as to making sure we're doing the best for our homeless situation. And so it's, what we're doing today is I'm coming to the board to ask to research funding options to support the facility improvement project for the Spirit of Santa Paula Homeless Shelter. This is a shelter that is in Santa Paula, and it began in two thousand and eight after Kay Wilson Bolton discovered a deceased, a deceased homeless man in a local church on Christmas Eve. And through the partnership developed over the years with local churches, businesses, nonprofit organizations, volunteers in the County of Ventura, the Spirit of Santa Paula Homeless Services now include year-round shelter with max capacity of forty-nine beds. They have drop-in services and one-stop partnering with Ventura County. They provide meals through food rescue, food share distribution, and the many meals program. They provide our homeless showers and laundry, housing, healthcare, and employment navigation, telephone and email access, rental, and utility assistance, and also family support. They have currently moved to a new location, which is able to provide the up to forty-nine beds for our homeless, and they have initiated a campaign for the shelter and have nearly completed the first phase of a two-phase project. At the board, we speak a lot about homeless, and I know we have partnerships in Ventura and Oxnard, and we've had a partnership in Santa Paula as well as to a homeless shelter. And so I'm asking today to look at how we can help this homeless shelter, because currently, they have, they received a grant from the California State of California, spearheaded by Assemblywoman Monique Lamon, for their food rescue program to build their commercial kitchen and to provide purchase of two refrigerator tracks. They've received skilled labor and materials of the Southwest Carpenter's Local Eight-O-Five. Councilmember Garman and I have been able to go in and really check out what they've done, and they've done great work. They've done, we've received funding from the County of Ventura, from their continuum of care, and the City of Santa Paula has modified their zoning ordinance to allow for the year-round shelter and has afforded Spirit the opportunity to complete their shelter project in phases. And so we've also received donations of our professional service from the Kelwek Group Architects for architectural improvements, and we've also been received the year-round shelter, which was a big step in the donation of a vacant commercial building from a local philanthropist, Naomi Pitkarin. So with all these teams, we've been able to make a real difference in Santa Paula. What we're asking is to seek assistance in the county to help fund the remaining part of the work to complete the shelter. And the Phase One remaining improvements needed is the addition of three showers that are ADA compliant, two additional sinks and toilets, additional dry storage of food and supply, a guest computer station for counseling room, which our staff can use as well, and approximately a hundred and thirty-two thousand in costs. Our Phase Two, which we're asking, which is an addition of a thirteen-hundred-square-foot addition for the exterior site, will be the Executive Director's Office, our homeless management information system, office space for the bookkeeper, space for the receptionist, and some other items, which is approximately four hundred and eighteen. The total cost of the phase to complete this project is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They've reduced the architecture by donating fifty thousand, and so the net cost that we're looking to get to make sure they receive is five hundred thousand. These improvements in the Phase One and the Phase Two will allow Spirit to be more adequately carry out its services that we all do for our homeless. And so I've asked Kay Wilson Bolton and also Dan Singer, our City Manager of Santa Paula, to speak in regards to the support of this request. So, Kay, I know you're online. It's always a pleasure to have you. And for our IT, I know it'll be Kay Wilson Bolton and Dan Singer. Kay? Can you hear us? If so, please go ahead. I think they still have to bring him in. Okay, Kay, if you can unmute your, there, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Chair of the Board Long, distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors, Michael Powers, County Council, and Ventura County staff. Surprise, this is not Kay Bolton. This is Vernon Alstat.
I have to stop you. We heard the male voice, and everyone looked at me like, who is that? Go ahead. Thank you.
Oh, this is, so Supervisor Long, you do know me. I'm Vernon Alstat. I'm actually a, one of the members of the Board of the Spirit of Santa Paula and for the Harvard Shelter. Kay had a last-minute emergency run to UCLA with one of the guests from the homeless shelter for some testing, for some pre-surgery needs. So I have picked up her responsibilities along with John Colwick at this moment. Can you see us?
Uh, no, we cannot see you, but we can hear you. There you go.
How about now?
Now I can see you. Go ahead.
Okay. So, thank you again for the opportunity to greet you this morning. As a former public employee, I recognize how critically important your time is and the time of your offices, so I will be brief. I am first going to read a statement from Kay that she handed me like ten minutes ago. So, bear with me. Completion of the Phase Two expansion at the Harvard will allow us to implement Phase Three of the Spirit's plan to make our guests from advisory to prosperity. Linking them to training and changing behaviors, and that transforms attitudes, it also prepares them for time when they can flourish in the economy. And we have the setting, the desire, and the skills to prepare and motivate those who want to make it. This is an aggressive plan, and we have already linked with professionals who have done this elsewhere on nonprofit side, and discussions are underway. We can do that without space, we cannot do that without space for training and counseling. The addition to the Harvard will put us on a good path. This work is hard, but it is doubly hard without the tools, the space, and the people. We offer an opportunity for each of you to visit this site. We know that our, your own districts, that you have your own districts, but we, you are represented in this vote, and we would like to give you this opportunity. Amazing things have been done, and we need a boost to continue those. I'm going to pass now to Mr. Singer? No, to Dan, to John.
Okay, okay. I'll sort of get the picture. I've been with Spirit of Santa Paula, my wife and I, since two thousand and two, when we started, started, that's history. Right now, what we're trying to do is to finish off this site to make a true shelter for the homeless and actually an emergency shelter for the county or the city, whatever you want to call it there. I've been a member of this community since, really, two thousand, and actually, I came here by chance as a young military officer for the Air Force. So far, we've had tremendous help from the professional community. Ruchi, Penn Truchan engineers, structural engineers, AA group mechanical engineers, veteran carpenter civil engineers, and Lenwood structural engineers have all donated their services pro bono to this project. And I continue to do the same thing, along with my wife, who's in interior design. We do need this extra space to complete the mission. Right now, we are in the process of a grant for photovoltaic batteries from the Tesla company. Very sure, we've got that one. That's like worth seventy-seven thousand. And working with the city, or working with the Southern California Edison people, we have just about gotten a thirty percent reduction in our electric bill. Just got a lot of paperwork to take care of. So we're fighting as hard as we can. We've had volunteers from the unions everywhere. It's just, it's an amazing project that has come together since the donation of the building. I don't have anything else to say other than we're ready to go. The plans are ninety percent complete, and we could have a party within days. Thank you.
Well, and thank you very much, gentlemen. We have been working for, on this for a few years, and before we could bring this to the board today to ask for the funding. Could you, gentlemen, repeat your names for the record?
I'm John Colwick, Architect.
I'm Vernon Alstat.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And tell Kay thank you so much for making sure she brought in two people for her one, because she was not able to be there. I know her heart is in such a great place. The next person we have is Dan Singer.
Congratulations, Chair Long.
Yes. Do you have any questions?
It's just, it's just Steve Bennett. I just want to make a comment on the last speaker, Vern Alstat. Mr. Alstat retired--
Um--
--actively involved.
Go ahead, Supervisor Bennett.
He's been, he's just been actively involved in trying to help provide showers, and so I'm not surprised to see him helping Kay with this project, and I just want to compliment him for his steady efforts in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Bennett. And with a concern of our concern with making sure that we're working with our partners of the city, I wanted to make sure we provided our City Manager for Santa Paula a moment to speak. So, Dan Singer, if you could.
Thank you, Chair Long, and members of the board. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, go right ahead. There you go. Now we can see you.
Perfect. You know, I got to Santa Paula about fifteen months ago, and it was so heartwarming coming from another county to see the leadership that Supervisor Bennett and the board gave by putting the two million dollars aside to really tackle homelessness in a more substantial and permanent way. And as the five of you know, the county is not immune from homelessness any more than any other place in California or the country, but we also know that we have hotspots. And so it's encouraging to see the work that's been done in Ventura, the relationship that's been formed in Oxnard, and I quickly came to realize with Spirit of Santa Paula that we were faced with an opportunity to really forge a more permanent solution and relationship here. And we began, over a year ago now, discussions with Supervisor Long and the CAO about what that might look like. Santa Paula as a kind of disadvantaged community didn't have the funding available to just do a one-on-one match, but we have made a commitment to really work with Spirit to see this permanent shelter through, and it's been a true partnership, both with the county and the city. Your continuum of care folks have been terrific to work with, and it's been a learning curve for all of us as well. Spirit is not just a group of dedicated people. It's truly a community-based facility that is providing such an important service. And so the opportunity to encourage you to direct your staff to work with us on this collaboration and find some means of permanent funding for the expansion of this facility would just go a long way in helping us tackle a very real social problem here. Be happy to answer any questions. We're also going to be making some financial commitment, and some of that will be in kind services, but also in the paying of all the fees related to this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan, and I think it's very important, you could hear from me how important this project is, but I think it speaks volumes to have Dan representing the City of Santa Paula and Kay Wilson and her board and architecture speaking about the process, because this will happen, and I am hoping that our board will support looking in the research for the ability of funding to support this facility improvement projects for both Phase One and Two for the Spirit of Santa Paula Homeless Shelter, and to return to our Board of Supervisors with a recommendation as to how we achieve that. And so with that today, I would make that motion.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
I'd like to second the motion, but I'd like to, I'd like to add one, one comment, and it doesn't, I don't even need to add it as part of the motion, but I just, just the spirit of this. Number one, I just, I really want to compliment you and all of the players in Santa Paula for coming together. It's, we've said it many times at our boardroom that government works best when it helps people help themselves, and this is a situation where people are doing a lot to try to help the community of Santa Paula. So congratulations to everybody for that. But the, the one issue, we've had a number of these things, you know, now we have one in Ventura, we have one going on in Oxnard, and this sort of becomes a significant effort in Santa Paula, and it's, and it's just wonderful. So my comment is not to distract from that at all, but I do know that we have said that one of our requirements is to have some kind of support from the city itself, and I appreciate Mr. Singer saying, you know, hey, they couldn't do a one-to-one match with us, but some kind of match, I think captures the spirit of what we're trying to do countywide. And I would just ask the CEO, respectfully ask the CEO and Supervisor Long, when this comes back, I'm sure I won't be here, but I think it's, in the spirit of it, it would be healthy if we could find some way to have some kind of financial-- be healthy if we could find some way to have some kind of financial help coming from the city of Santa Paula also. If not, you know, because it helps, it helps with the buy-in and the ownership, but it also helps with the county rolling these out in the other cities that are out there. So, outside of that, so I'm not trying to change the motion, I just wanted to make that comment, and I'm happy to second this motion. And with big congratulations to everybody involved in this. Well done, particularly Supervisor Long, well done on your part.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Bennett. And I do want to make sure those that know, we have many of our community leaders that have supported and sent in letters, LULAC, Latino Town Hall, our city managers, many of the board members and so forth, Naomi who provided the property. And so, there is a huge collaboration, and so that's, we'll be coming back with it with our recommendations of the funding and how it all is incorporated. So, thank you. The motion has been first by Supervisor Long and second by Supervisor Bennett. Without any more discussion, a vote, please. Roll call. Yes, Supervisor Parks.
Also, my compliments. I'm delighted to see this on the agenda. I have tremendous respect for Kay Wilson Bolton, and you just talked about how one person can make such a huge difference in their community. We have a wonderful opportunity now to further her great work for working with people who are homeless, and I'm just delighted to have this before us and being able to support it. Thank you.
I'd just like to echo those comments from Supervisor Parks also, Kay Wilson Bolton. She's so steady on it, it's easy to sort of overlook how powerful her impact has been in Santa Paula. Well said.
And it also says a lot just today why she isn't before us at the board, right? She's helping one of those individuals. So, just a beautiful woman. Thank you.
I completely agree. I'm speechless. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes, and that motion is unanimous. Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, Madam Chair, again, I want to thank Kay also, you know, and your efforts too, because here we are working with Ventura, working with Oxnard, and continue to work with other cities in the county. I think it's absolutely great, you know, the Spirit of Santa Paula, it's great, you know, they continue to do good work in Santa Paula, so thank you.
We don't like to come and ask for a funding, and I appreciate working with our Coalition Continuum of Care and Mike Powers and their city managers and the state for the funding, and there's just many different ways that we can do it. And so, we needed to come to the Board of Supervisors and see how much we can further it. So, thank you very much.
And our homeless need a lot of help in the county. Thank you.
Yes, yes. So, just thank you to all the board for voting on this, and also Supervisor Bennett. I'm sorry you won't be here with it because it's going to be a huge celebration, I'm hopeful.
That makes two of us.
Oh, yes. I'm losing both of these gentlemen. It's going to be hard. I have two gentlemen here from our public safety officers, and I need to get back on the beat. So, if we could, please move to item forty-five. Thank you. We're not on the beat, but back to work. Sounded good, I was trying.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Long, supervisors, Mr. Powers. The item that we are bringing before you today is the sheriff's request to enter into a two-year contract with the option to extend for two additional years with the Department of State Hospitals for a jail-based competency treatment program. It also requires us to sign the contract amendment with our provider, WellPath, to do the treatment program itself and the adoption of a resolution adding a deputy sheriff allocation to detention services, pre-trial detention for the security for the J B C T. I didn't introduce myself, I'm Commander Mike Hartman. I command the main jail, also known as a pre-trial detention facility. We have a PowerPoint here, so I can give you an overview of what J B C T is. So, under the California Penal Code, if a felony defendant is unable to either assist with their defense or understand the charges against them or understand the court process, they could be deemed incompetent to stand trial. This program is specifically for felony defendants. Misdemeanor defendants fall under the purview of behavioral health. Felony defendants fall under the purview of the Department of State Hospitals. So, if there is a felony defendant who is unable to stand trial, is declared incompetent by the court, they're ordered transported to the Department of State Hospitals. The way we currently do it is once that order is made, they get put on a list and they wait. They wait until the state hospital has somebody they could send back to us, and then we send somebody up. And sometimes this wait is months. They go to the state hospital, they get their competency restoration treatments, they're deemed competent to stand trial, they're brought back to the jail. When they come back to the jail, they often wait. They wait for their case to come back to calendar, they wait for their case to be adjudicated, they oftentimes become service resistant again, they stop taking their medications, they decompensate, and many times they become incompetent to stand trial again, and the cycle repeats itself. What we would like to do is enter into an agreement with the state to make up for the long delays that we're seeing right now. The J B C T is an expansion of bed space for the state hospitals. It will help us with the long wait lists that we have, and with the twenty-one inmates that we currently have waiting to go to the state hospital. So, the sheriff's office is requesting to contract with the state hospitals for eight-bed facility. This is completely revenue offset. The Department of State Hospitals will guarantee a daily bed rate for all eight beds, regardless of whether they're full or not. Unfortunately, we have so many incompetent to stand trial, they'll be full, we won't have a problem with that, but this daily bed rate is guaranteed. The daily bed rate covers the housing, the food, the staffing, the medical, and the jail security, the deputy sheriff that we're asking for. This is our current situation. As of when we presented this PowerPoint, we have twenty-one inmates waiting to go to Department of State Hospitals, and as you can see, the longest ones have been waiting for eight months. To me, that's an unacceptable period of time. It's our mentally ill and our most vulnerable sitting in the jail system, not getting the services that they need, just waiting to transfer up. The Department of State Hospitals, on average, restores competency in sixty to eighty days once they arrive there. The J B C T will meet that same goal. So, in sixty to eighty days, we'll be able to restore inmates to competency so they can continue their court cases in less time than typically it takes us to even send them to the hospitals themselves. I talk quickly, so I'm ahead of myself here. So, the various responsibilities for the J B C T. The jail will provide the eight-bed facility and the security. WellPath through the contract amendment will provide the restorative treatment, which involves one-on-one counseling, group therapy, socialization, all of the things they get at the state hospital. And we will also provide a security deputy. And that's basically what J B C T is. If anybody has questions?
So, yes, so these eight hospital beds, can you repeat where they'll be again?
They'll be in the main jail at the pre-trial detention facility, they'll be more specifically in Quad B. They will have a housing section where they will all live together. There is also a classroom-type setting section that will be set aside while they receive their treatment.
Okay, great. Supervisors, do you have any questions on this item?
I do want to thank the sheriff for bringing this forward. I know we had an outspoken person from the Behavioral Health Board concerned that this is not the right thing to do, but we can't change the fact that these individuals are in our system. We prefer that they were getting treatment in a hospital setting, but they are in our jails, and since they are there, being able to treat them while they are there is necessary, it's compassionate, and it's safer. So, I do appreciate that the sheriff has brought this forward, and I know we, as a board, are committed to seeing that we do all we can to decriminalize mental illness, but at this point, we certainly need to provide treatment for those, even if it is in a jail setting. So, thank you for bringing this forward, and I do support it and be happy to make the motion.
Thank you very much. I do want to state for those that are listening, even those that are on the Behavioral Health Board, WellPath is a very good contractor on this item. We have had really good success with them, and to continue working with them, I think, is very important. I appreciate you bringing this up, so that eight months, and you, I mean, think about it for your own loved one, no matter what the situation, to wait eight months to try to get them the help that they need is just, no one would appreciate that. And so, to actually have this program coming forward to say, look, we know that there's a need in our jail system, this is what we want to do, at least we can get eight in there and really help those people out, I think is fabulous. So, thank you for thinking out of the box and really going after this. So, with that.
Bob Huber, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I have Supervisor Parks. I love that we're fighting over who's going to vote for when, because this is so good. We do good things here. Supervisor Parks has did a first, I have Supervisor Zaragoza, that is a second. Appreciate all the hard work everyone is doing with it, because I know this one item is like the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot of things that are going on to get this done, and thank you for making sure all the dots are connected.
And thank the sheriff.
Powers, before I go to a vote, did you want to say?
Just real quick, thank you, Dr. Johnson, our Behavioral Health Director is here, and the department supports this effort as well. And when you think about it, these are folks that could have just fallen through the cracks, and no one would know. But the compassion of the sheriff's office saying this is not right, we have to do something about it, commend them for taking this on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, with that, I would like a roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes. Thank you very much. Unanimous. Motion has been approved. Thank you. Next item, we need to go to closed session. I know we have a ten-thirty. Oh, wait, sorry. There was another item. Yes, fifty-four. I had that. I told a clerk about it, and then I forgot about it. So, yes, fifty-four, and then we have to go to closed session. So, yes, please. Supervisor Bennett, this one's yours.
Great. Thank you very much. So, what you see in front of you, there is a pretty complicated parking modification ordinance for the Crooked Palm and North Ventura Avenue area, if you drive up Highway Thirty-three towards Ojai. And we have spent considerable time, we started on this over a year ago, working with the sheriff and trying to pull together what we thought would be an appropriate solution. We were just ready to roll it out after spending many months working on it last March, and COVID hit. And we, of course, had state mandates to not move homeless people, et cetera, and so during the early parts of COVID. And now that we've moved from purple to red, it's one of the reasons why it feels like it's appropriate, and it's also, I want to make sure that we roll out what it is that we've come up with. So, if we could go to the next slide, please. This is the situation that we're starting to see, and that is an increasing number of vehicles parking. And it was a problem before COVID. It was a gradually growing problem, but it has grown even more. And I don't want to imply that somebody parking by themselves is a problem, but having large numbers of people parking, and then you have the issues of waste disposal and all of the other things that could happen, potential fires. It's something that can get out of hand. And the next slide, I'll show you, this slide looks fairly benign. The next slide, please. That would show you one vehicle, and then another slide, I think will show the other. Or did we just, no, let's go back. Okay, let's just stay where we are. Go back, go back. There we go. Well, so there was a picture, and I don't know why it disappeared, but there was a picture here that showed lots of stuff put on the side of the road, in other words, unloaded from a camper, and people setting things up on the sides of the road. So, somehow that got lost. That's all right. Let's go to the next slide, please. So, what we are proposing, that's right, right there, please, thank you. What we are proposing is that we essentially make the area no overnight parking. Some places will be just no parking at all, other places will be no overnight parking, and then other places will be no overnight parking except by permit. And the reason for the three distinctions is that we want to have some businesses still allow their parking to take place for those businesses and for other reasons that we've been working with out there. But in other places, we want to have no parking altogether, and some places only if you have, if you get a permit. And the idea that we are advocating here and that we've spent considerable time working on is to give permits only to, I mean, give permits to people that register with our homeless program and cooperate with our homeless services program. So, that there are some people there that are really down on their luck, things have happened, they want help, and they can work with our homeless service program. We have the one-stop services out there once a week on Thursday, and if you see this long list here, these are all the things that could be provided on Thursday. And if people are working with us, we've demonstrated over and over again our willingness to try to work with people who want to work with us. If people, but we also have many people starting to pull in there, and they're simply trying to avoid camping fees someplace, and people that are not homeless and people that have the resources, and I think we should have a different policy for those people than homeless people that really are down to the only home they have left is perhaps their vehicle and a vehicle that might not be in too good a shape. So, if we could go to the next slide, please. So, we have worked really hard on this ordinance with the sheriff's office, the healthcare agency, the Human Services Agency, Public Works Agency in Rhodes, County Council, C E O's office, and Caltrans. Like I said, we started this over a year ago, and we've had to revise things, we've had to check, there are lots of legal issues, as I've mentioned in the board letter, that we have to pay attention to as we try to do something like this. But the thing that I want to most, and so, if you can take it off of the slide now, and if I could just be back on the screen, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, the Crooked Palm pictures before April twenty-nineteen? Well, this is going to be Captain Rivera, I hope, right? But if I could let everybody know, and I hope that our county sheriff, I Huber, is listening to this, but I can't imagine a better representative for the sheriff's department than Captain Rivera. He has personally invested so much of his time and energy in this issue and in working with the people there, and I've met him out there multiple times, and he has established a rapport. And you know, we hear all of these things about community policing and what kind of policing we need. Captain Rivera has been an excellent example of exactly what I think a lot of people think of when they think of the ideal public safety officer out there. He's firm with people about what kind of changes they have to make to stay in compliance, but at the same time, he's compassionate and working with them, and as a result, he's earned their cooperation. And so, I'd like to, for perspective, turn this over to Captain Rivera before we go further in this, and then there are a number of other people that I specifically want to call out after Captain Rivera. So, Captain Rivera, are you ready to do your presentation?
Supervisor Bennett, can I hold on one second and open this public hearing?
Sure, thank you.
Your public hearing has been opened. Go ahead.
Captain Rivera, are you available?
I am available, I'm here. Can you see me?
No, we're going to have I T. pull you up on screen.
I think he has a PowerPoint, Supervisor Long, so that you know. Is that right, Captain Rivera? Do you have a PowerPoint?
I do, and it's probably about forty slides, and we'll get through those pretty quickly, they're just photographs.
Is that the one that's named Crooked Palm Road?
That's correct.
Okay, I T., if you could pull that up, please, and start from the very beginning, not that one, that one. Yes, thank you. Go right ahead, Captain.
There we go, right there.
Very well. Let me get first started off. My name is Jose Rivera, I'm the captain with the Sheriff's Ventura County Sheriff's Office. with the Sheriff's Ventura County Sheriff's Office. And I am the chief of police for the Ojai Valley. And I've been in this assignment since January of this year. Now, one of the things that I, when I first took this assignment, one of the first things I noticed was the the problem over on Crooked Palm and North Ventura Avenue, the number of homeless folks that were living in those in those areas. And some of the things that I noticed when I drove through there, and I actually made it a point to drive through there every single day that I came to work, and every single day that I went home. So I can get kind of an idea what the situation was in those areas. Some of the things I noticed was there were numerous abandoned vehicles, trash, debris, and the overall condition of the campsites, they just appeared unsanitary. And just by looking at, I knew some, some things had to change in order to to make improvements for those areas. So in order to address some of these issues, we started looking at some of the local ordinances that applied to these locations. We spoke to numerous residents that live nearby, filled in numerous phone calls. I also spoke to numerous employers who have businesses in those areas, and how the situation affected them as well. I also met with many of the homeless folks that do live in that area. And the reason was to, one, introduce myself and let them know who I was. And I also wanted to find out why they were there, how they got to that themselves in this situation, and what we can do to help them out. I think that's a very important part of my job is not only, you know, the law enforcement side of it, but also trying to help folks out of a bad situation. I also spoke to numerous deputies who were assigned to these areas to talk to them about certain issues, complaints that we received. There was a B coordinator who works in this area, so she provided me a lot of good information. There's also a deputy who works as a homeless liaison, and he works hand in hand with the back back medicine, stop programs that do come to this area every Thursday. And I received a lot of good information from them that we were able to use and put together some type of plan to help improve the area and help the homeless folks that were living in there. I further looked into the history of the area. I noticed that in previous year that there had been significant amount of vehicles in this area. For example, a year ago, the vehicle estimates in this area were about 20 to 25 vehicles total. That number has risen to over 75 vehicles. This information that I gathered on the on the previous history was from Google Maps. I went into Google Maps and did a street view, which were dated April of 2019. And it's in my PowerPoint. You'll see the photographs that were taken from Google Maps, and you can see the difference in the area from what it was then to the beginning of the year and what it is now. We also completed a investigative summary of the area, vehicles that are parked there, the people that are associated to the vehicles. And like I mentioned, there were over 75 vehicles that were documented, and over 100 different campers that were staying in these areas. During the background check, we did find some folks that were on active probation parole, a few registered sex offenders, and several of them with many criminal records. Some of the issues that we that we started seeing in because of the long-term parking was a hoarding of trash at some of the sites. Sanitation was a big issue. It's a problem not only created camping issues for the campers, but also for the environment and the nearby residents. We found that most of the campers did not move from their sites and use adjacent property, storm drains and creek to dump their waste. These sites emptied in the Ventura River, which is more likely polluting the environment. A few of the campers are recyclers. They go around the neighborhood looking for discarded items, appliances that they bring back to their campsites, and they work on them to dismantle them and recycle them. So after a period of time, they accumulate quite a, quite a few items there. We've also received information from some of the businesses that they're lifting manhole covers up to dump their waste into. So and also the theft of water from hydrants. We did make one arrest of a homeless person that was stealing water. And that case is currently in the court process. There were also a number of vehicles that were abandoned. And I have to thank CHP for helping us out quite a bit. They they came out, towed a lot of these vehicles. I want to say, we probably towed about a dozen abandoned vehicles, RVs, and about, I think, three abandoned boats. So because of the area, it made it easy for anybody living outside of this location to come over and just kind of dump in the area. It's kind of like the broken window theory. If a broken window's not fixed, they're going to continue to be broken or vandalized, whatever it may be. And same applies to this area. If it's not cleaned up or taken care of, people are going to continue to dump in these areas. There were a number of thefts that were associated in these areas to the businesses. They were cutting into the fence and entering the property, sealing solar panels, tools, and things like that. One of the reasons I felt the campers were reluctant to move is that they've been on the same site for so long without any enforcement. So that developed kind of a sense of ownership for that particular site. We received information from that a camper in the area was also posting online that this was a great area for for those that that were living out of their vehicles to come, because, one, there was no enforcement. It was a great place to live, and invited others to come to the location. So during my, during my communication or conversations with many of these folks that were living in these areas, I asked them, you know, pretty specific questions, like, what drew you to this area? What, you know, what's your situation? And things like that. A majority of them came from the city of Ventura. Apparently, the city of Ventura, the police department was very strict in enforcement with those that were camping in their city, and actually offered them to come up here to this location to camp. Many of them lost their jobs and are unable to get a job. They're in dire situations, and they're barely making ends meet. So it's kind of tough on them. And, you know, there are families that are here, some with children. And I, you know, I stop in and talk to them on occasion just to check on them. But they're, they're trying their best to make ends meet. And we're trying to help them as much as possible with services, with the one-stop that they can receive there. Many of them are suffering from drug and alcohol addiction and mental health issues. And, you know, those are things that they can get help for. But the biggest hurdle that we that we come across is them accepting the help. So some of the strategies we started to explore was hire police presence, enforcing some of the traffic in the area, and meeting those, meeting those that have a large accumulation of trash. We encourage deputies to work with them and get to know them, and continue to visit their sites. I also established kind of a communication method with them. I put out announcements and have the deputies pass those out, put them on windshields or whatever it may be, any pertinent information that might help them out, or, you know, any specific ordinances that the violations on a regular basis, just to get the word out so they can, you know, take care of those issues. We continue to work with Supervisor Bennett and his staff. They had come out numerous times to tour the area, and we kept in constant communication. So tremendous support from them. CHP, again, was the tremendous help with us. We're going to continue working our efforts to ensure that the sites are cleaner, trash is picked up, better communication between deputies and the homeless. And they are actually starting to move on their own. So what we've started doing is asking them to move every Thursday to a different site. And because on Friday, we're going to come out and do enforcement. And a vast majority of them already are already doing that. So it's, it's just getting them into a habit. And received a lot of good, actually good comments from the homeless. They feel safer with the higher police presence there. Calls for service are up. We do get calls from the homeless on certain situations, which is fantastic. I've asked them to do that. Now, the proposed ordinance, I feel, is well-written. It will benefit both the nearby residents and also those homeless that are living in the area. I think it'll help set those guidelines that are needed to help improve that location. And it also helps the homeless by going to the one-stop location, apply for the permit, to be offer those services that they might need on a more regular basis. I think a lot of them are very hesitant to go there and accept the help. At least now, there'll be people there that can offer those services on a regular basis to them. And hopefully, some of those will, they will take those services and help themselves out of the current situations. So I feel this proposal is, for this ordinance, is a very huge step in the right direction. And I think it will help us continue with the improvements in this area. So again, thank you Supervisor Bennett for your leadership and your support, and especially your staff. They've been fantastic. And also the other various county entities, and also our partners with CHP. So thank you, and thanks for bearing with me. I'm suffering from my allergies today, so I'm a bit stuffed up.
Well, from our perspective, this, that's the first flaw that we've seen is you having allergies. I think everybody can, everybody can tell from just what you heard, you can just see, I mean, how many, how many chiefs of police would stop every day and check on people at this site? And it's just been remarkable what Captain Rivera has has done for the benefit of all of us. And so I want to emphasize again, how much we appreciate that, Captain Rivera. So thanks for that presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, we, before we go to public comment, I have a few other people. And I do want to get this said, just so I don't forget, there are two comments that have come in that I want to address. Some people wrote about, you know, concerns about fires and wanting us to put into the ordinance, you know, things about barbecues and those kinds of things. My sense is, we are better off letting Captain Rivera work with those, those modifications. You already are doing that, right, in terms of fire, passing out what the restrictions are on barbecues and those kind of things, correct, Captain Rivera?
Yes, recently, there was a fire down on the very north end of the avenue. We had a brush fire that one of the deputies was in the area and actually saw when it started. So after that, we passed out information on open fires. There is a county ordinance prohibiting open fires. And I provided the residents living in that area information, and they were passed out to everybody. I think I passed out a majority of them, and actually spoke to a lot of them and explained to them what was going on. So they're aware. And since then, every time I drive through, I don't see any fires, especially late at night. You would figure there would be a bonfire. And I've left city council meetings and driven through there, and it is no fires at all. So that's good.
I think the whole issue of barbecues and, you know, during red flag days, all those issues. But I think that they're better off for, I just want to address the person that wrote about that. Also, Captain Rivera, Mr. Ren Farrar, he lives at 483 North Ventura Avenue. And he thinks, I know you and I had the conversation, he thinks that he would prefer to have the, the restrictions for no overnight parking continue around the corner of Crooked Palm. And so I just want to let Mr. Farrar know, we will look into that and try to work with him. But it's, it's something that would be difficult to get changed in the the actual legal definition right now, today. But Mr. Farrar, we've heard that, and I wanted to get that on Captain Rivera's radar screen also. That's a board letter that came in. So now, if, if we could, really appreciate that, Captain Rivera. But if we could, I'd like to ask Tara Caruth from the CEO's office. And I know we're fighting time here, so if we could all be relatively brief, but if you could speak on behalf of HSA and HCA, Tara, I'd appreciate it.
Supervisor Bennett, while she's coming on, I want to let you know that we do have four public speakers on this item, or more than that, six.
Yeah, I thought we'd do them right after we hear from, hear from all the staff, so that some of these questions can be addressed.
No, it's great. I just didn't know if you knew how many there were. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right.
Good morning, Supervisor Bennett. Supervisors, this is Tara Caruth with the CEO's office in the Continuum of Care. Just joining on behalf of our county service providers and nonprofit service providers, that, that we are working to engage the people that are living in these RVs, both through the one-stop, and the homeless services team with Human Services Agency has also agreed to increase their outreach to that area to work with people on, on housing solutions and permanent, trying to help people transition from this encampment whenever possible. We're also in strong communication with our city partners as some of these individuals have moved to this location from the cities. But on behalf of our county service providers who could not join us, we just want to express our appreciation to the supervisor for including us in this effort, and, and working collaboratively on solutions to mitigate the community concerns and increase services and engagement with this population.
Thank you very much, Tara. Really appreciate it. Dave Fleisch, anything you want to mention from the Public Works Agency and Transportation?
He's coming down to the podium.
All right. Good morning, Chair Long. Supervisors, for the record, David Fleisch from the Public Works Agency. As has been very well stated previously, this is really mostly an enforcement and a human social services issue. We support and have been working with the supervisor's office on this, as Supervisor Bennett said, for over a year, trying to establish what the appropriate zones are. And we stand ready, should your board approve this, to put the signs up as, as we get directed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fleisch. And I just want to compliment Jeff Barnes and Michael Walker. Jeff Barnes was leading, coordinating the effort, and Michael Walker made it a priority here recently, and helped us get things through County Council's office. So I want to thank both of them. I also, I also want to thank Chris Russell, Human Service Agency, Deanna Handel, the Healthcare Agency, James Boyd, Healthcare Agency, and the Public Works Recycling Center on North Ventura Avenue, their partnership for providing a place for these services and stuff as we're working out there. So we're going to do everything we can to get the program up and running. I want everybody to know, this isn't going to change overnight. We have to do 30 days before we do the second read of the ordinance, and then 30 days after that. So it'll be in December. But the program should not be attracting more people. We should be gradually seeing fewer people there. And after December, it should be only people that have the permits. With that, Supervisor Long, I'm happy to open it up for the public comment from the speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. Public comments time. We have a minute and a half, and there are six people. First one up will be David Bishop. We have him on Zoom. You don't have that clerk of the board? Oh, oh, I was, we have many lists here, and I've got four different computers. So apologize. If we could have David Bishop go first.
I'm here.
Hello, we can, if you could turn up your volume, I think I heard you, but I couldn't.
I am at maximum.
Can you speak louder?
I, how's this?
Okay.
Is that a better?
And then we cannot see you, just to let you know. So.
How's that?
Go ahead. Thank you.
Kind of complicated.
I know, I know. But thank you for being patient. Go ahead.
First time on here, you have no idea how the whole thing works. I'm David Bishop. I'm a resident in Oakview. I'd like to thank the board for putting forth the plan. However, this plan is not adequate in regards to how much of this burden is not shared throughout other districts in the county. Our area has felt 100% of the burden for more than three years. The permission to camp along the roadways was to have been a temporary help for those in need who have had evacuated or lost their house during the Thomas Fire. We have made complaints and reported these concerns of ours, and have asked and encouraged our leaders to do so. We have made complaints and reported these concerns of ours and have asked and encouraged our leaders to do something. And we have waited, we have waited way too long to be heard and for something to have been done. Now, the proposed plan basically makes this illegal use of the shoulders and sidewalks for squatting legal. And it regulates this practice only in our district. Furthermore, would you not feel that roadways should even be considered for this purpose of squatting? The county must designate appropriate land, land that is further off the roadways and is not intrusive to nearby residents. The map shows two permit-only parking areas. How were these areas chosen? The board simply chose the all-too-simple location where these people already illegally reside. We request that the board investigate the most appropriate areas for this plan and share the burden equally among all of Ventura County's districts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Doug Parent and then Jerry Washburn. I see Rosalyn. Do you want me to, Doug is supposed to be next. Doug Parent, I see his name. Hi Doug, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we cannot see you, but we can hear you. You have a minute and a half. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Doug Parent. I live in the Foster Park area of Ventura County. I've been a resident here for 22 years. I do want to thank Supervisor Bennett for putting forth a plan to address the RV campers on North Ventura Avenue and Crooked Palm Lane. This issue has been a major burden to the residents of the area. We've complained, we've tolerated, and we've had our lives disrupted. We have been beyond patient, and we expect a solution from our county leaders. A few weeks ago, I started a petition to build support to put an end to this issue. We now have 700 signers. By starting this petition, I have learned how upset people are about this issue and how long it has gone uncorrected. People are demanding that something be done. The proposed plan, while it is a step in the right direction in some aspects, it is not satisfactory in many ways. The residents of this area and all of Ventura County must be heard and our concerns must be addressed. First, the plan does not end the problem. Yes, there's a sunset clause, but there are no clear goals and endpoints for this plan. In other words, what should have been a temporary problem solved years ago are now being enshrined in the law permanently with no end goal or expectations that this condition will end. This is not acceptable. Second, there is no limit to the number of campers and permits. Campers are now doubling and tripling up on the number of RVs sharing one spot. Third, there's no limitation to having personal items like sofas, furniture, storage cabinets, motorcycles, and bicycles. Fifth, there's nothing in the plan that addresses the security issues presented by these campers. And finally, there's no person or department who's being assigned accountability for the functional execution.
Thank you for your comments Doug. Next is Rosalyn Sherman and then Jerry Washburn. Rosalyn?
Hi, my name is Rosalyn Sherman, and I'm a resident for the past five and a half years in Pasadena Springs. I'm also a former homeless outreach worker and coordinator of the Safe Parking Program in Santa Barbara through New Beginnings Counseling Center. When I worked as a social outreach worker, I also got people enrolled in the homeless management information system and referred all of the people in the Safe Parking Program, which I believe is still the largest in our country, up in Santa Barbara, getting them involved in other types of services that were available to them. And we got a lot of people off the streets very quickly through rapid rehousing and providing those wraparound services through the one-stop. And I think that this project has been very thoughtfully considered and included the very best practices for regulating the parking of vehicles in the designated area here in Ventura County. And especially with the vehicle and permit tee eligibility guidelines, the way that the permits will be issued, the revocation if necessary, the 30-day term enforcement.
Thank you for your comments, Rosalyn. Thank you. Next is Jerry Washburn and then Erin Zwig.
Hi, my name is Jerry Freeze Washburn, and I'm a resident in Ohio and was born and raised here. And I want to thank Supervisor Bennett for all of your hard work in developing a plan to address the problem of the roadside campers. However, my issue today is that the plan that's been put forth is inadequate in how it addresses the severe trash problems caused by these campers, which Captain Rivera referred to in his time. For the entire time the RV campers have been in this area, trash and roadside damage has been a problem. They dump trash on the sides of the roads, behind bushes, along the freeway, under the overpasses. And some of the trailers have hordes of trash surrounding their RV sites. Additionally, the campers are causing damage by moving around rocks and damaging fences to create their RV sites. Over the past three months, the increase in trash has been unbelievable. This issue alone has done more to damage the pristine beauty of the area than even the RVers themselves. And it presents serious issues to our sensitive ecosystem. There's nothing in this law that is going to clean up the existing mess or stop the mess from continuing to grow. There's no budget and no assigned responsibility to a county department if the campers decide to not comply with the law. Since there's no way to identify who left the trash, the county must take responsibility for regular cleanup. This must be budgeted for and assigned to a specific department and also must be clearly designated in the law itself. The campers simply do not feel it's their responsibility to tend to their own trash, and nothing in the law as it is written will change that. I respectfully request that the law be revised to include.
Sorry, my phone was off. Thank you for your time. My speaker was off, sorry. Next is the read for Erin Zwig and then Deborah Kirkland.
Supervisor Long, Supervisor CEO Powers says, "Thank you for your update in regulations to Ventura Avenue, Crooked Palm. Your regulations seem fair and thoughtful. Can you tell me if there have been any proposals to create homeless parking lots like we have seen in some areas? Programs like this seem quite progressive and could be a feather in the county's cap of recognition if I have interest. Thank goodness people have somewhere to go, hopefully safe and sound. Thanks for the good work." And there's a hyperlink included in his email.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Deborah Kirkland.
For the Supervisors, the proposed ordinance is an excellent start in the right direction to resolve unsafe, inhumane, and unsightly situations that have evolved in North Ventura Avenue and Crooked Palm Road. However, it may be very challenging and costly for Ventura County to enforce the conditions, renewal, and maintenance of these permits. In addition, it does not address the following. One, there is no condition to require vehicles to be safe contained, and so vehicles without working sanitary systems will be allowed to park there. Where will those people use the bathroom, bathe, cook, and wash dishes? Two, there is no condition for vehicles to be free from fluid leaks such as oil, gas, coolant. This will pollute the environment. Three, there is no definition for maintaining the area around camping vehicles in a clean manner. This is subjective and will be a constant enforcement issue. And four, there is no description in the proposed ordinance for sanitary service or garbage disposal for the permitted campers. I suggest a no camping on county streets or outside designated camping areas ordinance. I suggest utilizing many derelict industrial and commercial areas or McGrath State Beach Campground for a central homeless facility where all these can be addressed. It could include restroom showers, health and welfare services, job boards, job training workshops. And no camping ordinance and central homeless service center will resolve comprehensive issues of homelessness in our county. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments Deborah. And that concludes our public comments, and so I will close the public hearing. And with that, I'll give it back to Supervisor Bennett.
Thank, thank you very much Supervisor Long. Let's make sure I'm on there, yeah. Thank you very much Supervisor Long, and I appreciate the comments that we heard here today. I think we're, we're making a first, a first good faith effort here to try to balance many different issues. Again, I really appreciate being able to work with Captain Rivera, and I think this is something that I hope the board will adopt. And we will all watch and see how, how the implementation goes as we go forward here with this. But I think that many of the concerns that are raised by the people, I think, will be addressed as this program moves forward. Our ability to issue the permits, I think, gives us much more contact with the people that are going to be there. So with that, I'd move to recommend action.
Supervisor Bennett, could I have the opportunity to ask a question?
Sure.
I appreciate you bringing this in. I just wanted to ask that, as we look into this, that we look at what's been working on our one-stops. I think the care pods have been very beneficial in providing a shower and a place for our clinics to do an examination and want to make sure that we utilize those if we can. Is that in the design works of this?
It certainly is. I mean, we have the one-stop right there. We have the care pods. I mean, it certainly is a significant part of this effort in terms of trying to roll this out. And I, and I might point out, people are talking about, I think, something that, you know, should there be a place that's not on the side of the road? Should the, should the county identify a place? I think it's a very appropriate topic. Find a place where we can provide those things. We've been very focused on trying to do the homeless shelter in Ventura, the home shelter in Ockhart, and now the effort that we're, we've engaged in and approved this morning in, in Santa Paula. But that's, that's an appropriate other, other item to look at, which is a place that, off the road for that. So I certainly hope that we'll be able to, as a county, turn our attention to that kind of effort also in the future. But yes Supervisor Long.
I also wanted to ask, so you and I battled the Thomas Fire for constituents. And this is the same location that people started parking there with being in the homeless situation as their house is burning and so forth. Is that correct? I just wanted to be reminded.
Well, I, I, I want to be clear. People are, people, the, the current law was people can park there for 72 hours, right? And that's, that's the law. That was the law before the Thomas Fire, the law after the Thomas Fire. People are allowed to park on county roads for 72 hours, and they have to move a mile. Now, move a mile means they can drive a mile and then come back close to the same area. So it's, you know, it, that is the law. This is, this is a change. And when you go to try to change your laws that affect how much people can, can park on the sides of your roads or on your sidewalks, you have to do that carefully. I, I, it is, you, you see in Los Angeles where they have had court cases, and they have now lost the ability to move people off of their public sidewalks because they've had court orders. So while some people would like to just say, do, you know, the easiest thing for me to do, I've done with this, and, and other people, politically, the easiest thing would have been just do a no parking ban and, and walk away and have a bunch of people that don't want anybody there. They would be happy about that. But that, that would, that could put the county at great risk. And you, you don't want to do something where the county loses control of their public places by getting some kind of court order. So we're in a different world than we were, you know, 20 years ago in terms of how the courts are requiring that we deal with this issue. So I'm sorry to digress on your question, but I did, I do think it's probably appropriate, given the comments by some people. It's not as easy as just saying, hey, we're going to do no parking. And if we, if we came up with, you know, if we, if we were able to come up with a, a lot someplace that was quote acceptable to all the people that lived in that particular neighborhood. And the other thing I would point out is, we could just do a no parking, and we could simply move this problem to another neighborhood, and somebody else would be, would be dealing with this. We're trying to, to not just jam it, you know, from one place to the next. And so all of those are considerations here. And so when you asked about the Thomas Fire, it's more than just a Thomas Fire. People, people talk about it as from the Thomas Fire, but it, you know, there are people who are allowed to camp on these, you know, on the side of the road, pull over and park on the side of the road already in Ventura County before the Thomas Fire.
Thank you so much Supervisor Bennett, because that's why I was asking that question. I felt it was extremely important that people understand the rules and the regulations. We've seen that in the county of LA. We've seen it in the county of Orange, and it has not done, done well for our community or for those that were homeless. I wanted to make sure that you got that credit, because I think it's important that we are looking at the whole approach and how we can legally do this in a manner that is safe for all. So that's why I wanted to ask those questions. Thank you.
Thank you for pulling that up, because I think it is important for people to know that you do this wrong, and you could lose control. And then you talked about people being unhappy. Go talk to the people who have, you know, people camping on the sidewalks right in front of their businesses and stuff, and they, there's, there's nothing that they can do because they're under court order because they didn't handle these efforts sensitively in the past and stuff, so.
Exactly.
These are, this is, this, this, this area is, you know, there are residents in the area, but at least fortunately, this, you're, you're not in front of, you know, you're not in a subdivision right in front of people's homes for, you know, with, with significant numbers of peoples and, and stuff like you have in, in Los Angeles and in Orange County, where public places have been taken over. So thank you for the question.
Are there any other Supervisors that have any questions? We have a first by Supervisor Bennett and a second by Supervisor Huber. Okay.
I just would like to compliment Supervisor Bennett and staff for this creative approach. In a way, because we are the county, we have the ability to marshal all of these resources. We just listened to the different presentations. This looked like it took about seven different agencies of the county to kind of marshal this together, put it together in a, in a way that can serve the individuals that are out there and try to remedy the situation for the area and the neighbors out that way. So I'm, I'm, I look forward to seeing this first step certainly started and then seeing how well we can reduce the number of individuals there, because obviously that is not the, the end game, is to allow them to remain, but to gradually work them into permanent housing.
Thank you Supervisor. Okay, roll call please.
Chair Long, I need to read this title into the record, please.
Yes, please go ahead.
This is an ordinance regulating the parking of vehicles in designated areas of the county of Ventura. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes, and that motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much Supervisor Bennett and the team of, of our county employees for making sure that we're doing this in the right fashion for all. Thank you. It's a big step. Okay, moving on to our other time certens at 10:30. We're running a little late, apologize. We have, is the receipt of information on the Board of Supervisors for accounts or funds contain developer fees as of June 30th, 2020? Hello?
Good morning Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. For the record, my name is Jill Ward. I'm a deputy director in the Auditor Controller's Office. I'm here today to ask that you receive the information in Exhibits 1, 2, 3, and 4 related to the developer fees as required by government code. This information was compiled by our office based on information submitted to us by departments who administer the fees. We will return to your board at a future date to complete the annual review process, and we're currently scheduled to do that on November 10th.
Thank you very much. Supervisors, do you have any questions for Jill?
Motion to approve.
Okay, it's been a, so first, it's by first by Supervisor Zaragoza and second by Super Huber. Supervisor, Super Huber, that's a new one.
Super Huber.
You like that, right? Supervisor Huber. And so any further discussion? Roll call please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Super Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes, and that motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you for the detailed information.
When do I get to be called super, right?
Oh, we don't have Super, Super Bennett yet. I apologize.
We gotta have super for everybody, right? Hey, nice job Laurie, we needed a little humor there.
Jill, thank you so much for the work. We went through that quickly because of the information you provided was spot on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next is the public hearing regarding the adoption of the 2020-2021 memorandum agreement for the Criminal Justice Attorney Association of Ventura County. It is a public hearing.
Good morning Chair Long, members of the board, CEO Powers. For the record, my name is Mike Kurnow with the Labor Relations Division of the County Executive Office. Today, I come before you to recommend your board commence a public hearing on the adoption of a successor agreement to the current MOA between the County of Ventura and the Criminal Justice Attorneys Association of Ventura County. Say that three times fast. Also known as CJAC. We also ask that your board waive the second hearing on this item and adopt a new agreement at the conclusion of this hearing. The proposed agreement was ratified by CJAC's membership on October 15th, 2020, and provides for a one-year term with the main features of a 2.5% generous salary increase, a 1% for a one-year term with the main features of a 2.5% general salary increase, a 1% market-based adjustment for all classifications covered by the agreement, two $50 per pay period flexible benefit allowance increases, and the day after Thanksgiving is a paid holiday. Both parties have also agreed to bifurcate and continue negotiations over the leave redemption provisions of the MOA separate from successor agreement negotiations. With that, I'd like to thank your board, CEO Powers, Mr. Otten, Mr. Cosio, Labor Relations Staff, Matt Smith of County Council, because we always forget him, and CJAC leadership for all of your efforts in bringing these negotiations to a successful conclusion. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, and at this time I will open for a public hearing. The public hearing is now open, and we have no speakers on this item, correct?
Correct, no public comment.
Okay, there are no public comments, so we'll close that public hearing. It's the quickest public hearing in the West.
Super duper.
I'm super long. That doesn't quite work. So anyways, and all joking aside, because we've been dealing with so many serious issues lately, this is another one to look forward to, working with our unions for the best of all our employees. And so I appreciate the time and work associated with doing this and the working together on it. So with that, could I get a motion to approve?
Sure.
Been first by
Second, Huber.
It's been moved by Supervisor Zaragoza and second by Supervisor Huber. Are there any further questions or comments? With that, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
I think he wants to be called Super Bennett.
Oh, oh, that's what it is, Super Bennett.
Supervisor Bennett?
He's there, but his microphone is muted. Maybe we can come back.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes.
Shall we try him again?
Try him again.
Super Bennett?
Sorry, I gotta vote. Steve Bennett, yes.
Thank you very much. This motion has been approved. I appreciate everyone having some humor while I'm chair. You only have me for a couple more meetings, so we'll enjoy it while we can. We will now move on to the time certain for 11:30, which is sad for us to do, but it's also a celebration. It's our resolution for honoring Todd Howith up for his retirement after decades, I'll say that, decades of serving our Ventura County community. So with that, Todd, if you can come up to the dais. Got all the moving and shaking we got. So Todd, hello. It's an honor to have you here. You've been defending our public for so long. We met as I walked into this role of county supervisor, and you were gracious to give me some time and explain everything. We have a video for you that I would like for us to restart if possible. Sorry, they're jumping the gun on me. They didn't expect me to talk. All right, so with that, as we come up, I just wanted to say thank you. I have some more words, but we're going to start off the video and just set the tone.
Yeah, I also want to thank Todd and looking at those photos, it looked like you enjoyed your job. And I know that we all benefited from it and our society benefited from it. And I just wish you the best in your retirement. It looks like an incredibly nice retirement plan you have before. You may it be long and you enjoy it with your family and thank you so much for your good service.
Thank you. Supervisor Huber?
Good morning.
Did you want to say any words?
Thank you. Well, thank you for the super supervisor log. Yeah, Todd, it's, it's, I think noteworthy that you're working in an area where thanks is not often given or prestige is not often reflected upon the public defender's office. And I just personally really appreciate people who take those kinds of jobs and then take the utmost professional responsibility for them. And that's exactly what you did. And you're leaving us with a really strong department. And if we didn't have people like you in the world, we'd be in a lot worse shape. So, thank you very much for your professional commitment to the mission of the Public Defender's Office. We needed it here in Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Huber?
Yes, thank you. Todd, thank you so much. I practiced law for many, many years myself. And it's a, I've observed you, you're a very, very dedicated public servant. And I very much appreciate your diligence and hard work on behalf of all the citizens of Ventura County. Thank you very much. And I wish you every, every best in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to take this opportunity to read the resolution. Many times we have a resolution and it looks beautiful on a wall. But there are so many words in this and meaning that goes on it. I didn't want to skip it. So Todd has worked four years as a litigator after his law degree earned by the California University of Santa Clara in 1982, whereupon he took a position in Orange County Public Defender's Office. The following four years of work as a litigator, the 28-year-old quit his job, traveled around the world for a year and lived amongst all the locals. His experience abroad transformed his worldview, broadening his perspective, and taught him valuable lessons of empathy, compassion, and community. Todd returned to Orange County Public Defender's Office for two more years, went on to earn certifications by the state of California as a legal specialist in criminal law and a master's degree in leadership and public administration from CSU Northridge, and to personally try more than 100 jury trials, including many high-profile homicide, gang cases, sex cases, and capital litigation. And Todd joined the Ventura County Public Defender's Office in 1990. He became chief deputy public defender in 2008. And he was named assistant public defender in 2012 and oversaw the office's felony trial team, which handles homicides and capital cases. And the Ventura County Criminal Defense Bar Association honored Todd with the Joyce Yokisha Award of 1994 for his contributions to the county's criminal justice system, stating, "He is not afraid to litigate just about anything." And noting his remarkable success in winning equitable for, equitable, my tongue is so tied, for defendants who were innocent despite apparently strong evidence against them. And Todd received the 2011 County of Ventura Management Council mentoring award, recognizing his selflessness and his efforts to help further the development and careers of others. In 2017, Ventura County Board of Supervisors and our CEO Mike Powers voted unanimously to appoint Todd as our county's new chief public defender. And Todd has been instrumental in shaping the county's response to the California's horrific realignment, or not horrific, historic realignment, which significantly reduced mass incarcerations by placing most nonviolent and non-serious offenders under county rather than state control. And Todd has been an innovative leader in reducing pre-trial detention and mitigation in equities of California's cash bail system. Todd protected the public defender's most vulnerable clients and hard-working staff during the COVID-19 lockdown. And he has carried out his many duties and responsibilities with great compassion and the empathy for all those that are less fortunate. And that Todd led the Public Defender's Office to the coveted three-peat of the coveted Golden Sneaker Wellness Award for 2017, 18, 19, and that held the Public Defender's Office staff in high esteem, saying they work so hard day in and day out and try to make sure everyone gets a fair shake. That's amazing. What's amazing is they labor to make sure that the quality of justice in Ventura County never depends on the amount of money someone has in their pocket. And so therefore, it is with great honor that our Board of Supervisors here today to commend and honor Todd, howeth upon his retirement as public defender, and wish to express our deepest appreciation for your dedication and loyal service of Ventura County. And you will be dearly missed and we know where you'll be. So, enjoy and have fun and thank you. And with that, I will open it up to Mr. Powers, our CEO. I think you wanted to say a couple words.
Just very quick, thank you Chair Long. You know, what folks who are watching or listening can't see is that there's a group of attorneys from the office, your Public Defender's Office leadership here. And these are top-quality attorneys. And I think that's one of the things that Todd has done and the office has done over the years, is established a reputation of excellent legal representation. And I think that's, that doesn't come easily. And it speaks to leadership and culture. And so, congratulations to you for that. I also love that the office looks at the whole person, not just the legal matter before them, but the health and social issues they may have to put them on a better path. You've continued to do that over the years. And one thing that I've gotten to see too with this realignment, the CCP Committee, is how much Todd reaches out and really in a convincing way works with folks across the aisle, the sheriff and the district attorney's office. And so well-reasoned and just so darn cheery. You know, you can't help but listen to him and he's just so persuasive. It's wonderful to see. He's really advancing the cause of justice. And the last thing I'll say is I love his adaptive leadership style. When I was interviewing Todd about this post a couple of years ago, I asked him for an example of that. And he said, "Well, at one point, some of the folks in the office were wearing flip-flops." And Todd said, "Well, you know, as a manager, he was going to go take care of this problem." So he told, he told him, you know, there was like two of them. He said, "You can't wear flip-flops in the office." "Oh, good." So the next day, comes in the office and 10 of the attorneys are wearing flip-flops. Says, "Ah, okay, that's not going to work," with the public defender perspective. And then he persuaded them that your clients need you to wear, you know, dress shoes to. And that did persuade them. But Todd, you've just been a great public defender and a great leader for the office. And I just so appreciate your, your work and your friendship and wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any other speakers on behalf of Todd? If not, you get the last words.
Chair Long, CEO Powers, members of the board. Thank you so much for your kind comments. I promise to be brief, which would be the first time in my 36 years, but I will. I want to thank the board and the CEO's office, Mike Powers, for the support over the years. I feel like I'm leaving the Public Defender's Office in a position where they are strong, vibrant, and resilient because of you. So I thank you. I want to thank my wife, who I love and adore. You couldn't ask for a better partner, as you can see. And I want to thank, of course, the managers that showed up to support me today. And of course, all the men and women that many times labor in obscurity in the Public Defender's Office. But I'm so proud, so proud. And I just wanted to take a few moments to explain to you that from, from my vantage point, this opportunity that you gave me is a gift. And I just want to take a few moments just to explain what I mean by that. So, there's a bit of a ritual in the Public Defender's Office when you do a trial. You have to dress out your client. We have a client clothes closet, you know, where we go and attorneys donate clothes. As you might imagine, there are many Jerry Garcia ties to choose from. And you will pick out the clothes, you'll go down and you'll dress out your client for trial. And when you dress out your client, sometimes they want to wear a tie. And the thing about it is they're kind of embarrassed because they don't know how to tie a tie. So this is a part of the ritual. And this is why this job, this opportunity you've given me, I'm so grateful for. Why this job has been a gift. Anybody that's tried to tie a tie on somebody else, it's kind of challenging, right? I mean, I've done it so many times, it's practically unconscious for me. But the thing about tying a tie on somebody else is you have to look at them, you're eye to eye, and you stand close. And you know, the people I've represented have been charged with murder, rape, mayhem, things that we are all afraid of. But you stand very close. You look at them eye to eye. And they're a little sheepish, a little vulnerable, and it's oddly intimate that you stand close. And here's the thing, to do it correctly, you have to imagine that you're standing in their shoes, right? And here's the thing about being a public defender. A good public defender, the heart of the matter is you have to learn about your client. You have to sit with them. You have to talk to them. You have to be present to learn their story. You can only be a good public defender if you know their story. And this can be particularly challenging because so many of our clients have been broken. Broken by mental illness, substance abuse disorder, crushing poverty. They've been abandoned, neglected, and abused. I can't tell you how many clients I had when I first started out that were juveniles. And I represented them when they were adults. We see this all the time. But when you're tying that tie, there's something I think about most of the time when I do that. I think about the first time I ever did it. It was tying the tie on my brother on his wedding day. And so, when I represent people, when we represent people, you know, I don't see the teardrop tattoo, the shaved head, the menacing look, the things that we're all taught to fear. I see my neighbor, my aunt, my uncle, a son, a daughter. They are not people, they are not people that are different than us. You learn that they are the same. We share this humanity. The person that stands in front of me is better than the worst thing that they've ever done. The person that stands in front of me, it's not a person who is judged by my bias, prejudice. The person that stands in front of me truly is my brother. And that is my gift. That is the gift that you've given to me. Thank you.
Todd, thank you. And with that inspirational message, we'd like to come down and have, take a photo with your wife and the board members that are here today, and Mr. Powers. Thank you.
I'm not sure how you're supposed to do this in Europe. Good job, I got this. Oh, thank you so much.
Nice presentation.
Okay, can we have this for the two of you?
Okay.
So hold.
Everyone smile with your eyes. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you.
You all have been enjoying and let's make you have so much fun.
Yeah, we hope to, yeah.
Oh, my God.
And you have the camp ready, yeah?
Oh, totally ready.
Where are you going? Yosemite?
Oh, yeah, we're trying to go to Yosemite. Yeah, some of the national parks.
Congratulations. Enjoy. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Have a great day, Michael.
We have Mr. Walker, who's his first day as county council, acting county council. And then we are having those retiring. There are so many wins and loses here. But it's very inspirational. I'm proud to be working with all of you. Our next item, we're going to continue the celebrations, which is the receive and file a presentation on our quarterly service recognition for employees with 25 years or more service for the county.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. It's my honor today, I'm your human resources director. It's my honor on your behalf to present the years of service recognition for employees who've reached 25, 30, and 35 years of service. We have 15 of them today. And you will have noticed, I'm sure, that we've postponed these recognitions for a few, the last few months because of the COVID pandemic. But we're going to continue on a modified basis just now with the physical distancing protocols in place. Not everyone, of course, can be here right now because of that. So our, our modified method is going to be putting a picture up. They're all listening in, I hope. We've invited all of the people who are being recognized to listen in and watch the proceedings as, as we read and their recognition. And after this meeting, we'll give them their certificate. Usually we have a group photo, of course, but given the, given the times, we're not going to be able to do that right now. But nonetheless, we're, we're going to continue the celebration. And of course, everyone here that we'll, we'll talk about is a rock star, as was mentioned in the prior, prior item. All of these people have done fantastic service. So if I may, oh, jeez, let's see if I know how to do this. Apparently not. Okay. So the first person whom we'll recognize is Pamela Cook. She has 25 years of service and works with the Public Works Agency. She is a senior accountant. And Pam started in the Auditor Controller's Office and then moved to the Public Works Agency, where she now serves as a senior accountant for the Water and Sanitation Division. Pam's off time is filled with reading, baseball, Disney pins, and travel often to Disneyland and Mount Shasta. Congratulations for your years of dedicated service to the county, Pam. And let's make it special. Can we just give a round of applause, although there's... Next, we will have Sean Dably. He's got 25 years of service with the county and he works with the Resource Management Agency. He's a manager, RMA Services 2. A member of the Environmental Health Division's management team. Sean is known for his technical knowledge, resourcefulness, and ability to collaborate with other agencies. Sean has been recognized for his exceptional customer service as the county's incident commander for debris removal operations during the Thomas Fire and the Hillwosley Fires of prior years and their recovery efforts. Thank you, Sean, for your years of service. Thank you so much. Next is Veronica Duarte, with 25 years of service with the Human Services Agency. She is an HS Client Benefit Specialist 4. Veronica's experience and knowledge have contributed to the advance of the Human Service Agency's goals and mission in assisting the community. Veronica has demonstrated excellent customer service, work ethic, and commitment to assist her coworkers and the community in Ventura County. Congratulations to you and thank you for your years of service, Veronica. Jeannie Clement is next. She has 25 years of service, also with the Human Services Agency. She's a senior program administrator. And Jeannie's career is built around the desire to help people in need of basic life sustaining assistance such as food and medical care. She's a Management Council nominee for mentoring and best kept secret. She holds a BA degree and three teaching credentials from UCSB. She's a mom of three, an avid painter. She loves water, and she loves water aerobics, is a movie enthusiast, and a dog lover. Thank you for your long service to our community. Thank you, Jeannie. Next is Denise Sliva. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. I apologize for mispronouncing anything. She has 25 years of service at the sheriff's office. She's a sheriff's captain. For over 25 years, Captain Denise Sliva has given excellent service to the sheriff's office and our communities with assignments in, she has a variety of assignments, custody, patrol, investigations, academy and administration, and administration. Denise has forged partnerships with other county agencies and looks forward to their future contributions to enhance the safety of our community and county. Congratulations on reaching this milestone career, years of service. And thank you for your service too. Next, we have Stephen Buckley. He has 30 years of service and works at the sheriff's office as a senior deputy sheriff. Senior Deputy Stephen Buckley has held assignments in the Old Honor Farm, Rose Valley Work Camp, Thousand Oaks Police, Moore Park Police, Fillmore Police, Headquarters Patrol, Detective Bureau, Background Investigations, Felony Warrant Unit, Sheriff's Civil Unit, and Court Services Supervisor in Simi Valley and Ventura. Steve will soon retire after 35 years of total service in law enforcement. Congratulations and thank you for your years of service, Steve. Thank you. Next, we will go to Robin Jester. She has 30 years of service with the Public Works Agency. She works there currently. She's an engineer 4. She started as an engineer for the Watershed Protection District. Robin earned her professional engineer's license, has been, has been a certified floodplain manager and is a member of the ASCE, APWA, and ASFPM. Those are all credentials, which I, I wouldn't know what they are, but I'm sure they're very hard to, to gain. Robin likes trying new ethnic restaurants, walks with her dog. She also loves music and artistic endeavors. She supports many local nonprofits and has served on the boards of Ventura Music Festival, Relay for Life, American Cancer Society, and Seroptimists International. There we have it, Robin. Thank you for your service. Hong Mayer has 30 years of service with the IT Information Technology Services. She is an information systems analyst now. And Hong started with the Auditor Controller's Office in 1997. And in 1997, she joined IT Services, excuse me. She, she's an information system analyst working on property tax. That's a huge project, as I'm sure you know. It takes a lot of coordinated effort to do that. Hong has participated in the corporate games for over 10 years, winning gold medals in bocce ball, dominoes, and spades. I can attest that bocce ball is very difficult. So, thank you for your accomplishments, commitment, and over 30 years of service, Hong. Thank you. Next, we have Douglas Newley. There we go, of course. 30 years with the Assessors' Office, and he is an Appraiser 3. Doug started in the Assessors' Office in the Mapping and Property Transfer Section. He became an Appraiser in 1995 and has served on the residential, rural, appeals, and commercial and industrial crews. He's currently a senior appraiser in the residential crew. Thank you for your many years of service at the county and to the community. Thank you, Douglas. Take care. We have, we have an onsite, onsite fan club here. Annette Polito has 30 years of service and she works at the sheriff's office. She's currently an administrative assistant 3. Annette met her husband, another sheriff employee. That's, this is good to clarify. He's another sheriff's employee while working in inmate records. They jokingly tell people that they met in jail. Annette has worked for HSA, the courts, and the sheriff's office in detention, in detention administration as a management assistant, and in the sheriff's human resources. Let's give a little clap there. Annette recently became the proud grandmother to Charlotte, and she travels out of state to see her at every opportunity she gets. Congratulations and thank you for your service to the community of Ventura County. Thank you very much. Okay, so Lupe Ramon with 30 years of, Lupe Roman, I'm sorry, with 30 years of service at probation agency is an office assistant 4. Throughout her years of service, Lupe has displayed both dedication and commitment in support of the agency's charge of protecting the community. Her innovative spirit and devotion to learning has served her well with the multitude of challenges she's undertaken during her diverse career. Thank you for your long service to our county and community, Lupe. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Powers.
All right. Thank you, Sean. All right. Thank you, Sean. Next up, we have John Bryson, 35 years from Human Services Agency. Right. John is an HS Case Aid 2. He's an outstanding asset to the county of Ventura. He's well-liked by his regular customers in our resource center and by the entire office. On those rare occasions that he's not at his desk, we always get questions. "Where's John? There must be something wrong." We send out an APB. Thank you for your long service to the residents of our community, John. Next up, Sylvia Gonzalez, 35 years.
Oops, sorry, my bad.
Sylvia Gonzalez, 35 years from the county council's office, Legal Management Assistant 4C. Sylvia has served in the district attorney's office and the courts before moving to the county council's office. She serves in the top legal management assistant classification assigned to the litigation supervisor, county council, and special projects. She continually strives to improve. In 2012, she received an associate's degree from Ventura College. And then in 2016, she received a yellow belt in Lean Six Sigma. And I can tell you, I worked in the office years ago with Sylvia. And I was just always struck by her warmth and professionalism. Just really adds a ton to the culture. And I know Michael feels the same way. So congratulations on your long and distinguished county service, Sylvia. Next up, Marsha Snyder, 35 years from Human Services Agency, HSA Senior Program Manager. As you can see, she's been an eligibility officer and advanced to her current level of senior manager. Marsha's tenure demonstrates the highest level of commitment, hard work, and excellence. She has positively contributed to each program, is beloved by her colleagues, and is an amazing asset to HSA and the county. Congratulations on your distinguished career, Marsha, and thank you. And finally, Robin Tribett, 35 years from the district attorney's office, Administrative Assistant 2. Robin started with the county in 1983 and in 1986 moved to the non-sufficient funds unit of the district attorney's office. She has collected millions of dollars in restitution for local merchants and individuals who received bad checks. Robin is a remarkable employee and we thank you for your outstanding long service to our community. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mike. I'm sure I can speak for all of us that we miss all of these people being here today. They are rock stars and have given their lives in service to the county. But now I, that concludes our presentation and I hand it to the board.
Thank you very much, Sean. And you are right, we would love to have all of them here to congratulate them and have their staff come in. And unfortunately, with COVID and making sure that we're working from home as much as we can and keeping everyone safe, we just want to wish them all the best in their next chapter of their life. And, and thank you for the dedication and for serving our community so well. Just want to say thank you. I'll open it up to any other supervisors in case you'd like to say anything.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
I'd like to thank them for their continuing service on behalf of the county. And what a remarkable career and to see the things that they have done, including meeting their husband in jail and all. I just, I just love it. You know, we are a county family and your long distinguished careers are so appreciated. And I hope you have enjoyed working as much as I do on behalf of the residents of Ventura County and the businesses. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. And Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes, I also want to thank, you know, all the employees, the recognition for hundreds and hundreds of years of service to, to the community. We're so lucky here in Ventura County to have... We're so lucky here in Ventura County to have such dedicated employees that serve our community every single day. And this is a service that our residents and our constituents really deserve. So, thank you very, very much for all the excellent work that you do for all of us, and I really appreciate that. Years and years. I'm not sure. I didn't count. How many years do we have, Mike?
It is 445 years of combined service.
400-plus years. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And I would say...
Mr. Powers?
Oh, thank you. This really speaks to the strength of our county, these long-term careers. People develop skill sets but also relationships, and that's how we get things done. Your board sets a culture of working across agencies. This is one of the ways we're able to do it, dedicating their careers.
The longevity makes our county very, very strong with such excellent employees. Thank you.
Exactly. Any other supervisors? Okay. Thank you so much. Just to give everyone timing, I have two gentlemen here from the Fire Department, and we're going to make sure that we hear them and Supervisor Parks on item 46. And then after that, we need to go into closed session, and we'll be back. We do have Air Quality Control Board that is at 1:30, and we'll take a little time for getting systems right. But please stay tuned, and I am number 46, Supervisor Parks. Pass it on to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is a request that our Board of Supervisors allows our county to go forward with creating an ordinance that will allow for us to enforce on red flag days the no parking along roads in Vento Park. And these are roads that have been specified by our Transportation Department. And it's really important there because we have long, very narrow, winding roads up there. And even though our wonderful Fire Safety Council there puts up signs that say "No Parking" on red flag days, on those days, we still find that cars are parking alongside the road, even in front of fire hydrants. So, it's really important to get that enforcement. And so, I would ask that our board support this effort on behalf of the residents in Ventura to ensure their safety in an event of fire. And that would be my motion. I know that we have a couple of comments that we've received, one from the Fire Safe Council there, as well as from a resident, Teresa Jordan, out in Simi Valley.
Huber, second the motion.
And we do have our fire group here. If I can have you just come to the dais.
Good morning, Chair Long.
Good morning. I just wanted to just have you come here. You've spent this time waiting for this item, and I wanted to make sure we gave you a moment to speak on this.
We were here simply in support of Supervisor Parks and her motion to move this forward. If there are any questions, any concerns, we've got members here from... We spoke with Public Works earlier on the roads concerns, and truly, it's a sheriff's concern with the enforcement of the ordinance. So, we were here if you have questions, concerns, comments, anything we can do.
And can you state your name for the record, please?
Dustin Gardner, Deputy Chief, Ventura County Fire.
Thank you so much. It's appreciative to have that item. And thank you for the hard work of your trying to keep our community safe. We have had fires in the area and with the fire roads. I appreciate Supervisor Parks bringing this to us to really improve the safety in our communities. It's extremely important. Any further questions? I know...
Thank you so much for your service, and thank all the men and women that work with you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Appreciate that. So, we have a first by Supervisor Parks and a second by Supervisor Huber. Are there any further discussion on this item?
And I do want to thank Dustin for being there. I know we have also heard from our fire marshal. And I know if they had their druthers, we'd actually have more roads that are actually fire roads up there that we don't have parking along them. So, that's something that we can look at as they draft the ordinance and bring it back before us. But it is essential. That is one of my largest concerns in terms of fire in my district because Vento Park is surrounded on three sides by open space and very extensive vegetated open space. And so, having at least the ability to evacuate, you know, if there's cars parked on narrow roads, they can't evacuate, as well as being able to get the fire apparatus up there. So, really important that we don't clog the roads when we know that it's a red flag day in particularly. So, thank you in advance for your support, Board.
Thank you, and I appreciate you working with our Public Works, who is here today, and also our Fire Department for the safety with the Woolsey Fire. That really reminds us how important it is to have the safety of those roads to get our equipment up there, no matter what department is going to help fight the fires for us. So, appreciate it. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, and that motion is approved unanimously. Thank you so much, gentlemen. And Supervisor Parks, again, thank you for your leadership on this. We will now be moving to closed session, and then we'll be setting up for Air Quality Control Board. And then after that, we have a 3 o'clock time certain, and we have other regular items that need to be heard as well. So, thank you very much, and we'll be back. Waiting for our board members to join us. Again, having Supervisor Bennett join, so we will now be able to start. Let me know. We are good to go. Thank you very much for joining us for our Board of Supervisors meeting. It is my pleasure to come out of our closed session to report out on item number 69, which is our public employee appointment for public defender. And it is with my great honor to announce... It is my great honor to announce Claudia Batista as our new public defender. And she has served as our current Assistant Public Defender at Ventura Public Defender Office for over 19 years. And I would like you to come to the dais, and I'll pass it on to Mike. Do you have any words yet? We're a team up here.
Thank you, Supervisor. I would just say I'm very excited that Claudia Batista will be our new county public defender. She's been in the office almost 20 years now, five years in leadership. She's an exceptional attorney, a wonderful leader and person, and I know she's very passionate about serving our vulnerable communities with excellence in legal representation. And I know she'll keep the excellent momentum that has been built under the leadership of Todd Howith and the reputation, the top reputation of our Ventura County Public Defender's Office. So, Claudia, congratulations. Take it away.
Congratulations.
I kind of wanted to clap for myself.
You do. It's a great accomplishment.
Thank you. Chair Long, CEO Powers, members of the board. I feel very, very grateful to be... For this appointment, for the opportunity to lead an office as the first female, as the first Latina, as the first immigrant, to lead an agency of amazing, amazing lawyers, staff, investigators. And I had no reservation about applying for this job because of the fact that we have such a wonderful office that can only improve and get better based on the leadership of Todd. I share this great, momentous achievement and opportunity with my mom, who's here, and my sister, who really I see as my inspiration because I really see this as the culmination of the American dream when you come to this country to... You get an education and you achieve more than your parents could ever dream. And I know that my sister and I have achieved so much more than what she could have ever dreamed of. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to our relationship and to making our office a continued success in your eyes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Supervisor? Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
You don't get to leave that easy.
Claudia, it's really an honor for the interview in closed session, and you're a role model for women, and you're a role model for the Latino community. And I commend you for the excellent presentation you made, you know, to us. And I think that Todd's got to be very proud of you. And my... Where is Todd? Let me see.
He's here.
He's out there taking photos now. But I think that you're going to help the community, the stakeholders, and here in the community, and you're going to work with the DA's office, you're going to work with our chiefs of police, you're going to work with all individuals that are going to help the community and the underserved community. So, I commend you and welcome again, and I think you're going to make a good public defender. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We also have our board members on Zoom. Would anyone... Supervisor Parks, if you could go ahead?
Chair, I'm so glad that you have your family there, that you have your mother there. This is the culmination of a lot of hard work, right? And it just goes to show that you can. You can work hard and you can achieve. And I'm so glad that the county government is a place where this can happen. I think we're all better off for the fact that you have this ability now, and I'm hoping that you will also be able to open doors for others. So, thank you so much for the great work you have done in the past, and I look forward to anything the Board can do to assist you in to seeing a very successful career. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Huber or Bennett?
Yes, this is Bob Huber. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Just wanted to say congratulations, Claudia. We're very blessed to have you as part of our team. Looking forward to working with you and wish you every best wish for a very successful career as the public defender of Ventura County. I believe you're going to do an excellent job. So, congratulations again. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Claudia. Steve Bennett here. Did you guys hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Two things. Number one, you're taking on one of the most important roles in Ventura County government, and that is defending the defenseless, people that don't have the resources to buy the kind of care, the kind of representation that a lot of people can buy in America. That's a solemn responsibility. And two, I had the great pleasure of being on the board when we hired the first CEO of Ventura County. And so, it's for me a special pleasure to be on the board when we hired the first Latina or Latinx public defender. So, that's... I'm glad you pointed that out in your comment, and I really wish you well. And I really look forward to you bringing a new perspective that's good for all of us to hear coming from your immigrant background. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Claudia, I did jump in on the good news that Mike Powers was supposed to share, but I had to. I was really just too excited. The right person for the right job. And just appreciate all that you're going to do, all that you have done. And based on the interview and the success you've been doing throughout the years, really just it'll be an honor to work with you. And again, just thank you very much because I know it takes time away from family. So, you have a wonderful family support system, and just thank you for sharing her with us. We really appreciate it because she does amazing things.
And Madam Chair, is your mom here? Or can they...
Sure. My mom, Yolanda Bautista, and my sister, Lisa Grubbs. And Damasa Chacon.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Claudia. Appreciate it. And thank you to all the staff that has been here, too. Okay. With all the good celebration that's going on, we have to move into our regular agenda items. So, we will be moving back. Our board comments and CEO comments, well, if that's okay with everyone, will hold off to the end. We do have a time certain also at 3 o'clock, so we probably should do that one first. And so, let's do the 3 o'clock, now item number 60.
Good afternoon, Chair Long. Supervisors, Mr. Powers in absentia. My name is Denise Thomas. I am the Planning Program Section Manager in the Planning Division of the Resource Management Agency. On September 15th, at your board meeting, Supervisors Bennett and Zaragoza requested a report on our farmworker housing program, and I'm here this afternoon to provide that report. In my presentation today, I will provide you with an overview of the monitoring and enforcement activities that the Resource Management Agency does in response to providing farmworker housing. I will also summarize for you what other counties throughout the state are doing and how they are managing farmworker housing in their communities. And I will provide you with kind of an overview or a tease of what's coming up in 2021. The image on the screen before you represents the unincorporated... or represents all of Ventura County. The areas in dark gray are the incorporated areas, which are the cities. The area in light gray represents the non-coastal zone, and the areas in green are the coastal zone. The coastal zone is governed by the regulations contained in the coastal zoning ordinance, and the unincorporated area is governed by the non-coastal zoning ordinance. We have farmworker housing throughout the county. We have units that are depicted in green, which are our ministerial units. Those units are units that are less than a property owner can apply if they have four units or less, and they can meet the performance standards that are in the non-coastal and coastal zoning ordinances. They can apply for a ministerial permit. For those property owners who cannot meet the minimum standards and they exceed them for whatever reason in our zoning ordinances, and for farmworker complexes, which is defined by our ordinances as developments that house farmworkers and animal caretakers that have more than four units, you can apply for a conditional use permit, which we call the discretionary permit. And those units are depicted in blue as a triangle. The farmworker complexes that I mentioned, we have three of those in the county, and they are depicted with a red star. In District One, as you can see, we have ministerial permits and conditional use permits. We have 13 total permits that we're tracking in the RMA Agency, 12 of which are ministerial permits, and one is a conditional use permit project. It represents 15 different farmworker units in District One. In District Two, we have a total of 40 permits that we are tracking, which represents 50 farmworker housing units. There are 23 of them that are approved with a ministerial permit, and 15 of them have conditional use permits. In District Three, we have a total... We have a total of 24 permits, and of those 24, 20 of them are ministerial permits. Representing 199 farmworkers, there are conditional use permits and one farmworker complex. Got ahead of myself. In District Five, we have four farmworker complexes that are farmworker units that are approved with ministerial permits, and that really represents only one unit per permit. So, in summary, we are tracking 109 properties and permits, which represents approximately 303 farmworker housing units in the unincorporated area. We do this through a monitoring program, which is called our Annual Farmworker Verification Program. All of the conditions of approval and standards for approving the permits in and out of the Resource Management... Resource Management Agency requires annual reporting by May 15 of every year. We used to do this by paper. It was a paper exercise, a hard copy exercise. But in an attempt to make it easier for property owners to report, we migrated to an online process. In doing that, we were able to increase our efficiency. We now are able to do the work in less time, at less of a cost, and we are able to reach more of the farmworkers on the first try. For discretionary permits for enforcement purposes, what we do is the Condition Compliance Program, which I manage, tracks 27 permits at this time. And those 27 permits all have a condition that says that the purpose, the use allowed for that property is for housing farmworkers. And it also contains a condition that says that you must be consistent with your site plan and your conditions of approval. As a result, periodically, I have members of my team who go out to these sites, and they take the conditions of approval and ensure that the conditions are being met and that the farmworkers are being, are the ones occupying those units.
And can I, I understand you've had pretty good compliance on the, going back to the, where are you?
Sure.
My understanding is that you've had pretty good compliance and following the rules. I think you only had three discrepancies, I think.
Yes, sir. We have, we have a 97% response rate the very first time. So by the 15th of May, even during the pandemic, we were able to get 97% of the permities to respond. And then there were four that did not, and we've reached out to those four.
And we're working with them now.
Absolutely.
I think that's excellent, you know, to have the 97% compliance, which is really what we're looking for. And they come in and update their permits. That's a yearly update, right?
Yes, sir. They come, they actually don't have to come in because everything can be handled electronically now. And so they submit them directly to us, and there's a member of my team who monitors those and makes sure that they have filled them out properly and reaches out when he has to.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we're looking for, to make sure that they were compliant and make sure that we had it for farmworker, you know, and also for animal takers, caretakers, you know. But I really like that 97% compliance, which is really great. And you're working in the 3%.
Yes, we are. There are four of them, and they've already been contacted. Generally speaking, the ones that have discretionary permits, we reach out to them and they do whatever they have to do to correct. Sometimes they forget to submit on time. Sometimes they are no longer using the unit and they feel they don't have to, but we reach out to them.
And it's probably not negligence. It's more maybe they forgot, or maybe they, you know, they needed to be prompted.
Prompted.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think also, more than ever with the pandemic, it's extremely important. The housing is really needed, and to make sure it's being used in the way it was intended is crucial. So thank you.
Great.
The other program that we use that addresses enforcement is the co-compliance section in the Resource Management Agency. So for compliance with conditions of approval, if they have a permit, my staff handles those cases. But in instances where it's a ministerial permit, then the co-compliance team, which is managed by Doug Leeper, handles that. So essentially, if we do not receive the notification form by the 15th as required, we send a referral over to co-compliance, and co-compliance follows up with them, asks them to get in touch with the planning staff, and we work with them to bring them into compliance.
Great.
There are currently 79 of those permits that we're tracking, and there were three of the 79 that did not report in a timely manner, and they've already been directed to reach out to us. There are many tools in the enforcement toolbox. And so if you fail to report, and there's a need for us to compel people to comply with our regulations, we could issue a notice of violation, which would give them time to correct the issue. And there are more severe measures, which would be daily penalties for violating our zoning ordinance. We haven't had to do that. We get.
And there's an opportunity for them to correct it prior to punitive actions?
Yes, there is.
Good.
There are many opportunities, actually. We give them notice that they're in violation, gives them 30 days to comply. And then we can file, we tell them we're going to impose, that gives them an additional period of time to comply. And if we are about to comply and they need additional time, they can reach out and ask for an agreement to give them more time to comply. So we do everything we can to bring them along, but we rarely have to use those tools. They usually comply.
Great.
Thank you.
So another option, another focus in my presentation was to provide you an overview of what other counties in the state are doing. In the interest of time, we only brought you the agricultural counties, the counties that had a strong agricultural program, and with those, the ones that had adopted regulations that govern farmworker housing. As you can see, there are nine counties on the screen that we surveyed. We put those in your staff report. But just for those watching, they were Fresno County, Los Angeles County, Monterey, Napa, Placer, San Diego, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, and Sonoma. So we took a look at all of those regulations, and what we found was that all nine of them require some sort of verification that you have full-time farmworkers living in the units prior to issuing the permit. Our program is modeled, it would appear, off of the Los Angeles program. And there's very little daylight between what we do and what Los Angeles County does. With respect to annual verification forms, of the surveyed counties, there are five of them that require some sort of annual verification, just as we do. And there are other tools available for some of the other counties. So there are four of them that chooses to impose deed restrictions or restrictive covenants on properties to ensure that the farmworker housing remains for farmworkers. And those counties also have a requirement that if you are going to choose, to change the use, you must come back to them so that they can evaluate what your new.
And you know that having the housing is so important because of the cost of living is so extremely high, you know, for rentals. And they're there to provide a service and also accommodate them with housing, which I think is extremely important.
I agree.
Could I ask also, when you have to continually let the county know if you're going to change the use, it has to come back, for example, would it come back to the Board of Supervisors if they decide they don't, they don't want to use it just for farmworkers? That would have to come back to the Board?
Yes, that's correct. So depending on what they would like to do, so the way that our permits work is if you can meet the performance standards that are in our zoning ordinances, that you can receive a ministerial permit, and it can be approved at the staff level. If you want to do something different than that, or if you have more than five units, then you would have to go through the approval process for a conditional use permit. At that point, you would go to the Planning Commission and perhaps the Board of Supervisors. So that's not done at the staff level.
Okay. So I know that in some affordable housing projects, for example, there's an expiration. You know, you can only have it be for 20 years or something, and then they can change to regular use. So my question is, this could not be the case with farmworker housing. It could not, after a certain amount of years, just convert without first coming to the Board of Supervisors. Is that correct?
That is correct. The way that we enforce farmworker housing, our project descriptions, which is generally condition number one in all of the permits, requires that you provide, the purpose of the permit is to allow housing for farmworkers. So if you are no longer doing that and you have a discretionary permit, then you have to get, you have to modify that permit or get a new permit that would allow you to do whatever other thing you would like to do. And at that point, we would review our general plan, we would review our ordinances to make sure that what you want to do is consistent with all of the regulations in the county.
And so that's a discretionary permit, correct? That requires hearing?
Yes, that would be.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the clarification. It's also good for us to know that our neighboring counties also are following the same ordinances, LA County and also Santa Barbara Counties. It's an important factor for us. Thank you.
And so, to summarize, I'm going to go ahead and go through this quickly. So to summarize, our farmworkers, for our farmworker and animal caretaker units, condition number one establishes the use. If you're doing anything other than providing housing for farmworkers or animal caretakers, you would be inconsistent with the conditions of your permit, and there would be enforcement actions that could occur. For farmworker complexes, the same is true. And in some instances, there are restrictions on the property, and we have the ability to impose restrictions on properties to ensure that if the, that notification would be given if the property were to change hands, and the deed itself or the covenant itself would restrict the property's use for farmworkers only. For both types of housing, we do require annual reporting, and we do compliance reviews for those that have discretionary permits. Moving forward, there are a couple of things that I wanted to make you aware of. Our long-range planning team, which is the team that does a lot of the policy work in the Planning Division, is in the process of implementing Housing and Opportunity Diversity Program Number Eight that was adopted by the Board. That program requires them to reach out to stakeholders to try and get feedback so that they can make recommendations to you for amendments to our zoning ordinance that would encourage and facilitate the development of farmworker housing. And they are also looking at making amendments to the ordinance to address recent changes in state law.
Can I question our, so our laws are not the same as state laws right now, so we're going to change them to, or amend to, to meet those laws? Is that?
My understanding is that our laws currently are fine, but there are some nuances, nuances that have recently been adopted that we want to take a look at and make sure those are incorporated in our noncoastal.
So we update to meet, okay, that's good.
Yes, sir.
So we have to comply with the state law on our housing?
Yes. And the Planning Commission and the Board, your Board's review will happen sometime in early 2021.
Right.
That concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Well, we do have a public comment, our public speaker. Supervisors, before I go to the public comments, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I personally think, go ahead, Bennett.
Yeah, this is Steve Bennett. Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. You know, I appreciate that we say, you know, we have a 97% compliance rate with people reporting. But the, we don't, we don't go any step further than that in terms of trying to verify the reporting, any kind of spot check of a few of them to make sure that, so that everybody goes, hey, we, you know, this could be, I could be spot checked on this. Do we do anything beyond, I mean, if they've reported and say that they have it, is that as far as it goes? Or do we ever check to confirm that the information they say is accurate?
We do both. So for the ministerial permits, when they report, the occupant of the unit and the property owner of the unit signs, and that we take them at their word. If they say that, if they say that they have a full-time farmworker or a farmworker that's, that has been disabled or retired, then we accept that. For the 27 that we're tracking that are discretionary permits, we actually go to the site because they're, they're required to comply with not only the annual reporting, but they're also required to comply with the site plan, their site plan can't change, and all the conditions of approval that are adopted. And so we actually do check those. We go to the site, we walk around, and we inspect it.
We inspect the site for a site plan. Do we inspect the site and confirm the actual residents are farmworkers?
We, yes, we do that through the, we ask the property owner. Do we, do we, are you asking if we go to the actual farmworkers and interview them? Is that what you're asking?
Anything along that line to verify besides just taking the word that, that, yes, these are farmworkers?
No, we do not interview the occupants of the, of the farmworker unit.
No spots. And on the ministerial one, we also just take the word of the people submitting the forms, correct?
Yes, and the signature that's on the form of the occupant, yes.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And I know we're going to have some speakers here. I just, I want to emphasize to everybody the importance of having people have confidence that when we say it's going to be farmworker housing, that is something that we've made exceptions for and something that I think you have the majority of residents of Ventura County willing to accept farmworker housing where they might not accept other kinds of housing. But they will, that confidence will be lost if we don't, if people feel like that's being abused and that after a few years, people then put in other tenants, relatives, et cetera. The other thing I wanted to ask is, there are no restrictions in terms of rents or anything else that are, that they're charged in terms of keeping the farmworker housing affordable, is there?
No, there's nothing in our ordinance that requires any kind of rent control for the farmworker housing units.
Any affordability, right. Okay, thank you very much.
But can I, quick question, but can, can the grower, we'll make it affordable, right? Because he wants it, that worker to be there, right? Or the workers to be there?
Yes.
Housing should be.
The farmworker housing provides a service to the farmer or the.
So to make it affordable, so in order to accommodate the workers?
Yes.
I agree, Supervisor Zaragoza, that's the intent of us doing that. It's just that if somebody is abusing it, and, you know, look, rents are going through the roof, right?
That's right.
And so suddenly, suddenly somebody could say, hey, I could make a lot of money instead of renting this to farmworkers. I could, I could rent this out and really dramatically increase rent. So we just have to, we have to keep in mind that that human nature temptation is there, right?
You know, I might state, though, that our Board of Supervisors, when we're approving a project, can condition affordability.
Yeah.
So far, none of the farmworker units have that. I'm just pointing that out to you.
But they have them before the Board. So I'm thinking about, for example, one for hundreds, you know, that is being proposed right now on Somus Road or Lewis Road, that will come to us. And I would hope, since it's being put together by Affordable Housing Group, that they will certainly have that condition. If not, we have that availability.
So potentially, one thing we could do is really.
That's why it's good for us to have this exploration, because as we have a big project coming forward, it's good for us to know what we do and don't have in our current ordinance to protect things like affordability and protect availability for the farmworkers themselves, make sure.
And potentially, we could.
Right. It is good to know that there isn't anything in our ordinance that requires it. I don't know if it's something we can add to the ordinance, but it is good to know. I agree.
We have also Dave Ward here, who wanted to make a comment on some of the questions that are being asked by our board members.
Madam Chair, real quick. Potentially, we can check to make sure that the farmworker does work there and more or less, you know, are they meeting the requirements that, that we have, you know, for farmworker law and so forth.
We can, we can certainly work with the County Council's Office to try and find out what our, what our options are, to do, maybe institute some sort of an interview.
Yeah, because the way the supervisor says, you know, if, if they're not being used for farmworkers, they might be used for something else, you know. And after a while, you know, you figure, well, if I can rent that property for more money or, or not meet what the whole idea is behind helping the farmworkers, is probably what we're looking at. Thank you.
That is your slot.
Blessings.
Sorry, I was trying to get the microphone off so it wouldn't be so loud. Dave, go ahead.
Chair Long, supervisors, yes, we can certainly, in our next round of review, so for 2021, we can certainly look at that for the ministerial and as well as the discretionary cases that Ms. Thomas described to you. That's not a problem. We can explore that. The question that Supervisor Bennett raised and also Supervisor Parks, as far as additional restrictions, so in that second bullet down there, you'll see that we do talk about the ability to address term and other deed restrictions tied to the permit findings of the case. And in this regard, we really are looking at the larger farmworker complexes and how we would assure those would maintain that type of housing availability just to farmworkers. You asked a question, too, about the funding and time restrictions. Some of these housing projects do, in fact, receive state funds and other tax credits that do have terms of 50, 55 years, depending on which programs they're applying to. But we would also, ourselves as a county, look to our ordinances, our policies, on what we would. we would want to ensure for that farmworker housing, and look at the options and how we would restrict that. So we are actively looking at that, and that will be a component on our farmworker complex that we're working on right now.
And based on your slide, it'll be in 2021, then when that will be coming back to our Board, roughly estimate?
Two-fold in, in 2021, one will be our next round of verification process, but then we are actually processing that farmworker complex project that is coming in the early part of 2021.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? I do have a public speaker.
Yeah, this is, this is Steve Bennett, I'll just make this other comment, and that is that some people, it, it has been, over the years, it's been reported to me from some people in the ag industry, that there are people that are taking advantage of this, and that they fill out the form, and that, that they don't really have that. And I don't have all the specifics, but it's been reported enough. And, and I just want to make a parallel, that same thing was said to me about pumpers, that there, there were people pumping water, or they were, they were not accurately reporting their water pumping. And I remember I brought this up at Fox Canyon, and I was ousted for saying, why don't I trust people? And because everybody went, you know, I was the only one bringing this up. And then at Fox Canyon, we started to begin the water market, and suddenly, when we began the water market, it meant that everybody needed to know that everybody else was being honest with their pumping. And then suddenly, we had lots of reports of people turning other people in for, for not pumping, I mean, for, for not being accurate, and we found all kinds of people that were taking advantage. So I, I don't want to be overly skeptical of people, but at the same time, I also don't want to be overly naive. There are tremendous financial incentives here to move a unit out of its original intent for farmworker housing, and to rent it out for a different purpose, potentially at a much higher rent. And so if we want to be realistic in Ventura County, and we want to keep our great emphasis on trying to help our farmworkers with farmworker housing, we should be realistic about having a robust program that gives everybody confidence, that when we give somebody a special exemption and let them do something that nobody else is allowed to do, build some additional dwelling units on their property, for example, or build it where nobody else is allowed to build and elect, except for farmworker housing. We should, we should make sure that everybody feels confident that that is going to be farmworker housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and this is a receive and file. Our first public speaker is Patrick Richards, you have a minute 30. I see that you are on our Zoom, so we'll bring you in, and your microphone is on, we can hear you.
Microphone is on.
Yes, but I can't see you, so just, you know.
Chairman Long, members of the Board, my name is Patrick Richards, and my address is 4291 Blackberry Lane in Somas. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to address the Board on Agenda Item Number 60. On Pages three and four of the staff report, there is an explanation of how compliance is accomplished. Under the heading of, quote, "For ministerial and discretionary permits," end of quotes, the question is asked, was the form signed by both the property owner and the primary occupant of the unit? A review of that form used during the presentation only requires the owner's signature, does not talk about or identify that the primary occupant of the unit, which would be the farmworker or the animal caretaker. Under the heading for, quote, "For discretionary permits," end of quotes, it refers to periodic inspections, and I'm not sure how often periodic is identified. Is it annual, or every couple of years? It doesn't specify. After reviewing the annual verification form, I would encourage Planning Division to consider adding text to required documentation used to determine farmworker or animal caretaker status. That concludes my comments, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Patrick, and you can also submit your comments to clerk of the Board at Ventura.org at any time if there's more things that we need to talk to about this. I'm going to have Denise come back up, and if you, for any closing comments with that.
Yeah.
And if you could maybe answer a couple of those questions that was asked, I'd appreciate it.
Denise Thomas with the Planning Division. We do have, the form itself does have a, an, a space for the occupant to sign, and we do get both the occupant and the property owner or the perma-te to sign, so I'm not really sure. I looked at the exhibit and, and I saw it there. And the other question about what periodic means, for us periodic, we do a, an annual review of the verification forms, and then every three years for the discretionary projects, we send staff out to actually do a physical inspection of the site.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
With ministerial, we don't, with, with ministerial, we don't do any, we don't do any follow-up outside of getting the form, correct?
Correct.
But the discretionary.
We have about.
Correct.
We have about as many ministerial as discretionary?
We have 79 ministerial permits that we are currently tracking, and we have 80, 27 of the discretionary ones.
In terms of number, in terms of number of units, is it, is it about the same?
No, it's not about the same, because the discretionary ones includes our farmworker complexes, and so we have dormitory-style complexes where you can have 100 people on property, and then we have other ones that have seven individual units. And so there are more farmworkers being housed in our discretionary, with our discretionary permits than with our ministerial permits.
Based on the quantity of people?
Quantity of people are being housed.
Because of the housing that is available?
Correct.
Thank you. Further questions? Any further questions Supervisor Bennett, or others that are on Zoom?
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. Okay, this is a receive and file, so this has been a good discussion Supervisor Zaragoza.
So moved.
Has been motioned by Supervisor Zaragoza, can I, second please?
Huber, second.
Okay Supervisor.
Was Mr. Ward going to add something to this?
No, it was a receive and file, but I know he did receive comments that has been said by our Board.
Yeah.
And he did answer back about the last slide of when we're going to see things coming back. Was there anything clarified you need?
Sure, sure. Supervisor Long, this is Steve Bennett, I would, Mr. Richards, I just wondered if he was still available for me to ask him a question.
Let's see if he's still on. Mr. Richards, are you still available for a question?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you. So in your experience in, in the past, I believe you're retired now, I'm not certain of that, but in your experience in the past, do you have evidence, or are you aware of people taking advantage of the farmworker exclusion, from your perspective?
I've only heard second and third-party comments, not anybody directly affected by that.
But you have heard second and third-party comments.
I would like to point out that the form, the annual verification form that is displayed is basically has two columns, one on one side and one on the other. The heading at the top, where you would normally see an applicant's signature or identification, only refers to those who are retired or handicapped as part of, they were previously farmworker or animal caretaker. That's, that's all it says, there, the signature on the left-hand side identifies the property owner, and they check a box and sign the signature. So I don't understand the comments by Ms. Thomas.
Go ahead Denise.
We're willing to reach out, we'll take a look at the form. The form that I, that I reviewed and authorized for use two years ago requires both signatures. We're willing to take another look at the form and reach out to Mr. Richards, and if there is a mistake and the, the occupant isn't on there, we'll make adjustments, but I have my staff member that reviews them every year, and they're both in there, and I've seen them, so.
Thank you.
They sign it, so I will reach out to Mr. Richards and see if we can.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And if you, if you find that that's, in fact, correct, that the form needs to be correct, would you please reach out to the Board of Supervisors immediately and let us know also?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this has been, first by Supervisor Zaragoza, and second by Supervisor Huber, roll call please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, so that is unanimous, thank you very much for your continued work for our county. Next item will be 48. I'm going to pass this along to Supervisor Huber.
I'd like to recommend the reappointment of Brandy Armenta, Armenta, to the HIV/AIDS Advisory Committee for a term ending November 7, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been first by Supervisor Huber, and second by Supervisor Parks. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes. Motion approved unanimously, thank you to Brandy for your service. Our next item is 49. Our adoption of the Ventura County, well, the resolution establishing the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council and its bylaws, and the appointment of the council members representing the Supervisory District in designated disadvantaged communities. Good afternoon, Sue Hughes.
Good afternoon, Chair Long, members of the Board, Sue Hughes with the County Executive Office. I am here, as Supervisor Long mentioned, with the, asking for your adoption of the resolution establishing the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council, the bylaws, and then appointing those listed in the board letter. And I am happy to answer any questions. I also have Alejandra with me, our Sustainability Manager, to answer any additional questions, and as I understand it, staff from RMA are dialed in on Zoom.
Thank you, Sue. I appreciate talking with my office on this, as it came from the general plan and our quick action to get this going, appreciate all the work that your office is doing. We have submitted for my district, the, our person from our district, and also for our disadvantaged community for Piru. I did want to get clarification, because the first two sections of the appointments in the bylaws state that they are residents of Ventura County, either being in a district of ours, or in a disadvantaged community, but the two at-large members, I think we're missing it maybe, where it's, it should be, I, I would like to ask the Board that the two at-large members need to live, reside in Ventura County also, since this is a climate action plan. I think it was assumed that they would be Ventura County residents, I just want to make sure we clarify in the bylaws that they are Ventura County residents.
Yeah, well, my, my two, you know, appointees are residents, you know, Mr. Martin Rodriguez and also Flo, Florencio Ramirez are, you know, and so.
So I would like to ask the Board to amend the bylaws to include that the two at-large members who reside in Ventura County, to include that wording, and we had contacted you about that just to make sure. But everything else is great.
Supervisor Bennett?
Number one, do we have speakers on this item?
We have one.
One.
So I'm not asking, I, I wasn't going to motion, I wanted to talk to you all first, you know, my inclusion, but.
Well, I, I think it's appropriate that you, you brought that up early, so County Council can, you know, find where, I'm sure it's a very easy add, we can just add resident of Ventura County, you know, at the at-large, you know, two residents of Ventura County will be selected at large, I'm sure they can do that pretty easily. I would like to hear from the public speaker, and then I have comments I'd like to make also in terms of some modifications.
Okay, we have, well, first, before we go to public speakers, I do have Supervisor Zaragoza who wants to make a comment.
Yeah, the question I have is, I think we read something about the Brown Act Committee?
They will be a Brown Act Committee, yes.
Brown Act Committee, and the question is, can the appointee, or the point, the supervisor, can they meet with us individuals prior to, or what's, what is the, what's, what are the rules on that, Michael?
A supervisor could meet with a member of the council without violating the Brown Act.
We can?
Yes.
Okay, so we wanted to clarify that, because I think we read something about, you know, well, we don't want to violate the Brown Act, in other words, okay, good.
Can you clarify what the Brown Act would be for violation of a meeting?
Well, it, it, the Brown Act would apply to this council the same as it applies to your Board, so that would mean that a majority of the Board members or the council members could not meet together, you know, in one fashion or another to discuss a, an item that's within the subject matter of the council, or the Board, as the case may be, but an individual Board member could meet with an individual council member and, and discuss something that's within the subject matter of areas of.
Yeah, that was my question, can they meet with the, with the supervisor? Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we will move to public comment, we have Jan Diedrich, she has a, submitted an email. So if you could, clerk of the Board?
The email reads, "The 350 Ventura County Climate Hub welcomes formation of the VC Climate Emergency Council. We anticipate being able to follow the agenda and process on a webpage, its mission, calendar, meeting agendas, minutes, and ways to attend the meetings and make comments. We also request that you immediately implement programs that are spelled out clearly in the general plan with no need for the council's advice. First, direct staff to provide an ordinance to implement HIZ and Safety Program AA to prohibit the installation of natural gas infrastructure in new residential and commercial development through amendments to the Ventura County Building Code. 3C RIN has the mandate and goal to help the cities develop energy efficiency reach codes. Ojai City staff is doing this for a first reading at the Ojai City Council on October 27th. There is increasing momentum along local governments to adopt all-electric new building reach codes. Your urgent action is important and can show the way to the larger cities like Oxnard, Ventura, and Thousand Oaks to ban gas connections, to avoid more needless expenses in new buildings that are adding to construction and, and future operating costs. All of the infrastructure and appliances currently allowed to be installed will be stranded assets in a few years in an inevitable arc of building electrification. The Sierra Club has a staff specialist helping Ojai and other governments develop their ordinances. There is no excuse to delay immediate action to implement the Building Electrification Reach Code." Dan Diedrich with Christopher Toll of Oxnard.
Thank you, and that email will be submitted to all of us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I, I looked at the documents on the agenda, and it wasn't there, so I want to make sure the public can read that. Supervisor Bennett, you stated that's all for the public comments, you stated you had some comments?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'm trying to turn my video on, and it keeps telling me that the host won't let me, so could the host unblock me so I can, there we go?
Just so you know, it's not me.
Thank you. And so what I'd like to point out is that the spirit, I know we are moving, you know, promptly to try to get the CEC started, and we did that right after we adopted the general plan, and the reason for that is that it's called a climate emergency, because we have a, an emergency in terms of climate change, the window is narrowing for us to be able to take effective action with this as it moves forward. So with that, that's why we moved quickly, and I was very pleased on Thursday, when I saw the first draft of this, of the resolution and the bylaws, it called for November to be when the members were seated, and that they would meet in November and have their first meeting, so that they could get about the business of selecting the two other people, the two other members, and then we would be, and then other two members would come in on December 1st. The comments I made when I first introduced moving forward with this were that, you know, like, I didn't want to wait until after the holidays to have things even get started, and then, you know, all of a sudden, you're, you're halfway through, through springtime before you really get anything even started. So I would like to go back to the language that was in the Thursday version of the that was in the Thursday version of this draft in terms of having this start November and December. The other thing I would like to, I'd like to find out if the board is willing to do that. I'd also like to suggest that, imagine if you are a member of the Climate Emergency Council, you have a two-year term, and the first report of real action that's going to go to the board is not going to be until two thousand and twenty-five. I think it would not feel very satisfying to participate on a board where you're going to be there two years and there's not going to be a report until four and a half years later from your joining the board. I think it's, I think it's just human nature, and I think people work better if they need, if they know they've got to get going. And it seems to me that we should still keep the two-year terms, but at the end of the two-year cycle, they should be planning on having a report that whatever it is they want to report to the board. Now, I admit, the first, the first Climate Emergency Council Board will maybe have less because there is the startup time and all of that other stuff. But it just, it just would not be satisfying to be on the board and think that there wasn't going to be a first significant report to the Board of Supervisors until two thousand and twenty-five. So I suggested that change. I didn't suggest the first change because it was already in there. In other words, the November start was already there on Thursday. So I obviously thought that was going to stay in there, but it got changed, perhaps by somebody else's suggestion. But the two thousand and twenty-five, I did suggest going to two thousand and twenty-two. And CEO staff thought that was a pretty significant policy issue that we should discuss as a board. And I agree with the CEO's office, and so I'm certainly comfortable. But I would like to find out if the majority of the board would be comfortable having this be, go back to what we had on Thursday, which is a November one, a November original meeting for the CEC, so that they could get moving, and then also go to a report on two thousand and twenty-two. If, if there, if there is majority support for that, I have the, all of the language changed. We have run the changed language by County Council, so they have looked at it to, so we have the language. But rather than getting into the minutia of the language, I'd like to find out whether there, a majority of the board would be comfortable speeding up both the initial start and the initial reporting back to the board. Thank you.
Steve, Supervisor Bennett, can I ask you, on your bylaws, what page are you looking at where it states that the timeframe of when they'll be starting? I'm trying to make sure that our public is also keeping us in track of everything.
Well, it'll be easy, it'll be easier when I, and I've got a PowerPoint, but let me get, I will get to that for you. So in the version, the version that is, so it's, it's not in the bylaws, it's in the.
It's not in the bylaws? I thought it was.
I believe it, Supervisor Bennett, I believe it's in both the resolution and the bylaws.
Yeah.
The two thousand and twenty-five is?
No, I'm sorry, the November-December dates.
Yeah, the November-December is, but the two thousand and twenty-five, let's see here, revised with track changes. Okay, I've got it here. So it is Supervisor Long, it is on the resolution?
Section six.
Section, what'd you say, Supervisor Park, six?
Yeah.
Then it says. Good, okay, yeah. Then it says, down at the bottom, section six, I-I, and then the Roman numeral five, I mean, the V. So I-I-V. So see where it says, "Presentation of Climate Emergency Council Recommendations to the Board, Board Action?" That's where it says two thousand and twenty-five, and I would say no later than the end of two thousand and twenty-two. And every two years.
Why would we just not have them do it annually? We have other boards that report to us annually.
Well, I think you can, I think you could do that, but I don't think, I don't, I don't know that, that, this doesn't say that they can't go more often, but at a minimum, but this would, if you put it in as a minimum, then they have to go, even if they're not ready to go at the end of this year. So that's, that's why I'm saying you want to make sure that a group, a group can go sooner, but the, but they, they also could have people saying, oh, the board doesn't, so I think, I think, I think, I think two years is the, is the right feel for the amount of time that they need to try to move forward. They can go sooner if it happens to work that way, but I think that the combination of staff and getting off the ground and trying to have a board get to know each other, et cetera, I wouldn't want to lock them in the coming, in a year, and have them feel that pressure when they may come up with a better product by taking their time and getting to two years. That's my thought.
So with this slide that is being up currently, looking at it as Article three E, and I appreciate you having this slide. So when you read this, it's talking about our board appointments, and majority of our board appointments starts January first or the beginning of January. I think that's where our staff was coming with this, not stating that we can't start moving on this meeting now, like Supervisor Bennett's saying, is having the first meeting.
I didn't know my PowerPoint was going to come up already. I didn't ask for it yet, so I'm not quite sure how that happened. But, but yes, normally, I mean, for boards that are appointed, but we're appointing, we're appointing this board specifically because we, we wanted to get moving quicker. At least the board majority wanted to get moving quicker on this. And so that, so, and that is, I think, Y staff's original version of this called for a November start. Something happened between Thursday and Friday, and staff changed that from a November start to a January start. And I'm just suggesting that we should move it back, so.
Okay, so then.
Supervisor Parks, if I could ask, excuse me, Supervisor Long, but Supervisor Parks, are you supportive of moving sooner? And then we can talk about the two thousand and twenty-two versus two thousand and twenty-one issue, right?
I also have a little bit of a concern that I think would mean that we should be meeting, their first meeting should either be late in November or December would work. But I, one of the concerns I have is one of the applicants doesn't live in the, or doesn't appear to live in the district of the supervisor. So I would ask that supervisor to bring another applicant forward, and that would not happen until November tenth, when our next meetings.
But still, the board could, the board could get moving in terms of November. But so you're in favor of moving earlier, and so I'll ask Supervisor Zargos, are you in favor of starting earlier, since I believe it was a three-two vote to move on this?
I would support that because I believe, you know, as you mentioned before, if we're going to have a two-year term, these individuals that have served two years will not really have anything to report, you know, until, you know, the fourth year, so I wouldn't mind going back.
Supervisor Long, I interrupted you. I'll respectfully wait for you to finish, and then I'll introduce the actual language if you would like me to.
That is great. I wanted clarification. I'm just looking at the appointments. I know we want to start our, our group now, and so my understanding was the names that we were putting on would be approved and start working, and then as we appoint every two years, that appointment would be in January. And so that's my clarification. When I read that meetings, that the appointments would start in January, so that they would be every two years. Now, the appointments are at the will of the supervisors for their districts, so I'm not that too concerned if you're starting in November.
Yeah, I don't think it'll hurt, you know, it'll probably improve the.
I just want to make sure, whatever changes we do, I know the one I had asked about with the residents, if we move this one for December or November, I just want to make sure it's a limited amount so that we don't have to have a public review again, because that would just delay things, correct?
Sure, yeah.
It potentially could. The, it depends on what you don't want to do with that last thing you mentioned. The, the language to change the January one date to November one for the folks who are listed in, in your board letter, and December one for the two at-large members, that can easily be done today. But the two-year term will commence on those days. And so thereafter, the two-year terms will end on November one and December one, respectively. So if you leave it that way, we can make that change easy. If you want the first term to be essentially two years and two months, that would take more work, you know, wordsmanship to change the resolution.
I personally am fine with November. Just my engineering brain says line everything up January, and then that makes more sense to me, but I wouldn't slow that down.
I'm sorry, so you can say that, then we can adjust it accordingly right after we do the first initial two years and two months?
Well, to change the language today, it would take some wordsmithing. That might take a little while if you wanted to do two years and two months. If you just want to keep it at two years, starting November one, and December one, then we're fine. We can easily do that today.
So you do it every November, supposed to every first? But that, I don't, you know.
It's not, that's really not that, that big a deal.
I can live with that.
Yeah. And then also, bylaws and so forth can be brought back to the board if we need it in a later term. So Supervisor Bennett, you want to go ahead and ask the other questions?
Well, so I, since, since it seems like there is at least a majority of support to consider these things, so I have the slide that's up on the screen, that's up on my screen. So if we could put up my PowerPoint slide number two, please. Slide two. There you go. So this, this captures all of the changes, right? And that is, under membership of the Climate Emergency Council, it'll be composed, and you see the blue, the light blue, November, instead of January one, it goes to November one. Instead of saying odd-numbered years, it says even-numbered years. And then the members appointed in subsection six A triple I above shall commence on December one of even-numbered years instead of February one. So that's that change that accomplishes that. And then down at the bottom, I've simply added sort of why we are trying to do this, and that is, it's recognized that the work of the VCC EC is urgent, and that periodic reports and recommendations to the board are appropriate. So, you know, this part is the board is ready to do that. But, but that.
Supervisor Bennett, you might need to turn your video off. We're losing your audio.
Supervisor Parks, are you talking?
Yes, I know that you're.
I'll turn my video off. How's that? Is that better?
Yes, now we can hear.
White from your district had written to us requesting that they have the ability to bring something forward at their discretion. Is there an ability to put some leeway in there so if they find there's something they want to bring to us that they have that ability to do so?
Have a way out.
The, the procedure that I see in there is if, it's got to be the majority of the, of the CEC, but if the majority of the CEC, they're supposed to submit it to the CEO, but I can't imagine the CEO is going to not bring something that the majority of the CEC wants to bring forward. I can't imagine that that's not going to be the case.
Well.
So.
They do already have that leeway as written, okay? Because I know you're talking about coming back in two years, and I just feel that they may be frustrated with that because they see it as an emergency, too.
No, this is, this is, yeah, this just doesn't, this doesn't limit them, but this, this speeds it up. If, if you can, the language that I'm trying to refer to here, and can you hear me okay, Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you for checking.
Yeah, the, the language here, down at the very bottom of this, it says that they, the, they will, they will, "Recommendations and planning commission recommendations shall thereafter be presented together to the board at a public meeting for its review, consideration, and action, no later than the end of two thousand and twenty-two, and every two years thereafter until the VCC EC's work is completed." And what's crossed out there is two thousand and twenty-five. That used to say no later than two thousand and twenty-five. And so now it's being changed to two thousand and twenty-two. So we're not, we're not making it, we're not decreasing their ability to report out in a year if they want to, but we're trying to say that the no later is being moved up from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-two, so they know they're going to have at least one presentation by, by the resolution that they have here.
Can, can I go?
Actual wording in this that allows them, that, you know, specifically states that they can come before that if they want?
There's, there's specific language in here that says, if the majority of the board wants to make a presentation, they, they simply need to coordinate that with the CEO's office.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And can we get clarification from County Council on this, the suggestion that Supervisor Bennett is doing, the wording that is on there before stated that no later than two thousand and twenty-five. It doesn't prohibit the group from coming back at the end of two thousand and twenty-two to give an update or to provide any of their recommendations, even if they came, found out in two thousand and twenty-one that they wanted to bring something to the board, they could do that with this wording. Am I, am I off? I'm, I know it's, we're kind of getting into the weeds on things, but I'm just wanting to get clarification.
No, you are correct. The wording as proposed at, with the year two thousand and twenty-five doesn't prohibit the council from acting earlier than that.
Okay, so I am thinking Supervisor Bennett, you're clarifying the end of two thousand and twenty-two just to make it clear with this group that we want to hear answer or their consideration sooner? I'm just trying to, I don't want to tie the hands of this group, and I think, I just want a clarification.
Yes, I appreciate the question, and I appreciate your insight that they could come sooner than two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah.
But it also could, it could also easily be an argument used by people to say, no, we're, you know, people who didn't want to come back to say, hey, you know, we're not scheduled. I could see staff saying, look at, you know, your first report's not due, you know, until two thousand and twenty-five. So it just seems, it just seems that everything I know about serving on one of these boards, if you want to have people motivated and, and, you know, really into it, you want them to feel like there's going to be at least definitely one report that will come out from them for their, for their two-year term of service. And so that's what I'm trying to capture, is that.
And this is clear to them.
Happen soon.
Okay, and is the first sentence, is that a need or just a want? I just want to make sure we're not modifying too much.
Well, I mean, that's, this is what I'm proposing. I don't know what.
County Council, I think.
This is a, this is, this is, from my perspective, this is a need for, for a properly motivated board. But it doesn't have to, I mean, you could say on there, the first report's not due, you know, you know, could be due no later than two thousand and forty. And you could still say, hey, they could come sooner if they wanted, but I think everybody'd say that's a preposterously long time. And I think two thousand and twenty-five is too long for a board that only has two-year commissioners on it.
No, I was, I was agreeing on, I was, I was understanding the end of two thousand and twenty-two. I was just asking the sentence of, "It is recognized that the work of the VCC EC is urgent, and the periodic reports and recommendations to the board is appropriate." I didn't know if that was needed. It just seemed more, but that's fine. County Council.
That is up to the board, whether to include that language.
Thank you. All right, are there, is there any more slides, Supervisor Bennett?
I don't have any more slides, but I don't know if this slide has captured all the changes to the document that we submitted to County Council. And I would just like to ask County Council if they, if they see anything that we're missing, or have we captured everything here? We tried our best to get, pull, pull two documents together, and, oh, I'm sorry, I need to show you the next two slides. All right, so the next slide is, so that's about, that's about membership and the reporting. And so the next slide, please, slide, slide three. And this is about just their terms, and this is saying that their terms of office will start November one, and the appointed members will start December one. And then if we could go to the next slide, please, and under officers, it would be, they would start November, they, they, the elected, the officers would be elected by November thirtieth. So that would mean the VCC EC would have at least one meeting in November to determine their officers.
Okay. All right, so that's. All right, so that's as captured. Are there any other suggestions or comments from other supervisors?
Not regarding the bylaws.
Okay.
I do have other, as I mentioned.
Are there any questions on the bylaws? And do we want, would it be smoother to make a motion on the bylaws and the resolution first? So since we have that fresh and we just did the amendments and including the third item, which are the two elected in the Ventura County resident?
Yeah, I was just going to say that to you, we'll make sure we add your request that they be members of Ventura County. So can County Council, do you feel like you can make that change very efficiently?
Yes, it'll be easy to do in, in both the resolution and the bylaws where the reference is made to the at-large members. What it will now say is two additional at-large members who are residents of Ventura County and have demonstrated special interest, et cetera, with the language that's in there.
Thank you.
So I'll be, I'll be happy to make that motion, and then we can, we can go into the other issue that Supervisor Parks wants to talk about.
Exactly. Sue, do you have any questions on that before I get my second motion?
I do have a question for County Council.
Yes.
Can all of these changes be made after motion and the vote and done today? Or does the item have to be brought back?
The item does not need to be brought back.
Okay.
We, we can prepare a resolution with these changes and have the chair sign it.
Okay, and then one other clarifying question. If there is a discrepancy with one of the members that has been nominated, does that item have to come back?
I'm not sure what you mean by discrepancy.
We're going to get back to that.
Okay.
We're going to vote first on the resolution and the bylaws, so it's crisp and nicely packaged.
Perfect.
And then we'll get to that one.
Thank you.
So it's been motioned by Supervisor Bennett as this amended. And can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Zaragoza. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
I see his mic is off. Supervisor Huber, your mic is off.
I heard him say yes. Yes, yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long.
It was a relay vote.
Yes, that part of the, that motion has been approved. Now we'll move on to the appointments. So Sue, if you can go with the appointments, talk about those, please.
So I see that each district, each supervisory district has put forward a name. And then each of the three designated disadvantaged communities have also, the supervisors in those districts have also put a name together. So we have a total of eight. Those eight will then, in turn, be the ones that select the at-large from the county of Ventura. So that would be the next item your board will address is the appointment of the listed folks here.
Okay, so our appointments, it's in the revised board letter for the public who is watching today. District 1 has Phil White, District 2 has Mick Ferris, District 3 has Will Berg, District 4 is Tom Lucas, District 5 Florencia Ramirez. For the disadvantaged communities, El Rio Del Norte is Martin Rodriguez. For Pyru, it's David Keith Gorilla. And Saticoy is Terry Lynn Hernandez. So to make sure we're clear on those. Supervisors, are there any questions, comments? I, I think I heard something from Supervisor Parks. If you'd want to make a comment or?
Yes, and I, and I, I know I notified the supervisor who did the appointment. I don't know if that supervisor wants to make a change or if I should go forward with why that should occur.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not aware of what you're talking about, sorry. So if that supervisor would like to comment, I haven't been notified about anything.
Why don't you just be direct Supervisor Parks so we can move on here?
Yes, I'm moving forward. I just thought it would be, there's a better, a different way of going about it. So our understanding is Tom Lucas is registered to vote in Oxnard, not in the District 4. And that, that's one concern. The other one is in outstanding code violations that the individual has, too. So I would ask that Supervisor Huber find another applicant who doesn't have code violations that have been outstanding for a decade or more, as well as someone who lives in his district and votes in his district.
I have, Ms. Bob Huber. I have a question to staff. Tom Lewis is my appointee, and he owns property and works in District 4. Where's it say he cannot be appointed to represent the 4th District?
County Council?
My question.
The, the resolution that was proposed and that your board has now adopted does say that one person residing in each supervisory district will be on the board. So of those five, they'll have to represent all, be residents of all five. So I think the implication here, although it doesn't say it expressly, is that each supervisor will nominate someone who is a resident of his or her district.
I might point out, I know, I know a supervisor asked that question earlier and was told that they had to find somebody from their particular district.
That's true.
Supervisor Huber?
I'm, right now I'm going to have to pull it based on what I've heard, but I'll do some more research.
Okay, so.
To approve the nomination of all the candidates A through A, A through H, except for D.
Thank you, so the appointments for all, all districts except for District 4, along with the three disadvantaged community appointments. So that motion has been made by Supervisor Parks. And thank you to Supervisor Huber for your reconsideration due to the bylaws and resolution. Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Supervisor Bennett. So with a first and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, and that motion is unanimous, so thank you very much. And then if Supervisor Huber, if you would like to appoint, we can get that reviewed on the next board meeting, hopefully, so that we can make sure this moves forward as quickly as possible. Thank you very much, Sue. Is there anything else we can do for you?
Nope.
Okay.
All good.
Supervisor, was that you Supervisor Bennett? Or was it Supervisor Huber? Nope, okay. Thank you so much. All right, good work of the people here. Next item is item 50. Our approval of a substantial amendment to the Ventura County entitlement area fiscal year 2019 to 2020 annual action plan. We have the CEO's office on here? Oh, we have Zoom, love it. Okay. Casey, thank you. If you could turn on your mic, and we'll have IT let you in. Tracy, if your mic is on mute. I see you on here, but you are muted and your video is off.
Hi Supervisor Long, I think that Kristi Madden is presenting this item.
Hi Tracy, I can hear you. Now I can't see you, but you can continue.
Yes, I think Kristi Madden is actually going to be presenting this item. Can we give her the?
Oh, okay. Christina, then.
Thank you.
Is Christina on? I don't see her on. And she's not in the dais, in the meeting room. We will get this together. It's just been a long day for everybody, and I think they're holding tight on us. So Christina?
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Kristi, oh, sorry, I, the, the audio was mumbled, and I just did not hear the name correctly, so I'm calling the wrong people. Apologize. Kristi Madden.
No problem.
How are you?
I'm doing very well. You all must be very exhausted. It's been a long day. My name is Kristi Madden. I'm with the County Executive Office. And today we're here to request that your board approve a substantial amendment to our 2019-20 annual action plan to incorporate almost $1.4 million of coronavirus relief funds from the CDBG program. We're also asking you authorize the CEO or designee to amend the plan, sign forms, and transmit them to HUD and authorize the auditor controller to establish the appropriations and revenue for our new funding. On March 27, President Trump signed the CARES Act into law that appropriated $5 billion of supplemental CDBG funding to address the pandemic. On June 6, your board accepted the first wave of these funds for our entitlement area. That's the five small cities in the unincorporated area. That was about $925,000. At that time, staff identified the broadest categories for the use of funds while we waited for information about other available and anticipated funding, formal guidance from HUD, defining our unmet needs, and assessing the success of Project Room Key. The countywide continuum of care has identified a significant gap in resources, both financial and physical locations for non-congregate shelter. As we enter the winter season, it is apparent that the community will not have access to the traditional winter sheltering solutions that we often rely upon, specifically churches that are ill-equipped to deal with the health and safety concerns for protecting people from coronavirus, as well as the volunteers who themselves are at high risk for infection. Even with the development of several year-round shelters, reduced capacity at those locations with social distancing leaves fewer beds available and our unhoused residents at continued and increasing risk. Staff is recommending that all of our CDBG CD funding be prioritized for non-congregate shelter and that up to $1.6 million be earmarked for interim shelter at the Project Home Key location with its 17 new beds, consistent with our application to HCD. The balance of project funding would be made available for other non-congregate sheltering solutions. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Kristi. Are there any other, any questions from our supervisors to the staff? It's a, really appreciate the action plan much needed in our community. With this, can I get a motion to approve? Board members?
Huber, someone?
Second.
Yay, so thank you. Supervisor Huber is a first, and Supervisor Parks is a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, so that motion is unanimous. Kristi and your team, thank you so much for bringing this forward. Next item is our approval for the Ventura County COVID cities, COVID-19 Cities Assistance Program.
All right, well, good afternoon, Chair Long, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Powers. I'm James in Portante, management analyst with the County Executive Office, here to request that your board allocate up to $5.5 million in coronavirus relief funds that the county has received to our cities based on population. And so in terms of a brief background, the federal government provided the CRF funds directly to jurisdictions of populations of 500,000 or more. And so with that, none of the cities within the county received a direct allocation. However, the county, based on federal guidelines, can provide an allocation to the cities. And so that is our recommendation today. Over the last several weeks, we have engaged with our cities in trying to understand, one, their interest in the program, which there is, and then, second, the types of expenditures as well as amounts. And so while we won't be able to cover all of the, the needs that our cities have, this is an amount that is meaningful for our cities. And so we're looking forward to, to move forward with these agreements and get the funding out to them. So with that, I'll leave it up for.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the flexibility that we've had with our federal teammates to make sure that we can utilize the funding in this way. And also, thank you for coming back, the CEO's office, Mike Powers, for making sure that those of our smaller communities are able to get a little extra allocation. Because as we know with any business, there's a certain admin costs associated with providing services. And those, those cities are in need of it. I know that Dan Singer, also of Santa Paula, city manager of Santa Paula, submitted a letter, and thank you, too. We had had some update on our COVID-19, talking about our different areas. I wanted to say thank you. And also the transparency, really important that our community knows where this money is being spent. So, Mr. Powers, did you have something also to say?
Yes, thank you, Chair Long. Just to, you know, I think this is a reflection also of the close partnership the counties have with all 10 of our cities. We, we meet at least twice a week on multiple issues, including the Business Ambassador Program. I talked to you about the messaging, sharing information with the community about testing and other outreach. And just, you know, conducting operations, regular safety operations during a time of COVID is challenging for the, for the cities as well. So, and we just appreciate that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, I think it really helped the cities because of the COVID-19 has really impacted the, the cities, you know, especially under 500,000 population. So I, I agree, I think this is going to help the cities tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from supervisors? If not.
Yeah, the, the smaller cities will very much appreciate this. And I think about how Santa Paula was just before us earlier, I know, doing the spirit of Santa Paula and helping their, their homeless shelter, that this may enable them to assist with also. So I'm really glad that we have the ability to do this and help those cities that are, particularly those that need it the most.
Yes, agreed. It's been moved by Supervisor Zaragoza. A second, please.
Second Bennett?
Okay, Supervisor Bennett, I haven't heard your seconds in a while. No, I'm joking. Supervisor Bennett, a second, any further discussion? We have a super team here that is working on this, so I appreciate it to all. And roll call, please.
Super Bennett votes yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, motion is approved unanimously. Thank you so much, James, thank you. Next item is our authorization for our auditor controller to process the necessary budget transactions to increase appropriations for COVID-19. Mr. Scott Powers?
Good afternoon, Board. Chair Long, Mr. Powers, Scott Powers, County Executive Office. I'll be brief. We'll be moving another $8 million appropriations as in this recommendation to OES. These costs are covering a plethora of, of costs associated with the COVID emergency response. All these funds will be reimbursed through CRF or FEMA, and we are moving with that forward with, working with EY and our auditor controller's office as well. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you very much.
Move approval.
It's been moved by Supervisor Zaragoza. A second, please.
Can Huber, second Huber?
Supervisor Huber is a second. Thank you for all the work. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, and so that motion approved. Thank you. Next up is the authorization of the CEO officer to approve and assign the amendment to approve the VCCF Foundation to administer the county's COVID-19 Business Assistant Grant Program. Hello, Mr. Paul Stamper.
Good afternoon, Chair Long, Board members, CEO Powers, Paul Stamper with the County Executive Office. I'm here to ask you, or present to you the board, a recommendation to authorize the CEO to sign an amendment to the agreement with the Ventura County Community Foundation for our Business Assistance Grant Program, and to authorize the auditor to process budgetary transactions to fund the program for an additional. transactions to fund the program for an additional $13,935,000, and to increase funding for administration of that program by an additional $370,000. As part of this recommendation before your board, we also ask that your board include, in your motion, the approval for the CEO with County Council concurrence to extend the dates in the contract by up to three days if necessary to accommodate logistics of notification, opt-out, and payment. Board, on September 1, your board approved an increase in program funding to fund every eligible and compliant business that applied for this program, represented up to 300, or 3,787 additional businesses that were not selected in the first round of funding, represents a total of $23.9 million in funding for our community and businesses. As your board is aware, an issue related to disclosure of business names arose, and we've been working through this with our partners. This amendment proposal before you today represents the way forward. I'd like to walk you through the highlights of that and then take questions afterwards. So this proposal before you includes that VCCF will complete administration of the program, and all eligible and compliant businesses will receive a $5,000 grant. Businesses will be given a chance to opt-out of the program, but after that time, VCCF will provide the county with business names, owner names, and addresses of every business that has already received a grant. Additionally, VCCF will provide all of the data for every other business applicant in this program. All of the program records will also be made available for audit officials to review as needed. And in this agreement, the county does agree to indemnify VCCF and its subcontractors for any claims related to Single Audit Act or disclosure of program records, and to increase the administrative fees allocated for this program from 500,000 to 870,000, which represents a total of three point, approximately 3.6% of the program funding that's available out there. There are other provisions in the amendment related to auditing, monitoring, records retention, and CRF requirements, and we present this amendment to your board for consideration. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate you coming back. I know this was on the agenda at the last board meeting, but coming back with some clarification and information. $5,000 is a lot per company when you're dealing with situation of COVID and all the bills and so forth. I know that that has been an urgency for our board is to make sure those funds for businesses come through. So, I appreciate the partnership and working through some of these questions that we've been having. I will open this up to our board members for any questions. Supervisor Parks.
Yes, and I would just say, it wasn't just clarification that we got between last week and this week, but we actually got an agreement by VCCF that they will provide us the data necessary of the first 770 that were given these grants, because I know that was a concern. We need to have transparency, and I appreciate the chair's comments that I read in the press, too, because transparency is really important, because these are tax dollars. So, I'm glad to see in the last week that we did get that agreement, that that will be coming forward, and that obviously, this next Phase 2 group, we will also get the data on. That is really essential to me, and I think the public, too. So, I appreciate the good work of our staff. I understand how difficult it is to be able to do this much research to make sure that all of these applicants meet the criteria and then they get those checks out. So, I thank VCCF for that work and look forward to our collaborative relationship in the future, and I will certainly support this recommendation, knowing that VCCF will hold to it and provide us the data that we need. I'm also delighted that the businesses will be able to get these funds and use them specifically for their, to help their businesses, because I know they are suffering, and it will be great to be able to give them some infusion to help them keep those employees going and help our workforce, too.
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza.
I'll second that, and I just want to add to that, that yes, that funding is needed desperately by those businesses that are remaining to keep our employees working and those businesses alive, for that matter. So, support it, yes.
Thank you very much. For clarification, Supervisor Parks, was that a motion to approve?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you so much. And Supervisor Zaragoza is a second. Appreciate your votes on this. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, and that motion is approved. I know there's been a lot of work. Just want to give, Mr. Powers, do you want to say anything on this?
I would. Thank you, Chair Long, Board members, and thank you for engagement and involvement in this directly and for your support throughout. And I also want to recognize the team that's worked on this, Paul Stamper, Scott Powers, Mike Pettit, Michael Walker, and Phoebe Chu from the County Council's office, a lot of complex issues, and people working, you know, late into the night so that we can move forward, and appreciate also the partnership with the foundation. As I think Supervisor Parks alluded to, there's a lot of work that's gone into evaluating these grants and working with these businesses to make sure we got them eligible, whether it was a business license or a W-9 form, because they are so much in need, and we know that's a priority for your board. So, we appreciate that partnership, and we're just grateful that we'll be able to move forward today and help those businesses in need. Thank you.
When will we have the information on the first 777 and the rest? I would like to know when we can expect that, based on the agreement.
With the potential of additional three days that were added, Supervisor, I'd have to do the math real quick. Let me, let me describe it. A letter will go out within the next three days notifying businesses. Four weeks after that will be the conclusion of that opt-out period. Three days after that, we will receive those names.
Okay, great. So, about five, five weeks or so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I know we'll be hearing back from you and reporting back. So, thank you, and thank you to the partnership of VCCF and EDC Collaborative and Women's...
Economic Ventures.
Economic Ventures, all these acronyms, I apologize, but they're important to remember because they're doing such great jobs for a business, and wanted to make sure we highlighted them as well. Okay, next item is 61. It's a corresponding agenda. Yes, we voted on it, we've approved, and it's unanimous. Thank you.
Somu, 61.
61 has been moved, and can I get a second?
Huber, a second.
Huber is a second, so I need to...
I have one correspondence, one correspondence item that didn't show up, and it's from Supervisor Foy, and he was saying that Supervisor Long has run another long meeting again.
No comment.
No record.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Yes, and that motion is carried. Next item is our board comments, going back to, I think it's number 10. Yes, board comments number 10. Supervisor Zaragoza, lead us on.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I just want to share that last Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend the fundraiser, believe it or not, at Fisherman's Wharf. It was really great, you know, they had a lot of jewelry, paints, paintings, and in fact, we got treated to some donuts out there. So, I want to thank Mark Sandoval for, for working with the stakeholders there, and it was just a great fundraiser. I ended up really making some points at home, because I bought my wife a necklace from the, which worked out pretty good, so. With that in mind, also, I'd like to, where's Michael Walker? He's gone. I just want to commend him for being our interim consul and doing a good job for us. And also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the folks on the list that were submitted to our clerk. And just remind everybody to vote, vote, vote. This is probably one of the biggest votes we've ever had, so please, if you, to all the residents, do not forget to vote. It's extremely important. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And Michael Walker is here, he's getting ready our closed session.
Okay.
Just to let people know, we do have legal counsel at all times. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you very much. You know, I joke a little bit about this being a long meeting, but today, a lot of good government took place, and you look at the variety of items that we voted on, the hard work staff did to tee up so many of these items, the work the supervisors did, et cetera. So, this is a lot of good things that happened today, and tie into what Supervisor Zaragoza said, all that stuff happens because people vote, and how you vote makes a difference. So, I sure hope everybody will encourage everybody around the whole country to make sure they vote November 3rd. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Huber.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My office recently helped sponsor a blood drive at Moore Park City Hall last week. We were able to receive 38 units of blood for the Red Cross, which will help 114 patients. I want to thank everybody who participated. I want to say a special thank you to everyone who donated. I really want to encourage everyone to do what they can. I know that our blood banks could use the help. A special thank you to Chelsea Smith and my staff for coordinating with the Red Cross. Would also like to thank the Acorn Newspaper for their recent editorial recognizing the business-friendly mindset of this board of supervisors during the COVID crisis. In addition to our businesses, I'd like to remember the landlords may be suffering, too. I'm encouraging our local cities to work with the National League of Cities and to help make our landlords whole, too. We should get support, we should get support in this crisis. In closing, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the folks listed that I have emailed to the clerk of the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Huber, Supervisor Parks.
Hi, a couple of things I want to bring to attention. One, when we get that slide up that I've asked, I can address that. Oh, right there. You guys are magic. Thank you. So, this is a wonderful photo of kids at Somus School who have just had a delivery of some books from our, our bookmobile from Ventura County Library, and that was just, it's so thrilling to see that. The new superintendent there, Dr. Vaca, pointed out that the kids just love any semblance of school. And so, even though this is outside, it's on the school campus, and it is so much enjoyed. I want to thank Nancy Schramm and her crew over there that brought that bookmobile, that coordinated with the school, and that they plan on doing that, I believe, every couple of weeks, and the kids love it. So, thank you so much. It really is kind of a dream come true. This is just what we were looking for when we approved that funding for that. So, that, as well as the other, and the companies that gave money towards that, too. So appreciative. Also, the Clean Power Alliance, of which we are all members, has a special program to provide a one-time $25 bill credit to residences, as well as a $50 bill credit to businesses, small businesses, on a first-come, first-served basis, and this is those who are having hardship because of COVID. So, you can call at 800-655-4555, or go to the CleanPowerAlliance.org/COVID19 webpage, and you can sign up to get credit, and I'm really glad that we are able to do that, because there are a lot of folks out there that are, have lost their jobs, they don't have the funds, and what a nice ability to be able to get some credit. Also, coming before, before we come back to our next Board of Supervisors meeting, on Election Day, we have a memorial bike ride. This is that Nosco Bike Ride that's every year, and we have named the Hidden Valley portion of Potrero Road, the Mike Nosco Memorial Bike Lane. So, we are going to have a bicycle parade. It will be at the same time as the Nosco Bike Ride, and commencing at 11:30 a.m. all the way till 1 p.m. If you go along Potrero Road on your bicycle, we're calling it a bike parade, and you have to be single file and have COVID distance, obviously. But if you go by particularly this sign at Trentham and Potrero, you can get a free photo taken. We have an actual professional photographer who's at the Giro d'Italia right now, coming and taking photos, and because they're good friends with Jack Nosco, who puts on this ride, so glad to be able to celebrate the life of Mike Nosco and appreciate our board's support for naming this bike lane for, for Mike. Also, I would ask that we close in honor of individuals on the list, and I want to call out Jeffrey Whissett. He has been so involved with so many things in our local area. And then also, I mentioned earlier in the meeting, something else that is coming on before our next board meeting, and that is the, I, some memorial recognition of the loss of lives for the borderline mass shooting, and that, that is a tough day, and I know it's very, very tough for families now, and there are so many survivors, too. I'm glad that, even though in a time of COVID, that we are able to have some memorial, some recognition of that, that we have the Healing Gardens at the Caneo Creek north, that we will be having some ability for people to come, do some rock painting, and leave that there in the afternoon. We'll get more information out to the public on this. I again want to thank Mike Jump and his group, with the District Attorney's Office, Victims Assistance Office, as well as the City of Thousand Oaks and the Caneo Rec. Park District for stepping up and giving our, also stepping up for that, and just, in our, in our county, too, and their support of it. And this is something I think will be something to be able to have that moment of reflection and, and, and give some, all we can to the, to the families that are still hurting. And so, I'm glad that we are able to do that recognition. And with that, it concludes my comments, and I wish you all good choices in your voting. We'll have the election before we come back, too. And as Supervisor Zaragoza said, it's really important to get out there and vote, more now than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks, and much appreciate bringing up the Borderline Memorial. It's on many of our minds in regards to that event and those that we've lost, and so, we look forward to the information coming out.
Yeah, the, one other thing that I just, because of this great group we have, came up with the idea to memorialize this with 12 acts of kindness, and the idea that you kind of commit to yourself for that day, and as in recognition of the lives lost, that you are going to do 12 acts of kindness. And so, there'll be some social media on that. I will send it over to our County CEO's office, and we can have our employees know about it, too, but I think that's a wonderful way to recognize it, is find yours, find those ways to be kind and find 12 acts of kindness in recognition of the 12 that were lost. Thank you.
Agreed, and, and that we can do that in anywhere, and so, really appreciate that. My report is, I've, I'm on the CSAC Board, and our executive board meeting happened last week, and so, thank you to our county departments and our CEO and staff. We've really made some huge accomplishments through CSAC and our, working with our state. So, we went over the accomplishments of IHSS and COVID pandemic and housing and so forth. And I know that the Board of Supervisors, they all receive our updates from our lobbyists and from CSAC, from Sue Hughes, so just thank you so much for all your input. We greatly appreciate it. Also, been on many calls every week on the state and federal items of COVID-19. Appreciate the Cal Fire being incorporated in that with the Cal OES. My heart goes out to all of those members in our community that are fighting fires and have lost homes and loved ones. We in Ventura County know that way too, way too well, and so, I just urge our community to make sure you're preparing your property, clearing it all. We did have our Ventura County Fire Department Annual California, Great California Shakeout. I, my, my office went through the drills, and I hope that everyone does, making sure you go to our VCFD.org website and go over the preparedness so that you can be prepared at your house for a fire or an earthquake, and just, it's really important. Next item is, we like to thank the Department of Defense. They just put an article out, the great works of our public works, Roads and Transportation Inner Government Service Agreement, and they appreciate working with us, and they are expecting to save government money, increase Navy operation efficiencies, and help ensure a long-term stability... a long-term stability for our local Navy installment. And it was just a huge accomplishment of over a million, of a million dollars. And wanted to say thank you to their teamwork on that. Also, Sheriff Ayub was able to take myself and our Fish and Game Commissioner, Ron Speakman, out to see this, to see all of my district in regards to what you can't get from a road. There's a lot of property that's there with our environmental. We have cannabis issues. We have hunting. We have all sorts of different things in which we need to be educated on. So, appreciated the overview on it. We were able to stop into Lockwood Valley and a shout out to Sam Frost and his family for being there to answer our questions and make sure we're doing the best we can for that community out there as well. And then we, we lost a great one just recently, Martin Marty Moorehart. Many of you know him and just appreciate all that he and his family has done. He is an eighth-generation Californian. He last resided in Lockwood Valley when he purchased the Cuddy Ranch. He's been a part of, he was served as a volunteer chaplain for the Los Angeles County Correction System. He is a ranchero, visitores, the four queued camp, just an integral part of our community. And so, he will be missed. And so, heart goes out to his family. And then also, I'll adjourn with those on this list. So, thank you. Mr. Powers, your CEO comments?
Thank you Chair Long. We've been continuing to meet, have our social justice meetings. We had a meeting with LULAC, in fact, on October 7. Really good attendance, about five representatives from LULAC and then as well as our sheriff, district attorney, probation chief, public defender, Sean Otten, Rosa Gonzalez, members of our Diversity and Inclusion Task Force, a two-hour meeting. So, building those, you know, those relationships and really talking about some really important issues of social justice. And then on Thursday of this week, October 22, we will be meeting with the Black Lawyers of Ventura County as well, continue that. Want to let the folks, your Board, and of course, our employees know that we're continuing to work with VASERA on the issue regarding pensionable compensation and the inclusion of the cafeteria plan, particularly for legacy employees. I did speak at the VASERA Board Hearing on Monday. And I know it's an issue that's important to your Board and our staff and our leadership here and our County Council's Office. And so, we will continue to work on that issue and keep you and the employees posted. Want to congratulate Tara Carruth. She's been selected for United Way's Douglas Shively Award for Outstanding Community Impact for her leadership on the homeless continuum of care and particularly her guidance instrumental on the success of the landlord engagement program. I heard some clapping on Zoom there. Yes, it's coming through. Yes, well deserved. And then just real quick, I know it's been a long day. Trying to keep Kelly's long meetings going here. On the census update, so the census ended this past Friday morning at 3 a.m. with only like 48 hours notice, but there was a big push in that last 48 hours, wanted you to know. So, the county ended up with a self-response rate of 76.7%, which is really great. 10 years ago, it was 72.5% just by comparison. And so, to compare it, how do we do compared to the U.S.? The U.S. rate was 66.9% and in California, it was 69.6%. So, Ventura County was 76.7%. Tremendous amount of effort that went into this. Again, our partnership was the county workforce team and your Board's support, financial support, along with our community foundation and the Complete Count Committee, which includes over 200 community groups on it. It's really remarkable. But there's also a steering committee that of course involves the CEO Vanessa Bechtel, as well as Stan Mantooth from the schools, Mike Sedell, Dr. Aguirre, almost done, our Public Health Director Rigo Vargas, local city representative Dan Singer from Santa Paula, and Ashley Golden of Oxnard, and our very own Assistant CEO Mike Pettit. So, just an awful lot, while all this COVID and all these other things are going on, this census effort was really relentless in its effort. And it really, it's going to make a big difference for our community for the next 10 years. So, more to come on this, but that's just the latest update. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate all the work that we have done today. I know we are trying to get as much done as possible before we have two Board members off the Board for one reason or another. So, I really do appreciate it. We will now be moving into closed session. And Mr. Walker, do, will we be reporting out on any item?
No.
Okay. So, with that, I will say adure, or maybe I didn't say it right. Goodbye. Thank you very much. Watch us tomorrow. It'll be a great off-site location for a press conference in Moore Park. So, you'll want to tune in at 1 o'clock. And thank you. Be safe, be healthy, and appreciate everyone's efforts. Thank you so much. Goodbye.
Good job, Kelly.